Today we will have the Development and Resource Management Department, Fire Department, Public Works, and the General City Purpose Departments. Just a bit of housekeeping for the council really quick. You guys should be getting a sheet every day that contains all your budget motions. So kind of keep track of that, but here's the thing. If you are wanting to make a motion, you can make a motion on any topic, any day, any time, right? So make sure we understand that, but we're going to be, we're on track to vote on budget motions on Tuesday. If in fact you have a motion that you may have been holding out on, get it as quick as possible. If you have information requests as well, make sure we get that into the proverbial hopper so we can get the motions analyzed because we'll have to, we're going to need the administration to provide feedback on the impact of all of the motions that we may or may not make because again, the budget by law has to be balanced. So anyhow, just wanted to remind everybody that we're moving along pretty good, but just if there are, if you have motions that you have made, make sure we get them out and make sure we get all information requests too made as well so we can have them analyzed. All right, with that, we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Brando, Councilmember Capriello, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Soria, and Council President Vains.
President, if we can all stand and salute the flag. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jane Florzorres.
Good morning, council. Development and Resource Management, their narrative starts on page B 65 of your budget book. This is a general fund department, but it is also supplemented with quite a few special revenue and grant funds. Their total budget for FY 16 is proposed at $45 million. DARM's total revenues are budgeted at $36.4 million, which is a substantial decrease of 17.5% as compared to the FY 15 budget. The decrease can be attributed primarily to three revenue streams. Beginning balance is decreasing by $5.3 million, mostly related to the timing of revenue draws on the department's grant and entitlement programs. The DARM's general fund revenues, which are significant, are budgeted at $16 million in FY 16, which is a decrease of a little over $3 million. The revenues have been flattening out over the last few months, and it is anticipated that they will continue to do so in the next fiscal year. Also flattening out are code enforcement revenues. They are decreasing also by $650,000 due to a change in the business model for that function. The expenditures for DARM, total $45.4 million, which is an increase of $4.4 million or 1.1%. The general fund appropriations are going up approximately $1.6 million. This is primarily driven by funding for Business Friendly Fresno, which is the updating of the technology that surrounds the Development Department and not only the Development Department, but also Public Works and other departments as far as streamlining, interfacing, and replacing outmoded technology to increase the speed of processing of their documents. Also planned for increasing is the Code Enforcement Task Force, which will focus on the blighted vacant residential properties program currently being developed. The program's staffing will consist of two existing senior community revitalization specialists, two new CRSs to be assigned to a citywide task force to address blight throughout the city. The program will also include two part-time staff, and also there will be a converted management analyst three position that will supervise this program. An additional four new CRSs will be assigned to support general code enforcement activities throughout the city. Specific plans are also budgeted for this department. We have a total of $550,000 budgeted for this, $250,000 in general fund and $300,000 in CDBG that will initiate specific plans in the southwest, southeast, and central west Fresno. The recipient, the department is the recipient of numerous grants. I will not go into all of these since no doubt you will be reviewing these tomorrow when you review the action plan and the con plan, so I will not dwell on those. The neighborhood revitalization teams are also budgeted for this next year. They will reorganize the program and create two community revitalization teams primarily from existing staff and the addition of one senior CRS as well as the conversion of a community coordinator to a CRS. They will also continue the lead base hazard control program, which they have done for the last three years. And for a final note, their interdepartmental charges are going up slightly primarily due to an increase in city hall rent and city hall improvements. There is also some money in there for some training dealing with the BFF. I believe I've already gone over the staffing increases. They will be adding a total of eight FTEs in FY 16, and they will be converting one position. This concludes my presentation. I believe the department is here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, we have Councilmember Olivier. All right, I don't have any other councilmembers queued up for any questions at this point. Councilmember Brand.
Yeah, Jennifer. Or Jane, one of the two. On the carryover from, is it minus $5.4 million FY 16?
Yeah, that's just connected to their special revenues and their grants, and that's just a matter of timing is all that is, and the reimbursements from those. That's all it is.
Okay, that's just a grant timing deal?
Yeah, that's all it is.
But basically, is the trend is, you know, I think City Manager said yesterday that the revenues from fees are dramatically dropping. I've got $7.7 million last year.
So typically, the construction cycle, as you know, we get increases in the winter, and then it gradually declines over the course of the year, and then increases in the winter. What we're seeing is a significant increase in investment in existing structures and facilities, which have much lower fees associated with them than say, new construction in a new area. So we're seeing a lot of investment. We're seeing an increase in the number of permits that are being pulled and the number of inspections that we're doing, but it's a different kind of inspection. It's a reroute for a tenant finish or an add, an addition to an existing structure. So the volume of work hasn't changed. It's continuing to trend up. It's the revenues associated with those.
So the permits are essentially remodeling permits?
Right.
But I'm somewhat puzzled because the rates are still historically low. If you talk to most real estate brokers, industrial brokers, commercial brokers, residential brokers, there's still a pretty vibrant market out there. Again, I'm not just doing the count, so I know we track the number of single-family home permits, and I'm assuming that is down.
That is down. We're seeing a little bit of an increase in activity in reinitiated tentative track maps, so we're seeing some track maps coming back to be reinitiated because of the financing availability right now. We're starting to see the track maps that have been sitting idle for the last few years are starting to come back in and be revised. We've had quite a few of our development review committees recently looking at revisions to track maps, and we're starting to see that activity increase, in particular in our west area, or excuse me, east area, just east of the airport. We're starting to see some increases in activity there, and we are starting to see some track maps being revisited west of 99 as well.
Could I make a request that you provide a list of like the past maybe 10 years, the single-family home permits pulled? If there's any way you can do it on commercial, square footage of commercial, both retail, industrial, and so we can at least trend out because historically, this department, I think it was 2012 when we went from strictly enterprise to general fund, is that correct, City? Because prior to that, the history of this department was it was strictly enterprise, self-funding, and I know during the peak of the great real estate boom of about 2001 to about 2006, that at one time, they had something like what, a $10 million surplus in their funds that over time, and including Sega, was eventually diminished and eventually went upside down. That was one of the deficit funds that we encountered in 2010, that it totally reversed itself, and I think it probably was a good move to move it to the general fund. But I think, and I know we had this debate last year, when we adopted fees on the impact fees and the permit fees, CUPs and so on, and tentative track maps, that it was based on a study that was basically assessing our cost, but correct me if I'm wrong, when we did the comparative analysis like with Clovis and other cities, we were probably higher, which, am I correct that, City Manager?
I'm just checking valleys like Madera, Clovis, Fresno County.
I think it just depends on fees and how they're being applied. I know there's some adjustments with some map, track maps, or not track maps.
That's the term?
No, it's not the best estimate. It's when they do the map realignment, the parcel, lot line adjustments, that we're looking at adjusting those down. But again, it's, I think if you want, you take a typical residential subdivision comes in, tax license out the door, by the time it gets through the review and permitting, I think we're pretty comparable to Clovis. On the other side, Clovis has impact fees, and in some cases are either higher or they require things in residential developments that we currently don't require. Quarter sections, for example, they have to build a park and pay an impact fee for parks. Here, they just pay either an impact fee or they get a credit for a park they build. So it really, there are a lot of variables that will affect the bottom line for a developer, especially residential development.
Yeah, in one study, it had a matrix, and it had like, you know, the cities on the left con, then it had like tentative track map, CUP, plan amendment, the different fees, and my recollection, by and large, that we were high, and was based on, again, it was based on a study, which meant that we were taking too long. In other words, if it took us, excuse me. Okay, sorry for the interruption. Anyway, sorry for the interruption. That if it's taking us six months to do what somebody else does in three months, that would certainly explain the differential in the cost and the fees. And so hoping that the Business Friendly Fresno seems to be doing well, it's successful, which means it's dropping down the times that people process, which ultimately will, should reduce the cost of these fees that make us competitive with neighbors. And then the other thing was that on the impact fees, which are separate, I think it was 2005 was the last major study of like, you know, parks fees, public safety impact fees and so on. So what is our plan now sometime this year to reevaluate all those impact fees?
Yeah, Public Works is already in the process of getting all the basic information. They've met with public safety, they've met with parks, and so we anticipate being back to council before the end of this calendar year. Depends on how much give and take we have with some of our outside stakeholders, because Councilmember Brand, you can remember that when we, it took us almost a year and a half to get the fees to council because of some concerns from other stakeholders over the cost. So there's, I don't anticipate spending as much time as we did negotiating on these fees. We're going to come up with a fee that we think is fair and equitable as well as competitive, and then be before council at, by the end of the year with our recommendation, and at that point, it'll be a policy call.
Yeah, to give one example, I think the current public safety impact fees are based on a presumption of say, two police officers per 1,000. I know we're not even close to that. A presumption of so many, like fire stations per so many square miles. I know there's a legal mandate, but all those presumptions, as I recall back in that study, were pretty much outdated. So once we update them, it should more favorably, you know, move the fees hopefully lower. So, but it's always a balancing act between the fees and staff, so thank you, Jennifer.
Good morning.
Yeah, I wanted to touch a little bit on the development and have you speak on it as far as, on new developments and the, you know, the creation of, or the fees that are generated from new developments for trails and for new parks from what new development generates. We have that southeast part of the city in the Sunnyside area where some of the building is now coming back and occurring, and so I know that some of those have been approved already, they've paid their fees, but I mean, what percentage of that is going toward the build out of some of that?
I'd have to check on with Public Works on what percent of the impact fees that come in are associated specifically with southeast portion of the community, but I can get that information to you. But there is a fee assessed per unit for multifamily and per unit for single-family residential development that is attributed to our parks program. So a portion can be assigned to the park that's developed within a neighborhood, and then any remainder is for construction of overall community and regional parks for the area.
So part of it stays in the area and part of it goes out into?
Depending on the cost of the park that's developed in the area, yes.
Okay.
Because until recently, what we found was happening is that a developer would realize that they had to pay $350,000 or $400,000 in park impact fees. What they had began to do was build a $400,000 park and get a credit for that, so therefore there would be no revenue coming in to pay for the debt service for parks that we've already built, which is the point why the general fund is now having to contribute $600,000 to cover the debt service for things we built four years ago, five years ago. So we are now, the direction was is that you will review the landscaping standards for these parks and make sure that we're not adding some unnecessary amenities that if we were to install or build in a park, I think the council would have issues with that. Interestingly enough, so would the BIA because they'd go, well, you're charging this impact fee because you're adding all these whistles and bells to these parks, and that's not what a park was, a true cost of a park is. So most of it until recently has just been staying in new development, and nothing has been coming in, which is why again, you've seen a decline in revenue.
Yeah, because I've gotten a few calls this year now of people that, property owners that bought homes maybe, you know, let's say even eight years ago in the southeast area, so it's still a fairly new development, but they said, well, when we bought our house, the developers told us that there was, the city was putting in a park here, and come to find out that that's not true. And another call that I got, they said, well, the developer told us that he offered to build a park, but the city said no and instead put in a linear trail through the neighborhood. And so I said, I don't think that's right, but you know, we'll look into that. So I mean, I don't know if those conversations went on or not. I don't, I don't have any of that past history, so we turn out being the bad guys, I guess. And so that was my reason for the question. Can you give me any update on the, on the Fancher Creek Shopping Center?
We continue to have biweekly meetings with the developer on their development operations plan, their site plan, and their infrastructure plan. They're working toward successful application and approval of their infrastructure plans at this point. They're probably 90% complete on their infrastructure plans. They've been going back and forth to ensure that they're accurate. As you know, Cashin likes to put in their infrastructure first and then start either selling off the parcels or developing the parcels for tenants. So that is the intent at this point for that commercial center is to have the infrastructure completely finished before they go out and start recruiting tenants. I know they're already starting to have those conversations with tenants, but they're pretty close to an approved infrastructure plan at this point.
Do they have, City Manager, do they have some grant monies that they need to use this year as coming here?
They have some, yes, they have some housing, some state funding that they need to get obligated for some senior development. They also recently applied and made it past the first round under cap and trade.
The what?
Cap and trade funding.
Yes.
So they're in the second round. That hopefully, knock on wood, would be used to provide additional infrastructure up to and including a BRT, a transit station, as well as a police substation.
How is that going? That was my next question, the police substation on?
You know, the chief and I have met with the developer. We've come, we've agreed to finally a square footage, a design, and have given the developer the green light to move forward with, moving the project to a 30%, so we can get an engineer's estimate as to what the cost, you know, is going to be to construct.
Okay, so the city's got the land now, we own the land?
We're in the process of, we will send a letter to the developer and to the housing authority who actually owns the property, saying that we will buy the land contingent upon the developer receiving the grant, the cap and trade grant, because the grant would pay for it. So we're in the process of moving that one forward.
Just so you know, the folks in that neighborhood area are going to consider that a godsend because that's what they're calling it. And so, okay, I want to thank you for that update, appreciate it. And finally, can you touch a little bit on the, on code enforcement for me, what you're proposing this year in that?
Right, so there, there's really two facets. One is pertaining to today's discussion on the general fund budget, and that's our blight team. So what the task force recommended was a team to address vacant residential blighted structures, and we are proposing in this budget to have a team consisting of a senior and four field personnel who would actually be working on identifying and addressing and remediating blight in the community through code enforcement action. So we are well on our way to implementation. We've identified specifically the training that we would provide to those individuals once they're authorized by the council and they're approved. Additionally, the council has also requested for, and the committee, excuse me, the task force recommended for assigned field personnel for each of the quadrants. We have four specific code enforcement quadrants that do general code enforcement, and so we would have four personnel assigned, one to each of the quadrants dedicated to code enforcement activities. So we have additional personnel in the budget recommended specifically for vacant residential blight and remediation removal of that, as well as for personnel identified specifically to each of the four quadrants, one in each of the four quadrants for the community.
Okay, if all that gets approved in this budget, how soon do you see the code enforcement folks that are, that would be assigned to the quadrant that go out on daily basis?
Probably, we're looking at probably 60 to 90 days to get through the hiring process and the training process, but we anticipate that by early fall, we'll have full complement in those categories so that we can really get out and enforce the code in the four
And I know the, some of the more recent years have been, have been pretty tough, and code is one of the ones that's really taken hits here and there, but I want to thank some of the folks in code that have weathered the storm. I see familiar friendly faces like Esco, Ellie, Anna, David, you know, they've just weathered the storm and have held in there. So I really want to thank you for the work that you folks are doing, but also have done in the past. I mean, you've laid the real strong foundation to just keep, keep working away at it, and I know you've had, like I said, weathered the storm through, through a lot of changes, so I want to thank you for that. And Dell, I want to thank you too for the responses that you've come through for us on stuff in District 5, so I'm waiting for an update on 3535 East Ventura as well, so that's, that's a busy one. But anyway, I just want to tell you that, you know, under Dell's leadership, it's, I believe they've done a really good turnaround in getting the work done and getting us the information on a timely basis. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
By the way, Esco, I think has become trilingual or bilingual or whatever it is. He's pretty good.
Hi, Jennifer.
Good morning.
I already ran this by Bruce, and we talked about it. I just wanted to share it with you and to share the council, I mean, whatever. It's kind of a surprise, but maybe not such a surprise. And I really, this is especially for my colleagues on the city council, related to the blight ordinance, and Andy as well to hear. We passed the blight ordinance that would require folks who have boarded up homes to put the plexiglass over the windows, but not the doors, on front-facing homes. And I voted for this, it was probably the part of the ordinance that gave me the most heartburn because of that requirement. And then the change that's going to come over the neighborhoods is absolutely going to be fantastic, however, financially, there's going to be a rush to purchase whatever product they choose, or windows or whatever it is, because they can't have boards. Well, I knew that it would have some unintended consequences. You know, obviously, the intended target is, our slum lords want to put the, get rid of the boards and put up the plexiglass. The unintended target were, what I'm probably estimating to be a very, very small number of homeowners who are, for whatever reason, economically unable to pay to make that switch. When you're talking about something small like where I live, might be one or two or three windows, but we do have a situation as it relates to the Mills family. The Mills family are the elderly folks, two sisters, who are in a nursing home, who own the now very infamous Clinton and Blackstone lot where the Smart and Final is going to be. And they have a tire shop, they have a Happy Steak Restaurant, what used to be, then they think they have four homes that are currently boarded up by plywood. This is a massive, massive, if they were to take them off and stack them up, would be a very tall pile of old boards. Well, the Mills sisters live in the old folks home, and that is paid for with the revenue from the tire shop that's on the Clinton and Blackstone lot. Well, the guys who are running the tire shop were also running a very industrial-style pot farm inside the tire shop, and it blew up one day and burned down. Well, since there's no tire shop or pot farm to create revenue, they no longer have money to pay for themselves to live in the old folks home. So the family reached out to me, and rightly so, you know, they're very concerned about the cost because really, all the buildings they have are front-facing, so they're going to have to change over a large quantity of these boards. And so I was thinking, and this is what I did, I think in passing mentioned it to our city manager, but in passing, and now I'm mentioning it to you and my council colleagues, is there, is there a way, or is there a grant, or is there a pot of money somewhere where we could devise some kind of program for those people who are, like the Mills family, who are unable to make this massive, I mean, to me, it seems like it's going to be a small number of people who would need this kind of assistance, but I think that it would, it's for the common good to help them. I wouldn't see it as a gift of public funds because, I mean, obviously, code enforcement doesn't want to go out and cite these people who don't even have an income anymore. Is there something that you could devise where maybe the city could have a stock of the plexiglass and people could apply for the plexiglass or something so that they could correct these problems? Because I mean, I think it's tough for them to make it, so is, I don't even know what the question is I'm asking, but do you kind of follow me?
I'm following.
Well, I think we all do.
Does anybody in this room know what I'm talking about?
So if I, I think, so if I understand, there's a family?
Yes.
That own two homes, vacant homes, near the intersection of Clinton and Blackstone.
They own the homes? They own the homes and the Happy Steak Restaurant.
And so they own all this property?
I think they may have the four homes.
And that all these, so all four homes have been boarded up for how long?
I guess a period of time. I'm not sure.
And but during that time, they were generating revenue, but that revenue was being used to sustain their ability to stay.
Yes, that is correct.
Do we have an estimate of what it would cost to retrofit the boards with Lexan, or should we look into that and get back to you about that?
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that. Why don't we, you know, Dell, can we just go out and get a ballpark and just get back, and we'll work with the council?
And maybe if city attorney could find out if the city were to provide some kind of plexiglass assistance to, if they could prove a hardship to provide some kind of plexiglass assistance, and would that constitute a gift of public funds, or would this be something that would be, for the common good, I do believe it would.
I believe we likely can make a public benefit finding through curing blight.
Nice. Okay, then, you, that's, that's what I want. I don't believe, do I have to make a motion? Would anybody want me to make a motion?
Is this more of an information request, Bruce, or you need to?
Why don't you let me work with the council?
Okay, we can, we can, we can capture it as an information request.
Yeah, and then I can always make a motion later if we had to. Thank you, staff, very much. Good work.
Perhaps that could come from district funds. Who knows?
All right. Councilmember Brandau.
All right. Hi, Jennifer.
Good morning.
I wanted to talk about the staffing, the section for DARM. And you've got a lot of stuff going on in DARM. You've got some divisions that are losing a couple folks, and then you've got some other divisions that are increasing pretty substantially. I think of, as I went through the budget, I think DARM is maybe adding the most personnel after, after law enforcement. So I just wanted to ask, what's going on there? Are some of the folks that are being eliminated in some division, this is page B74, for instance, Housing and Community Development Division is losing a couple folks, and Building and Safety is losing a person, and then several other divisions are gaining people. Are people shifting? So we're keeping the same, same personnel or in the department, but shifting within division?
So any of the reductions that you see are currently unfilled positions. So there's no personnel themselves that would be impacted by these shifts. So this would be a reassigning of the, of the position control number of the PCN from one division to another division within, shifts within the department.
Okay. So right there in Housing and Community Develop, Development, there's really no two people there that are losing their job or?
Correct.
Okay. All right. This is an unfilled position that's getting shifted. And then, so how about in the Community Revitalization Division, they're getting six new personnel? Tell me about that, and what's happening in that division that requires six new personnel?
So those are the code enforcement personnel that Jane was just discussing earlier. So we have personnel that will be assigned. So we have two unfilled positions that will be filled, plus two new positions that will be added to provide enforcement activities in the four quadrants. And then we have four positions that will be assigned strictly to the vacant residential blight team. So that is your six positions that would be created there.
Two and two?
So there's a total of six new being added. So two would be transferred, or two positions would be transferred. So it's a total of four new, four positions that will be filled for those activities, but only six are new.
Got it, got it. And then, all right, and so that's within code enforcement, right? And does that particular division of code enforcement have a specific task? Is that?
That, so all of code enforcement is responsible for public nuisance code, for housing code, for signs, for other activities that are either zoning-related or planning-related, building license, building permit-related, that are specific to the city's code and the enforcement of that code.
Okay. Councilman Brand, can you get control over your phone? I get, we, I get that. Okay, and then the Sustainable Fresno Division, how does that, what is, how does that differ from Community Revitalization Division?
That's our energy efficiency program, and that's funded through a collaborative partnership with PG&E. So our Sustainable Fresno Division is responsible for implementing our energy efficiency programs, the Business Energy Tune-Up Program and the Home Energy Tune-Up Program.
Fantastic. All right. And then finally, how about the HUD Division? They're getting three new folks. What's happening in HUD, and that we need three new folks, and what will they be doing?
So the HUD Division includes not only our administrative staff, but also our community, our neighborhood revitalization teams. So we'll have specific targeted, and we'll talk a little bit more about that tomorrow, but we'll have specific activities that are going out and analyzing and assessing neighborhoods, completing assessments of not only infrastructure condition, but also building and housing unit conditions, exterior and internal, interior. So it's a proactive code enforcement action. And then it also is then followed up with access to the rehab programs that we talked about last week. We'll talk more, I'm sure, about that tomorrow. And then personnel who would be assigned to monitor and manage our housing programs.
Okay.
One other thing, if, if I may, the three positions, actually, two of them are the ones that have been moved from the Housing and Community Development Division. So the negative two you see there?
Yeah.
Those two are actually moving down, and that's part of the three adds to the HUD Division.
Okay, that's kind of what I was.
So actually, so actually, two of those are just a move from one division to another. There's no change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But they will be filled under HUD though, right? Up there, they weren't filled. Or they're, they're going to be filled under HUD?
Right. Yes.
Have these hires already been made, or are they to be made?
No, these are to be made with the adoption of the budget after July 1.
Okay, okay. All right, that's good. Thank you very much.
I'm done, council president. Councilmember Soria.
Good morning, Jennifer. I just have a few questions in terms of trying to just understand the overall budget for the department. And you may have already addressed this in some of the questions that you, that were raised by my council colleague, Brand. So in understanding some of the, I guess, negative numbers I see here, I think page both 72 and 73 point to the five point, five million, about five, roughly $5 million. That is, well, it's a negative number. So if you can just explain?
So that is revenue that we anticipate receiving, or we anticipated receiving within this year from draws for our federal program expenditures, but they will not be received, or we don't anticipate that they will be received in this current budget year, so in the 1415 year. So we would be potentially receiving them in the 1516 year. So beginning fund balance reflects that negative monies that we anticipate being drawn down from our federal treasury account.
One other thing that also contributes to it, if, if I may, is the high-speed rail. There is funding, excuse me, for activities in this department that are funded by high-speed rail, and they have not yet given us permission to draw down on those funds. So that work has been done within that, within that fund, but we haven't been able to draw down on that money as yet. So that's, that's part of that, that $5 million negative balance. When we are given permission to draw down that money to reimburse ourselves for those expenditures, then that negative balance will go away. So it's, it's a matter of timing. It isn't a systemic problem. It's just timing is what it is.
So we will be receiving those?
Yes, we will.
Dollars at some point. It'd probably be nice to include a footnote or something, because I don't think that it's explained.
Okay.
So you're like, okay, we have a negative number, but I don't even know, you know, that high-speed rail is involved or other federal grant programs. I think
We can note that.
Just for clarity, a footnote would be appreciated. The other question was related to charges for services. And so there's a 21.4 decrease. Is there a particular reason there's that much of a decrease?
So charges for services include not only our activities that are related to entitlements, but they also include any other services that we provide through, through code enforcement and through our neighborhood revitalization program. So our services, as, as the city manager mentioned, primarily are entitlements. And as our entitlement activity levels out, we don't anticipate a large increase in those revenues. We're also seeing a different kind of entitlement activity rather than new maps, which would, which would generate a large, a large amount of revenue. We all, we have a revision of a map, which is a smaller activity. In some cases, it's an internal function. Sometimes it's a large revision, and it comes to council. But that's a, because of the, the shift in activity to more reinvestment rather than new, or just revising or re-enabling an existing map that's already out there, that contributes to that negative charge for service.
So is this something that we're going to continue to see decrease for the life, or is there something that we can do to ensure that, obviously, these revenues are important for the really, the operation of the department and the
Right.
other services that we provide? So what are your thoughts in terms of thinking long-term? Are we on a track where we're going to continue to see a decrease? Should we, should we be worried?
So I think there's, there are a couple things that could happen. The, the specific plans that are being developed in some of our new growth areas in Southwest and in West Central that we, that we've talked about, will look at not only what infrastructure is needed, but what the fee structure should be for new development in those areas. Should it cover the cost of the, the planning activity, as well as the infrastructure that's necessary for that region? And those regions will probably have their own specific fee structures associated, not only with entitlements, but also with impact fees and growth in those areas. Specifically, as it relates to vesting tentative maps. So state law allows a vesting tentative map to continue to renew its status and to essentially live on. So we don't have really a good feel for how many of those vesting tentative tract maps that are out there that someone's going to come back and renew and use as is, or clear off. There are some developers that are scrapping the original plan and starting over with a new plan, which would start with a new fee. Most of these, you know, existing maps that are out there were already assessed. Were already, so the process has already occurred in terms of our review and analysis and the cost that we expended to put it out. Now the cost is really just in the reanalysis. Is it, does it currently meet our standards? Can we move it forward, and can we process it? So I think Councilmember Brand had a good point, that this actually will speed up our process, speed up our review, which reduces overall our cost per, per application. And so I think there's a balance there. I think we'll hit a balance. But it's really hard to judge whether or not that new activity will increase, or if we'll just see reinvestment in existing maps and in existing development.
Good. The other question was related to code enforcement. I know that you mentioned that four staff will be, and one will be assigned to each quadrant, right? And so are those different from what I think you pointed out and what is pointed out on the budget in terms of the neighborhood revitalization teams?
Right. The neighborhood revitalization teams are funded with community development block grant funds. We'll be talking more about that tomorrow. And they are specifically targeted in neighborhoods that have been identified as being very low-income, high concentrations of poverty, as well as high concentrations of code enforcement activity over the past few years. And it's a proactive approach to going out and identifying specific code enforcement violations in every structure within a specific geographic neighborhood.
And so are those almost $1 million allocated from CDBG that will be covering at least
Yes.
the community revitalization activities pointed out?
Correct.
Under CDBG? Okay. And, and going back to your point, you just said that there are going to be targeted areas. Can you explain how you guys identified more specifically where are these areas going to be? Are there any in District One?
So a few weeks ago, the mayor presented the Restore Fresno Initiative, and it specifically targeted neighborhoods within our central core of Fresno that we will be providing proactive code enforcement, neighborhood revitalization. We'll continue to go back and monitor Lowell and El Dorado, Yokomi. We're starting to make the transition out of Yokomi, but we've made the initial assessment. And then adding neighborhoods in Kirk and Jefferson, specifically to go out and start reassessing and, or going door-to-door and assessing property condition, ensuring that we have not only exterior compliance, but interior compliance as well throughout those neighborhoods. So in terms of reinvestment and revitalization, those are the specific new target neighborhoods. And as we continue this program, we'll assess where those next neighborhoods need to be as we, as we go along.
So none of them are in District One?
At this point, none of them are, are in District One. However, we have really worked hard to try and identify how we're going to utilize the code enforcement resources from the general fund to ensure that we have good reinvestment in our established neighborhoods. So if there are specific neighborhoods that you have concerns about, or that we identify when we do our initial windshield survey for vacant residential blight, we can really concentrate on those as well with our regular code enforcement activities, rather than with the neighborhood revitalization activities.
And for the specific, the neighborhood revitalization program, I'm under the assumption, given that it's CDBG funds, is that we're augmenting services in those areas, right? We're not replacing?
It's significantly above and beyond, yes.
Because CDBG, at least in my, in my understanding, we receive it because we have a lot of poor neighborhoods in our city, and it is to augment services and not replace. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Correct.
That that's what we're doing.
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had on the lead paint program, again, there's targeted areas, and those targeted areas seem very similar to what you just mentioned in terms of the neighborhood revitalization teams. I, I appreciate in terms of, you know, the, the focus that the, that the administration has in terms of those specific neighborhoods, but I would like to see some of my residents benefit from some of these funds that are coming in. And so I don't know if my, any of my residents would, would qualify under kind of the SIP codes that you guys have identified here. So would my, would, would some of my residents qualify?
Absolutely. The program is available citywide. However, there, there are actually two programs. One is, is state funds, the childhood-led poisoning prevention program, the CLIP program, as well as the federal-led Hazard Control and Healthy Homes program. Those two programs are available to any owner, occupant, citywide, as well as any renter, as long as their landlord is willing to participate in the program with a child who has been tested and has been identified as having an elevated lead level. And those are usually identified by the, by the, our local county department of health. So they send us those names. They're in homes that were built prior to 1979. The highest concentration are, of those structures are in these SIP codes. So those are identified by the state and by the federal government for us as having the highest concentration of residential properties that have the, the probability of those, of the lead concentration in the paint. However, the program is available citywide, and we can provide you an update. Last fall, we provided a chart to the council as to how many Last fall, we provided a chart to the council as to how many properties we went out and assessed and abated last year in each of the districts, and we can provide an updated chart on that.
That would be great. So, when you say though that, okay, so I know that it's available citywide, which is great, but when you say that you guys will focus work on this specific, how is that done?
So, the, generally speaking, most of our clients are provided to us by the Department of Health. So, if a child is at the hospital or is at their pediatrician, they have an elevated lead level, that is automatically reported to the Department of Health. If that individual is identified as having, not having the ability to go out and to do the work or to make the repairs or to move or whatever it is, then those names are sent to us. In terms of outreach, we also go to events. We've been to the Fresno, Big Fresno Fair. We've been to other events where we actually have booths, do you have a child under the age of five? Was your home built before 1979? And then we can go through an assessment process to see if they qualify. We're always happy to reach out to other areas, but predominantly, those are sent to us in these zip codes mainly because the program funding targets those areas because that's identified by the state and the federal government as being our oldest building stock and our highest concentration of poverty.
Thank you. I have one more. On page 66, you talk about also the, and I guess going back to the community revitalization division and doing the proactive code enforcement. What kind of programs are those going to, in terms of the proactive code enforcement? What are they going to be?
So, the neighborhood revitalization teams do have a series of activities when they go out to a neighborhood. The first thing that they do is they map the neighborhood. They go out and walk the neighborhood and provide a criterion score of each of the properties to determine what level of disrepair that the property is in. And then, the team works with neighborhood leaders. So, it's a combination of capacity building and neighborhood reinvestment, bringing in programs like our rehabilitation programs, and providing assistance to these neighborhoods on how to organize, how to build capacity as a neighborhood, how to work with each other, how do they create a homeowners association or a crime watch group, along with going door-to-door and identifying the exterior, initially, the exterior condition of the property, and then asking to do inspections on the interior of the property, identify if those properties meet our health and safety standards, and then providing information and resources for the rehabilitation programs that exist. So, it's a very proactive, much higher level, very intense investment in those specific neighborhoods, above and beyond what our standard city services would be.
And so, those are what you just talked about, their empowerment program?
There is, yeah, there is definitely an element of empowerment in that particular program.
That's what you guys, that's what you mentioned here. So, and, okay. Those are all my questions for now. I guess, well, sorry, one last thing. So, for, in terms of the funds with CDBG, would that change depending on what we approve tomorrow? How does, what we're going to be working on tomorrow in terms of the consolidated plan change any of what is being proposed as part of the budget?
It could. Definitely, so, anything that's listed here in this section of the budget that relates back to the federal funding section, depending on what changes that you make here, it could impact tomorrow, or tomorrow could impact this section of the budget. They were intended to supplement and to work together as a unified action to provide reinvestment in our, particularly in our older and established neighborhoods in Fresno.
I said, that was my last question, but I just remembered. So, I see that we have anti-graffiti also being covered by the CDBG funds?
So, that is a portion. The city actually has a larger pool of funds that deal with graffiti abatement across the city. It's a really good tool to prevent crime within our neighborhoods and has, and to prevent blight as well as deterioration of property values within neighborhoods. We specifically provide that through community development block grant. We can talk a little bit more about that tomorrow in our specific neighborhoods. So, over and above what we would do citywide, we're really identifying through the neighborhood revitalization teams, where does graffiti exist? Where is it creating a problem within our neighborhoods? And then identifying and remediating that particular graffiti to make sure that we're preventing blight or further deterioration.
So, how much do we allocate on an annual basis for graffiti? This is, you just say here, it's close to half a million through CDBG, but what is the other?
Jane?
Yeah, the total budget actually can be found in the police department budget, which we'll be going over on Monday. It's on page B, 130. And it actually gives you the total graffiti abatement budget, which totals for FY16 about $1.2 million.
$1.2?
$1.2 million. So, there's 600,000 of CDBG funding, and then there's about an equal amount of general fund. Okay?
Thank you.
So, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
I forgot, just a couple more questions. About 10 years ago, or back in the 2001, 2005 era, the Sunnyside area had a mandate on the community plan that every new subdivision had to have a minimum of 5% green space. And as I, my recollection was as it, it was a choice to either include that within the development of the subdivision, or you could put it in like a mitigation bank and could be applied citywide. Do you have any knowledge of that, Jennifer?
I'm afraid, sir, I do not, but I can get you the information that you're requesting.
Okay. And then the question, I don't know what the new development standards are as far as green space. So, I guess as a question, could you explore that on a citywide basis to see if, again, a developer, and it could even be commercial as retail too, that there's a mandate of X percentage of green space? This is one method of trying to find some sort of funding stream, some sort of ongoing process to fund parks or even parks maintenance as far as that goes. And the other idea was on animal control, which is really from parks. And we went from about $2 million a year to about $3 million a year about three or four years ago. And that has no way that's going down. But I was doing some research on this. Most counties and other cities have impact fees on animal control because it's a mandated service. To my knowledge, we have none.
Animal control is managed by a contract, with SPCA.
Right. But in other words, to my knowledge, within our fee structure, there is nothing under animal control as an impact fee. Because most impact fees are based on mandated services. But just a question, and I'm not necessarily saying that we should do it, just explore the possibility.
Okay.
And that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero.
Forgot to ask you one question, Jennifer. Staffing-wise, what's being proposed in planning?
In planning, the staffing for planning remains the same. We will be filling, we've had a couple of individuals move or transition between, among, within the department and then outside the department. So, the number of authorized positions would remain the same in planning. Unless I'm misspeaking.
So, well, we're anticipating getting a little bit busier, right?
I'm sorry. There is an increase of 1.34 positions in the planning division. Really, what we've been focusing on is on the front counter and processing applications as quickly as we can at the lowest level possible. So, through Business Friendly Fresno, the initiative really enforces trying to get applications cleared, approved, and through the process at the lowest level possible. So, our focus has been on the front counter and then initial frontline staff to make sure that that process occurs more quickly rather than adding positions higher up in the organization. We have an agreement with High Speed Rail to process those specific applications and entitlements that are related to any relocations, and we do have positions that are assigned to that through our contract with High Speed Rail.
I know the morning meetings are really helpful, that you have the once-a-week, what is it, Tuesday mornings or Monday mornings?
So, every day, Monday through Friday, we have an enhanced counter from 10 to 12, which allows individuals to come in and to talk to personnel from public utilities and public works, as well as our staff. And then twice a week in the afternoon, we have the Development Review Committee on Tuesday and Thursday afternoon. And then every other week, projects that really need a higher level of attention, the development team meets on Tuesday mornings.
Yeah, the one I'm asking about is the, the one that used to be the, like, the directors' meetings?
Right. That's development team, and that meets every other week on Tuesday mornings, yes.
Okay. So, you're only going to be getting one new position then?
Right.
And what would that person be doing?
Oh, actually, the position that's being added is on, the narrative on that is on page B, 74. That is actually to shepherd the development of the specific plans, both in southeast Fresno and west of 99 freeway. So, that's the one position that's going to be focused on shepherding those plans and getting those started, and that's what the funding is.
So, they're going to be, they're going to be spending quite a bit of time on the specific plans, and that's great.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Cecilia reminded me to say that she's doing a great job and really appreciates that I say that. But no, I also wanted to thank Mike Sanchez and Brian for, you know, always helping me along and giving me direction, who I need to call on some of the plans that are going on. And Karina, I wanted to especially thank you too on all the help on the Huntington Boulevard district. So, good job, and thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand out.
Jennifer, a couple other questions I thought of throughout the conversation. Yeah, it's on. A, the River West specific plan, where is the funding for that inside of your budget? Or is that?
That is part of the general fund budget. So, there is $250,000 allocated for specific planning for the area west of 99. And that includes the one position that Councilmember Quintero was talking about for project manager to shepherd that specific plan as well as all of the other specific planning that's occurring right now.
Jane, is, could you really quickly, where is that? What page of that? Would I find that in the line item veto?
That would be on page, I believe it's on page 71, I mean, 41. I apologize.
41?
Yeah. It's under professional services consulting. That's part of it right there. And then there's also some money up, obviously, in permanent salaries because of the planning manager position that we have. So, it's kind of in two separate places. It's on page 41, though, under the development.
I found page 41, and where is it on 41?
Okay. It'll be both in the line item 53302, which is professional services consulting outside. And then also, it'll be up in permanent salaries because it funds the planning manager that will be shepherding those projects and beginning their implementation.
And what is that second number then? So, 53302?
53302, right. It's part of that 2.7 million. There are various other things that are in there as well, but that's a part of that, that's a part of that number.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Jennifer, a couple times in the conversation, you mentioned High Speed Rail. Where are we at contractually with High Speed Rail in the city of Fresno right now? Are they paying their bills? Or how much do they currently owe the city of Fresno?
So, I can't give you a specific on how much we are waiting on reimbursement because it's over several departments that we have contractual agreements with them. But we are, we continue to have a good working relationship. We continue to move our projects forward, and we are just waiting for authorization to draw down those dollars. But I can get the specific amount.
Yeah. Well, Councilmember Brand out. Renee?
Yes.
I think that when we talk with Public Works, Scott Mosher will be able to give you a more comprehensive overview as well of the status.
Is that true, Scott? Fantastic. All right, then. I'll look forward to it at that point, then. Thank you, Jennifer. I'm done.
All right. Very good. The screen is clear, so I'll ask a few questions. So, Jennifer, let me just, what are kind of your, in your opinion, your top highlights of this past, this past year? I know you probably have several, so I want to give you an opportunity to brag on your department a little bit.
Thank you. I appreciate that opportunity. We have accomplished a lot this year. This has been a really good year for growth and for learning within the department. We've really focused on our three Ps of the general plan. So, to protect existing and established neighborhoods, to preserve quality of life and the character of those neighborhoods, and to promote reinvestment. And so, the way we've accomplished that is through additional really focusing of our resources in code enforcement and community revitalization, streamlining our activities at the permits counter. You've seen how we've really focused on how do we get that best customer service experience at the building counter? And it's resulted in improved timing of processing of applications. It resulted in better customer satisfaction on projects that come in that are ready to go, of really working.
Just a quick question, because I'm glad you mentioned that. So, the better customer satisfaction, are we measuring that some kind of way, like maybe with a survey or something like that?
So, we've started a customer service survey, and we'll be providing those results to you at our annual update on Business Friendly Fresno. We're really pleased with the changes in the way the application process. And right now, we're just getting some very honest feedback from individuals who really want the city of Fresno to do well. And that's been really good for us to say, here are some things that you're still not doing very well, but we like overall the process and where it's going. And that's been really helpful for us because it's allowed us to continue to make tweaks. And we don't consider the process ever finished. It will continue to improve and to continue to grow. And then code enforcement has really focused on removal of blight and trying to focus on those public nuisances that create situations in neighborhoods where individuals feel that their property value has declined or their quality of life has declined. And so, Dell Esterbrook and his team have worked really, really hard to citywide address that and really prioritize how we're addressing code enforcement. Community revitalization, as Councilmember Soraya brought up, we're really focusing in on specific neighborhoods, providing that above and beyond service in neighborhoods that have high concentrations of poverty, high concentrations of code enforcement activities. Additionally, obviously, the adoption of the general plan was a huge accomplishment for the division and the department. And now, starting, coming back this summer with the corrections, the bucket B that the council directed us to come back with, along with the new development code that is ready to come back to the city council for adoption. And again, a development code has to continue to change and to grow and to adapt. Just because we adopt one this year doesn't mean that it's finished growing and changing. We know that the market changes over time. So, that was an enormous and huge accomplishment. And there are many more accomplishments within the department, but I appreciate the time that you gave me to highlight those.
All right. No worries, no worries. And you kind of led into my next question, which was some of the goals for, the goals and priorities that you want to set for next year. But they kind of, from what it sounds like, I mean, they kind of tie into some of the things that you've kind of queued up this year, maybe the year before. But if you have any additional priorities that maybe you haven't had a chance to state, we'd be curious to know, what do you see on the horizon for the department coming up?
Absolutely. So, obviously, blight is a really critical piece of restoring our neighborhoods, really focusing in on removing specific blight that affects day-to-day lives for individuals who do business. for individuals who do business in certain areas of the community and who live in certain areas of the community. And that's really critical to accomplishing our goal of reinvestment. We want thriving, successful neighborhoods. We also accomplish that through continuing to improve our business processes and identifying revitalization tools, whether it's an incentive program or it's a streamlining of processing. How do we make sure it's easy for people to reinvest in their home and their neighborhood and in their businesses? So those are some really key functions. And one of the ways we accomplish that is through improvement in technology. So Business Friendly Fresno, we have continuing efforts to identify the technology that the city wants to go to. So make it very clear for internal departments, for not just our department, but citywide, to be able to use and access geographic-based information. So to be able to click on a parcel and understand what's going on there, not just what are the entitlements and the building permits, but also are there code violations? What's the property value? What's the ownership? Does it have access to utilities or to transportation? And so that then helps us generate economic development leads and helps us provide information to the community in a much better manner.
And while I have you on that topic, that's actually one of my questions, that tool you're talking about, that technology tool, that will be available to all departments citywide to tie in with you guys, or how would that work?
Right. So right now, we're doing an assessment. So we have a consultant next level who is looking at our current system. How does our current system work, our land management and permitting system? And then they're going to provide us some solutions. Here's where we want to go. And so we anticipate next year, they will be helping us develop an RFP so that we can actually go out and see how we can acquire that on an enterprise-wide or a citywide system, because it's really critical that our various departments, Public Utilities, Public Works, Police, Fire, our department, all work in unison to understand what's going on in other areas of the community as well, to make sure that we're providing the right services and we're getting the right information.
No, I'm very glad to hear that, because that was just one of the questions I had, was how are we going to integrate that new technology? I mean, because obviously, a lot of it can be used with cross-departments. I mean, quite honestly, you know, to make sure that we're integrating fully through the citywide system. So I'm glad to hear that. When do we think that RFP is going to be out, and when can we kind of expect to hear back, hear more on that?
The contract proposes to work with us to analyze our current systems over the summer, to develop the RFP over the fall. We anticipate releasing it in the winter and being able to come back in the next budget cycle with a proposed budget. I'm expecting that it'll take a series of years to pay for that and potentially a fee that would be associated with that in our building permitting or entitlement process that would allow to pay for that over a series of years.
Okay. No, that's great. I know during the general plan, I think we talked a lot about that. I know Councilmember Brand has spent an exhaustive amount of time really explaining the need for that and really consolidating that. So I'm glad to hear that that's moving forward. So does this budget really give you, in your opinion, everything that you need? I know the city manager's sitting right there, but do you think that we're giving you, the proposed budget is providing you all the resources your department needs to run efficiently and effectively to really carry out this mission?
It is, this budget really focuses our resources where we need them the most, which is our reinvestment in our established neighborhoods, creating processes that work that are efficient, that are good for the customer, and creating programs that establish the ability for others to invest in our community. So it definitely identifies the resources that are needed and targets them in the right areas.
Well, she answered, she answered right, Bruce. All right. So now I'm going to kind of switch a little bit. I have a few specific questions, and some of them, quite honestly, were asked by my colleagues. So I scratched a few of them off the list. But kind of like when I look at the org chart, you know, it's a big department for sure with a lot of moving pieces. And I always share that with Bruce, and I think I've shared it with you too. I recognize the complexity of how many moving pieces you have, and sometimes not all of them, you know, line up precisely. But so when I look at the development services that includes kind of current planning and building and safety, what is current planning as opposed to long-range planning?
Great question. Current planning would be considered the entitlements, zoning, CUPs, all site plan review, tract maps, the kinds of things that allow you to actually go then to the building permit department. So the intent of the Development Services Division is from I'm thinking about a project to I've moved into my new business or my new home. So it provides that full continuum of services under one person to ensure that not only does the entitlement process go smoothly, but also the permitting, the plans review, and the inspection services go well as well.
Okay. So was this kind of tied into BFF? Is that kind of one of the, okay, okay. So that's where, that's how, okay, that's great. And then when I kind of look, when I look at Neighborhood Services, it's, you know, we have an assistant director of Neighborhood Services. Who is that?
That is Dan Zach.
Okay, so that's Dan, okay.
Right, right.
Okay. So I know, and I know the other thing we have. So just to be clear, code enforcement and parking services, both of those are Dale, right?
Yes.
All right, great, great, great. So I was kind of wanting to switch a little bit to the community revitalization and NRT, and just what are some of the highlights of NRT this year? I mean, I know that they're probably doing a lot of good work. Sometimes it's always not translated back to the office. So, you know, again, I want to give an opportunity specifically for that team. I know it's kind of a new team. It's kind of up and going. What are some of the highlights and kind of what they accomplished this year?
The Neighborhood Revitalization Team right now is a small team. We're obviously hoping to expand it next year to two teams to be able to double the amount of accomplishments of the team. But really, they have focused in on a new neighborhood, Yakomi, as well as continued maintenance of existing neighborhoods in Lowell and El Dorado. And their main focus is really building that relationship with the neighborhood, building capacity within the neighborhood to understand what are the rules within the city? How do we get the right kind of investment in our neighborhood? How do we ensure that our properties are maintained to a certain standard? So developing a relationship with the principal of Yakomi, the parents at Yakomi, going out and walking the neighborhood on a daily basis with our partners in the police department, working with other departments to ensure that we get the right signage that's necessary. There were some trees blocking a stop sign at the elementary school, which caused some kind of scary incidents in the morning because children would be walking across the street and a car wouldn't stop. They have worked with property owners to say, hey, you can't maintain your property like this. There's a higher standard. You're expected to maintain a property at a higher level. To ensure there aren't illegal activities, illegal businesses, illegal signs, making sure that we're really focusing in on a neighborhood. What are all the things that need to occur in that specific neighborhood to bring it up to a high, sustainable level? So that has been their primary focus this year. They've looked a little bit at Jefferson, and they've looked a little bit at Kirk in terms of starting to pull the map and the ownership. But there will be a higher level of focus of those activities in those two neighborhoods next year.
Okay. And that was kind of leading into my next question. As we bring the other team online, they're going to be in Kirk and Jefferson?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That'd be great. I would love to have just more of a regular communication with kind of, especially the Kirk neighborhood. I'm getting a lot of, it's always been high on our radar for the last few years, as you know. But I think there's an opportunity there to kind of coordinate, certainly with the NRT teams and that. So how many positions does, how many positions do we have in NRT right now?
Currently, we have a total of seven individuals, seven funded positions. We have four that are filled, and then a manager. So a total of five positions that are filled, eight authorized. We'll be adding one new authorized position so that we can actually split the four field team members into two teams instead of one team. But there'll still be four people on each team that will be able to go out into the neighborhood. So we'll be able to actually double the workload that's being accomplished right now.
Okay. And the reason I ask, because I noticed we're deleting a community coordinator position and a revitalization supervisor. How does that fit into?
So we want to get the right mix of individuals in the, out into the field. So we had originally proposed three community coordinators. We're going to utilize two, and the rest will be from our senior revitalization specialist classifications, so that we can actually have not only the code enforcement activities going on, but also that coordination with the neighborhood. So we have the capacity building and the community building occurring at the same time. So it's really a transfer of the type of activity that's being accomplished, and it's not eliminating a person. Again, it's just a reassignment of those roles.
Okay, that makes sense. And listen, the truth of the matter is, you know, I'm excited about the NRT teams and realize that they have a really, a heavy load to carry in these communities. And we want to, I want to work as collaboratively as possible with them and want to be advocates for what they're doing in these communities because they need it, right? Our communities need them. And I just want to make sure we're getting everything we can out of it. Very happy to hear that we're going to be adding, bringing a new team online. Was a little concerned that we were cutting positions, but now that you've explained, we're going to be, it's really more of a small reorganization to, it sounds like you're doing that to make it a little bit more effective on the ground, from what I can hear from that. So I'm good and glad to hear that they're going to be in Kirk too, because I know that, you know, we've been trying to get some presence over there for a while. Kind of with overall code enforcement, I know there's been a lot of discussion over the last few years, especially by me, about what type of code enforcement officer, what type of code enforcement activity we should do. And we talked a lot about making sure that we have the right mix in code. For instance, you know, we need building, you know, building and safety people, people with construction backgrounds. And I know we talked a lot about really going out and making sure that, you know, as we do the code function, that we have people with those backgrounds to execute, you know, code enforcement. Are we moving in that direction? Are we recruiting people like that? Are we, you know, organizing the department in that fashion?
So as you stated previously, our code enforcement manager, Mr. Estabrook, has done a really, really good job of realigning those resources to make sure that every team has that broad cross-section of skills, so that within each quadrant, we have someone who can deal with the building and construction questions that come up, so that we can assign those cases to that individual, or they can assist others within the team on those cases. So it's really making sure that the right skill sets are within each of those quadrants so that we can provide those services. And additionally, within our demolition team, we have an individual who's very skilled in that. So his sole purpose is to go out and to assess properties and determining whether or not they need to be demolished. And we've really, we talked a little bit about last year, the funds needed for outside contractors to be able to demo properties that have been sitting on the blighted building list for a long time, that the owners have pretty much walked away and said, I'm not going to deal with it. So we've been able to start moving through that list this year, and that was something that was a big accomplishment this year. And so we anticipate continuing that program next year to start really clearing out properties that cause blight and unsafe conditions within neighborhoods.
Okay, so those persons you mentioned are already, they're already online, they're already working. Okay, great. I mean, that's good, because I know that was something that I've been personally talking about for a couple of years, just, you know, making sure we have people that understand what, you know, when they're looking at it, when they're looking at a building, and they see an infraction, you know, they get it, you know, and they can work with the property owner to get there, but they also understand what they're looking at. So I'm very glad, very glad to hear that, that that is happening. And just kind of a couple of general questions. So I see that we have an, I think it's on B71, we have an increase in rent of $170,000? Did I see that right? Is it City Hall? It says a City Hall rent?
Yeah, the rent is allocated based upon square footage, and so it's reevaluated each year by facilities, yeah.
Okay, so that number kind of changes each year. Okay, all right. It just jumped out to me. Was just curious how that was configured. Those are really all my questions. Thanks, Jennifer. We're, you know, obviously, I know that, you know, overall, you know, the department's been really in a state of transition. There's some really, really good things happen. I know you guys have some challenges over there too. So hopefully, what we can do is tell a complete picture of what's happened in this department. But obviously, you know, we're here to help. We're a team, we want to make, we want to make it work. So, you know, consider us here for what you guys need to move forward. Councilmember Brandow.
Jennifer, I want to ask Dell to come up for a second, if that's okay.
Do what?
Can I ask Dell to come up for a second?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hey, good morning, Dell.
Good morning. Dell Estabrook, Code Enforcement and Parking Services Manager.
So Dell, last year, we did a, we made a transition from our parking. We went from one company to another company. We went through an RFP process. How is that working out so far? Can you give us an update?
Sure. The new company is called SP Plus. That's the former worldwide company known as Standard Parking Company. When they bought a couple of new companies, they've changed the name a little bit to SP Plus. They've been with us since one February. In my opinion, they've done very well. It does take time to do things. I have a massive project where we want to look at creating a system, a one system, for all the parking garages and lots that we have in the city. And it's the newest technology. I've actually have an expert out of Chicago that works for them looking at that for me. We've also come up with a new webpage that will attach to our City of Fresno webpage that highlights all the parking and what their responsibilities are, and it actually makes it easier for you to buy parking permits and validations, et cetera. Customer service is on the rise. They've implemented a new security system. I met with them yesterday, and we have a new maintenance contract that we're going to look at in about two months. So they had to start them fresh on Grizzlies baseball. So had a couple of issues first night that we got corrected. Pretty good since then, it's been fine. So overall, I think they're doing very good.
And how long has the new company been actually up and running?
Since one February this year.
Just since February?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so in your opinion, the early assessment is we made a correct decision by making a change and moving forward, and the things that we talked about throughout the RFP process, some of the complaints that had come in are being addressed?
Affirmative, yes, sir.
Fantastic. While I've got you up here, Dell, you're also the division head of code enforcement. And I think when the public hears, you know, so it sounds like there's a lot of different things that code enforcement does. In my mind, you're kind of like classic code enforcement, where somebody calls in, there's a complaint, there's a problem in a neighborhood, and you and your team are the ones that address that. Is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay. Because in all reality, this is still a lot of what district, this is the type of code enforcement that my district, the phone calls come in about. And so how are we doing in your department, classic code enforcement, addressing problems, not ongoing problems, but you take care of a problem, and then the next day, there's a different problem, the next day, there's a different problem, instead of a conceptual addressing of code?
It's just like the mail, isn't it? What you had yesterday, you have today, and you have tomorrow. We are still a little bit reactionary. I can't do a lot of go out and get ahead of something before it happens, you know, staffing. We're going to get some new people that will help out. We respond almost immediately to any health and safety concerns, and we correct those on the spot immediately. You know, we do respond a lot with police. Police call us every day. We're equipped with police radio. So that's another immediate response when we have to help out. So all in all, I think we're providing the city a good service.
Okay. And then although I asked a series of questions about staffing when I first punched in, are any of these additional staffing positions underneath your division of code enforcement?
All of them, yes, yes. The blight team will fall under me. The MA3 will be the head of our administrative staff, our clerical staff, they will fall under me, and the four new people, those two. So all of them.
Okay, fantastic. I would like to, throughout the process, after we're done with budget, I'd like to sit down with you and kind of review code enforcement. Again, it's still, it's still really what my office receives, the bulk of their phone calls about, is classic code enforcement. They're not looking, they're looking at, hey, can you help us with a quick fix over here? Somebody's done something, and it just needs to be cleared up. And so we get a lot of those calls, so.
Yeah, we're set up in a quadrant system, so we have people in each of the areas. And usually, I have a supervisor in each of those quadrants. We can help out pretty quickly.
So to have a robust team that responds to these type of So to have a robust team that responds to these type of code enforcement issues, do you feel like you have, you're staffed properly? I mean, I know that the answer is, there's never enough, but do you feel like you have enough people to meet the requirements that you, the amount of pressure you hear from seven different council districts and others?
Currently, yes. But when we start, let me give you a great example. When we implement the new blight, the blight ordinance, and we start cleaning up homes in a quicker manner, rather than years, we're talking months. So then the possibility is I have to take a look at my demo team, which is one member. If we're going to get rid of some houses quicker, we may need to staff that team. So the specialty teams is what we're going to focus on in the next year to see what we're going to need going forward in the future.
Interesting. Please keep me up to speed on that because I feel like, like I mentioned twice already, this is where District 2 gets the phone calls, and this is where I'd like to be, really meeting the needs of my constituents, so. Thanks a lot, Dell.
Sure thing, thank you.
I'm done.
All right. All right, that's, looks like that's all we have for DARM. Next up, we have fire. Jane?
Counsel, point of order, council president. How long, and from our department head or chief, how long do you think that fire will take?
That is entirely up to you and the other six of us. So I don't know. I already have councilmember punched up. I'm assuming fire could be a robust discussion?
Okay. Are you?
Thank you. Jane?
All right. The fire department narrative begins on page B-83. They are a general fund department. Their total budget for next year is $60.6 million. Their revenues are declining slightly from FY '15 primarily because of the deletion of bond proceeds that we had anticipated in '15 to construct Fire Station 18. Those are no longer in the budget for '16. Also, federal grant revenues are reducing because a safer grant is terming out, and so we will be receiving fewer grant dollars for that grant, and the general fund will be taking over those expenses. There's also a slight adjustment in the North Central contract due to a calculation adjustment. Approximately 78% of their appropriations are funded directly from the general fund. They do bring in some charges for services, primarily for inspections, hydrant flushing and maintenance fees, false alarm responses, and incident cost recovery. They also receive reimbursement for the Fig Garden Area Fire Protection District and the North Central Protection District, and also from Fresno-Yosemite International Airport. There is the second year of the three-year repayment to the North Central Fire Protection District. That was under a contractual agreement that was going to rectify a calculation error in the fee calculation, and so that has been budgeted for this next year. There's also a $135,000 transfer from the general fund to pay for a needs assessment and bridging documents for the fire department's fleet maintenance shop. The fire, also, the expenditures include a truck company and shift replacement. As you no doubt know, the department will add a truck company to Station 9. There is approximately $1.2 million in the department's budget to cover the staffing cost as well as equipment. Two fire inspector twos have been added to address inspections, plan reviews, and new construction appointments. There is also a slight increase in the EMS contract that is included, and that is contractual in nature. Also, as I've mentioned earlier, the fleet maintenance shop assessment will be going on this year. That is a very old facility that will need to be updated, and they are beginning to do a needs assessment on that. Also within the budget is the beginning of an eight-year replacement of their apparatus, and not just their apparatus, but also their light duty vehicles. And so that has been figured into the five-year to completely replace their fleet, and so that budget, or that lease payment, has been worked into not only the '16 budget, but also the next four years. The technology service charges are slightly increases, are slightly increasing. There is funding also, not necessarily in this budget, but for the communications assessment. There's also some money being set aside in solid waste for that assessment that will take place this next year. Also, there is some new equipment that is funded. Again, it is not in this budget, it is actually in general city purpose, but they will be replacing 320 radios that are nearing the end of their useful life, and there's $147,000 to do that. And there's also $50,000 in general city purpose to cover the movement or the replacement of a fiber optics line while the construction on Fulton Mall is being undertaken. Again, that concludes my presentation, and I believe the chief is here, along with her staff, to answer any questions.
Oh, councilman Soria, I think you punched up.
So I have a few questions. I'll just make some comments in terms of what I see in the budget. I'm actually excited to see some investments in our fire department. I know that over the years, there were cuts and some funds that I think in terms of really needing investment. So before I go further with any other comments, I wanted to ask specific questions, and maybe, Jane, you can first, this question will be to you, and then I'll have some questions for you, chief. You know how you mentioned that some of the funds for some things that are happening for the fire department are not within this budget, but within the general?
General city purpose budget, yes.
Why do we do that?
That is primarily a tracking mechanism. It's just to ensure that the money is spent on that particular item. It's just a tracking mechanism. It enables me, as the budget manager, to keep control over those funds and to ensure that they are spent on that particular item.
Okay, and so within the general city purpose you mentioned, can you just?
Yes.
Mention some of the things that?
That is correct.
Are going to be?
Yes, and I believe it is mentioned within the narrative there.
So it's, can you just outline them again?
Oh, sure. There is $147,000 to basically replace, to replace 320 radios. The fire department had requested funding for those. I believe they are nearing the end of their lifespan.
That's correct.
And so that money has been allocated for those replacements. And also, due to the construction of the Fulton Mall, there will be a disruption in the ability of the fire department headquarters to communicate with, I believe it is, City Hall?
Yeah.
Okay. And so that money has been placed in here in order to do a workaround, at least until the construction is finished, and then they can presumably go back to whatever they're using now.
Okay, so then specifically just on the budget outlined here on B-87, I wanted to understand, what are the fines in terms of the monies that we're seeing? Because I know that last year, we had 600, and now it's 3,600. I'm just wanting to have some understanding of what are those fines? And also, the other revenue? I don't know.
Those were $200, their citation fees, people failure to pay inspections that were conducted, and there's a citation that can be attached to that, very similar to what code enforcement has had in place for years.
And who does this? The inspectors or?
Inspectors.
Okay. And then is that, those are just the fines? What about other revenue? We see a decrease. I think last year, we had about 21, almost 22,000, and now we are estimating 9,400?
We were, we would contract in and do repairs on some apparatus. We had to stop doing that, for the most part, because we need to take care of our own stuff, and we were down on mechanics at the time, so therefore we decreased in revenue coming in, doing the work.
Just a couple, I guess, wanted to get maybe some updates. I know that in a few meetings, council meetings ago, I had asked for us to start the process and the scope review and maybe the RFP process in terms of the communications study or analysis that I know that is really needed. So I just wanted to get an update where that's at. I don't know if the funds are within this budget?
Yep, let me touch on that. That process has been moving fast and furiously. We have folks, Mike Dotay from ISD, our folks are working on what fixes can occur right now with our current system in the interim. City manager's been very, very supportive of putting money right to the southeast part of town, the American Tower, and getting some repeaters and equipment up in that tower today, as a matter of fact. And the long-term approach is the consultant. We have worked with police, fire, and public works. They're all part of that RFP process to bring that forward and start putting that out as soon as we can. I'm hoping within the next two weeks to hire a consultant to come in and tell us what type of things we need to build a robust public safety communication system, and so then this council will have an idea of what that cost is going to be, and it'll be significant to do it right.
So two weeks before we contract? So we already went out to RFP?
We have not yet. We, police, fire, and public works had to work on the scope of work, what we needed to see in that RFP, things we were looking for to make sure that that was captured. Just a simple example would be all the radios that we have currently, the ones we are going to purchase, to analyze that and make sure that it'll be compliant with the needs we have in the city. Police had the same charge. So there are steps to get to the RFP process, and we're very close.
Okay, so good. I'm glad to see, I know that we had talked about?
Yeah, and this was a follow-up, our previous council meeting. So the direction was given to the chief and staff, get the scope of work developed. We're going to assume that we're going to get the green light to move forward, and so we're going to go forward. We'll issue the RFP in the next two weeks to get the consultant on board. I will tell you that in discussions with both the chiefs, and we're talking about a communication system that's probably 15, 20 years old. This is going to be, it's not in our five-year projections right now. This is a significant infrastructure project. We're talking millions of dollars to replace a communication system. And while we will aggressively pursue grants, it's highly unlikely we are going to find grant funding to cover the entire amount, and we're probably looking at anything from six to eight million dollars to replace this communication system. Again, it goes back to when you don't set money aside for things such as communication systems, then at some point in time, they come home to roost, and we'll be scrambling to try to find funds to cover that future liability.
And is this, is that something that we're going to look to start setting aside for? And so maybe not in this budget, but?
Well, that's part of the discussion around building reserves, is that you need to have money set aside to build or to buy or, without having to go out and lease, like we've been doing for a number of years. You need to start establishing, we need to start establishing both operating reserves and capital reserves, and capital reserves is not something we've ever talked about. But the reason that we're leasing trucks and we're leasing police cars is because we don't have those kind of funds set aside for future replacement of assets.
I also noticed, and I think Jane mentioned, the decrease of North Central Fire Services contract. Can you just maybe explain that a little bit more? I think it's 100,000 less?
Well, it's a few hundred thousand less, and this is the second year of a third-year repayment plan. It was, we had a, the CPI and the, was a negative, and in the contract language, there was a dispute on how that was calculated. And the determination was made that we erred on the side, on one side, and we needed to repay them that amount. And so we went through some discussions, and we are still looking at the North Central contract going forward to see if we can make some adjustments to make sure it's a win-win for both the city and the district.
My other question, maybe just an update, I know that we've, in the last maybe year, I believe, in terms of the fire inspector program, just wanted to get an update for all of us, where we're at?
Sure.
I know that there was a shift.
There was. But back in August, we had direction from this council on a change in, a course on how we were going to implement fire inspections, and we had a pilot program. All of you received a memo in March through the city manager, and then I met with each one of you to talk about that, the outcomes of that program in different areas, the successes and some less than. I also presented to you four options and a recommendation of the options. We are going to move forward, the plan is to move forward with a inspection program of most building or businesses every four years. There will be state mandated inspections that will continue to occur annually. The other successes of the program since last August were moving two fire inspectors to DARM to conduct residential sprinklers. It has worked out very well, and we'll continue with that approach. The firefighters are pre-fire planning and conducting inspections on multifamily residents or apartments. Those are mandated annual inspections, and those are moving along very well. But we need to revisit the self-inspection program approach. We were not very successful with that and had some pretty good feedback and support of how that worked. We are recommending going forward that we inspect all buildings every four years, with the exception of about 5,300, 3,000 square foot or less, B-occupancies would be self-inspected, or at least offer them the opportunity again to be self-inspected. If there is a non-compliance, then we would go out and inspect those buildings at about a 35% rate is our goal with the staffing that's proposed, and that would include the two inspectors that are in this proposed budget.
Do our current fees for these inspections cover the funding it takes to maintain our inspectors or?
No, the general fund picks up about 45, 50% of the actual cost for the entire program, about 40% of the inspectors. They do bring in their revenue with their inspections, but there is an offset. The general fund does pick up part of that cost to have a robust fire prevention program.
Do we know what are those revenues from fire inspections?
We do. In the proposed, the current fee level, inspection fee revenue is about 360,000 approximately, if we were fully staffed, with the proposed, yeah, with the proposed two inspectors.
And how long ago was it that we revisited the fee structure that we have for fire inspections?
Well, at one time, we had, we used to inspect every business. If it was a low hazard, every other year. Every other business that was a high hazard or was annually inspected. But we also had, you know, six additional inspectors. So during the economic downturn, that changed. There has been several businesses that we haven't been into in seven to eight-plus years. And so we are trending back, if we don't make a correction here, to go back to not being in these businesses and addressing any fire prevention efforts in a proactive way. And so this is just to start doing that. It's not the best model, but it is the most realistic model and approach leaning back into the inspection process.
But I guess my question, maybe, I don't know, I didn't make it clear, in terms of the fees that we charge for inspections, when was the last time that we updated, or how do we generally do that with?
The last time the fees were updated, accurate, or increased were probably in 2008, 2008.
And our inspection fees, are they generally kind of trending similarly to other cities our size in terms of the?
Our fees are lower.
Lower?
Yeah, our fees are lower. Right now, our fees are approximately 40% of the actual cost.
The other thing, maybe you can speak to that, to some of the, one of the really positive things that I see in the budget as well is the Station 9. the really positive things that I see in the budget as well, is the Station Nine adding that truck. Maybe if you can speak to what it means for our community, for the department, in terms of staffing levels?
Sure, absolutely. This is, you know, this is one of the challenges that the city administration, the mayor have, and now you do with, it's a good challenge to have. Now, we're adding things and rebuilding this city, and to try and do it in a balanced way is, is very challenging. And I, I'm very pleased with what this fire department has, has been able to rebuild. The commitment to rebuild the public safety is definitely there, and, and I believe that all of you are walking your talk as well with your commitment to that, and I'm appreciative. Truck nine was not planned in the five-year budget. We presented an idea with using, utilizing the relief pool to the city manager and his team, and, and they came up with a solution and, and put that in the budget, and so I couldn't be more pleased about that. We're going from seventy to seventy-three firefighters on duty each day, so we're improving our minimum daily staffing. That's absolutely essential in a city this size, and not only for our service delivery, but also for firefighter safety. But beyond just truck nine, you know, it reaches, it'll reach the northwest part of Fresno, which is much needed. There's a huge gap there for truck response, but also in the central and core downtown area of the city. So, it's, it's a huge step in the right direction in the rebuilding process.
Yeah, that's one thing that I'm excited to see here in the budget. I know Station Nine obviously is in my district, but in terms of the benefits that I see for the entire community, especially for west of the ninety-nine as well, in terms of having another truck that, you know, could be accessible if there's a, a fire or something. And so, in terms of reducing some of our response times.
Well, it decreases the pressure on the engine at Station Nine. They run, you know, thirty, in excess of about thirty-eight-hundred calls a year, and that's just too many calls for one apparatus, quite frankly. And so, when, where we see those issues, that's where we need to start looking at adding back our resources.
Well, I'm excited about that as well, so, and I'm sure, I know, I do want to say thank you for, for the work. Thank you to our department, our, our staff, our firefighters, for everything that they've done, and really doing an awesome job with the little resources that you guys have had given, you know, kind of our economy. But I, I'm excited to see a renewed investment and, you know, starting, I think this is a start. You know, we'd hope, obviously, to, to see more in terms of being able to reach the staffing levels that are appropriate for our city, because, you know, while we're adding a few, a few more, I think three, right?
Three on duty each day, yes.
Is, is a positive thing. I would like, you know, for us to really continue to see that grow, given the, the, not only how many people live in the city of Fresno, but just the square mileage. We are very spread out. And so, I think having that capacity to really address, you know, fires, and we're a city that has a lot of fires, and that's a reality. And so, I think that this is a start in rebuilding it, but we really need to continue to push. And, you know, you guys, you know, the department has my support in terms of continuing to do that as we move forward in other budgets. The other thing, I know that there's been talks about the need maybe within our fire investigations unit. So, maybe could you speak to what some of the needs are, and how we can maybe help in, in this budget?
Well, the, you know, fire investigation team, before the, you know, the downturn, was one of the premier investigation teams in the state. We had both forty-hour investigators to do follow-up, and we had a fifty-six-hour investigator that was, responded to all fires and could start initiate interviewing witnesses, gathering evidence, et cetera, immediately. And so, we had to move the fifty-six-hour investigators into a forty-hour position, really to try and catch up on all of the backlog of reports and, and not completed incidents. And that took a, a hit. It was a, it's a temporary fix, currently is, and puts a lot of burden on the fire captains to complete those investigative reports. And they're not the experts on how to do that, that's why we trained investigators. You mentioned the, you know, the city and the fire department. We do have a very busy fire department. We have, and we are seeing increases over the last couple of years. Since two thousand thirteen, we've had a seventy-seven percent increase in fire loss, and a hundred-and-five percent increase in structure fire loss, particularly in the vacant structures. We see that, and our call volume is, over the last, since two thousand ten, is about fifteen percent more calls they go on. So, when we look at all of that data, the fire investigator would be a great asset to bring back into the, into the field, if that was an opportunity to do that. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to turn down any position. If that's what the council wants to offer, I'm gracious.
So, in terms of pre-recession levels, that's what would be?
We were, yeah.
To, to kind of restore that and be able to give some support?
It was some, it was a position that we would restore. It's a, it's three people, one per shift. But it also works in line with the mayor's Restore Fresno, and in concert with the code enforcement and revitalization, and, and meaning that those inspectors are out on incidents, particularly in vacant structures, and can start doing pre-surveys of other vacancies, because if one vacant's caught fire, an adjacent vacant is likely going to occur too. And so, we can get in front of those by having those investigators pre-survey those and get a heads-up to code enforcement to be on top of those particular areas. So, that's, that's one area that's an opportunity.
Well, I'd like to actually then make a motion that we restore the fire investigations unit to the pre-recession levels with three full-time twenty-four-hour investigators, right? Because that's what, we don't have, they're not twenty-four-hour currently.
Correct.
So, if we can add that motion.
All right, this has been moved and seconded.
I think those are all the questions. Again, thank you so much for the work that you guys do. Those are my questions.
All right. We don't have any other council members punched up, so I'll ask just a couple of brief questions. Councilmember Soria, actually, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Conter. Sure? Okay. Sorry. Councilmember Soria actually asked several little questions that I had, especially when we were talking about our communication system and when we can anticipate to see that RFP and come online. So, now that we kind of have our hands around, you know, the cost of that potentially, I think we have a lot of thinking to do, but obviously, we want to get there, so. And I think we all need to be prepared to, to know that it may not happen with grant dollars, so. Thank you for, for that explanation. But I kind of want to start my, my remarks off with really just kind of where Councilmember Soria left off. I want to echo her sentiment about the department, and, you know, this, in my opinion, this has probably been a year of heroism for our fire department, and want to make sure that we acknowledge that, and we know, we appreciate the service that our department provides to this city, and on behalf of grateful citizens, we want our firefighters to know that. We know it's been a tough year, but there's been a great year, too. So, we're very grateful for the service of this department, and we're great, very grateful for your leadership as well. How, how would you characterize, like, some of the highlights from, from this past year? I know there are many, but, you know, just give us a couple, three that, that really you think really stand out and, you know, make you proud to, to run this department.
Yeah, there's, thank you for that opportunity. I think Engine Four, the placement Engine Four is, was a huge step in the right direction, and it really gave the, the membership hope. We have implemented a, or finishing up our strategic plan. We haven't had a strategic plan developed with the help of the community leaders in over six or seven years. The Fig Garden Fire Protection District vote that went our way, and we will continue to provide service, was a significant success. I think the replacement of our engines and trucks, last year, we, the support of this council moved forward, purchasing some engines. The commitment in this year's budget for a complete overhaul in eight years of all of our fleet is a huge leap in the right direction. That is a vision that this organization has needed, and I appreciate that, city manager. Two other things is our Training South. If you haven't been down there, we haven't had a drill school in, in seven years, and we have thirteen young men finishing up, and will be graduating on the twenty-sixth. And that brings new life into this organization, and I hope that'll continue. And we have talked about plans to do that through the safer process, and there's a great opportunity to rebuild this organization with that method. So, the Training South division was completely revitalized. And then I really have to say, our safety and wellness officer has done a tremendous job, bringing a captain in to shepherd the wellness of our members through a worker's comp issue or injury, has been a tremendous help for our organization, and our membership appreciates it very much.
And kind of what do you, I know we talked a little bit about the communication system that we need to be preparing for, you know, potentially putting together this year and moving out in subsequent budget years. But what do you see some of your priorities as this year is coming up, and some of the goals that you'd like to see accomplished?
Well, the priorities and goals are rebuilding and adding engines and trucks back into our, our mix. That's, that's a high priority. The, the communication system and coming up with a plan, a robust system, and a plan to, to implement that is also key. But another, you know, issue that's very, very prevalent, and, and you might not understand that yet, but you probably will, is the, the incident with Captain Dern is going to have rippling effects like a pebble in a pond into this organization, and it's already started. And that's regarding our safety and wellness and health, and how we approach incidents. And so, there's going to be, the report that's going to occur from that isn't going to be two or ten recommendations. There is going to be, you know, fifty, sixty, a hundred recommendations come out of that report. That doesn't mean they're all going to happen in a year, but they, we do have to shepherd those things through. And we're going to, there's, you know, going to need, we're going to need some help in, in the administrative part of the, the department to help move those things through, and along with accreditation down the road, and, you know, just making those improvements. You need heavy lifting at, at the administrative level to do that work, and you don't burn out your folks, just as you need firefighters in the field to do the heavy lifting of the day-to-day incidents.
Well, without being too presumptuous on that last item you mentioned, I, I can see this body being very supportive of doing what we need to do to be supportive of that work. So, you know, if there's a role for us to play, I think this, I think the council very much respects and has a high degree of confidence in the fire department, and whatever we can do to be supportive in that, please let us know. And I say that, you know, for the benefit of the city manager as well. You know, we, whatever you all need to do, we, we want to be helpful in the process. And sometimes we can be helpful or not, so, give us a chance to be helpful, you know, and as you guys go through that. I can only imagine what's going to come out of that anytime something of that magnitude happens in this day and age. Like you said, it, it is like a pebble in the pond, and I can appreciate the ripples. I haven't been in law enforcement myself, I, I know how that, I know how that happens. The level of attention and scrutiny and Monday morning quarterbacking that comes with that, and the paper that's generated out of that is, is no small task. So, thank you for preparing us for that upfront, because it's probably going to outlive the, the time of my, my tenure here on council, some of these, you know, recommendations that will probably have to be implemented. So, just, you know, really, really quickly, like I said, Councilmember Soria, I was really interested in, in the communications, and also, I'm also always interested in our fire inspection program. It was a, our self-inspection program, I should say, it was a relatively interesting topic, you know, this time last year, and, you know, I, you know, I think everyone knows my feelings on that, so without, without going back into them, I'll just, you know, thank you for your, for your update. But how many deputy chiefs do we, we have right now?
We have two.
Are we at capacity, or are we?
We used to have three.
We have three, okay, are we?
Yeah. And that's, you know, a city this size would have at least three.
Right. And are we going to be recruiting for a third one? Is that an unfilled position, or do, how are we going to fill that position?
You know, I think we've discussed that, and again, I mentioned, you know, the challenges of, of trying to balance all the needs in the, the city, and, and so, I'm not critical at all of the things that we have. But going forward, as I mentioned, there's going to be some things that come out of this report that's going to require some, some more staff folks, and, and at the appropriate time, I'd like to, you know, bring that forward to, to, to bring back that deputy chief as a position.
Okay, I'm assuming by what you said, that now isn't the appropriate time?
I think the investigators are, it would be a, a higher priority. I would, as much as it would be selfish of me to say, yeah, I need it, I've needed it two years ago, but, and we've talked about that, but, you know, higher priority would be to get turnout, more turnouts for the firefighters, and get that fifty-six-hour investigator back, and I'll, I'll ask these guys to do some more heavy lifting in the meantime.
All right. Well, that, that's fair, chief, and I, I appreciate that. That's, that's very fair. Thank you for walking that tightrope with, with that, so, we certainly, we certainly appreciate that. You know, really, like I said, I mean, I didn't have too many questions of, of you all, really just grateful for the work that you do, and want to find ways to be supportive of the department, and it sounds like we're moving in that direction, happy that we're adding positions back. I think that, I'm very supportive of Councilmember Soria's motion for the fire inspectors, so, you know, I look for, I hope, I hope the body overall is supportive of that. So, we want to be here to help and move your organization forward in the way we can. Councilmember Brand.
First of all, you know, thank you and all the members of the fire department for, you know, going through the last, you know, three or four or five years, really, with the limited funds on, you know, and a bare minimum amount of people, and unfortunately exacerbated by serial arson. Hopefully, we've, we've found and it's been resolved, but I know you guys went through a lot. On the, you know, this is a continuation of the previous dialogue on the, the impact fees that we need to reevaluate for, for public safety, because I can see right now, in this year's budget, we're like about three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars short for the general fund's going to have to subsidize. And I know the intention, of course, was to, you know, to fund it fully, so, that'll be, look forward to that. And also, we have, I know the city manager's ongoing issue with the maintenance, you know, and we talk about communications equipment and how far behind we are in that. Is there any specific plan out there to fund that?
There is no, that's, that's part of that discussion we had. There is no plan to fund that fully. We can look for grants, the police department can look for grants, but it will not, never be enough to fund the cost of what it likely will be to build a proper, robust public safety system.
Yeah, and that's really critical, isn't it?
It's absolutely essential for firefighter safety, but also, also officer safety when they're, you know, dealing with a, you know, a suspect, or if we're in the middle of a firefight and inside of a structure, we need to be able to communicate and be confident that that's going to be heard every single time.
Has there been a cost identified with that? Is there an estimate on the cost?
For the system?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
That's what the consultant that we're looking, we're going to push this-
Evaluating?
Yes.
Okay. And then same thing, I know the, the impact fees were supposed to cover the cost of renovation and updating the stations, and historically, that's been a neglected area, you know, from going back for a number of years, and are we making any progress?
Well, we've done a lot of renovations with those, with the stations. We still will have ongoing capital improvements to make, but, you know, we tried to tackle that, we neglected it for, for twenty-plus years, and that's where that bomb came from.
And I think, I know we've identified the fleet reserve to, we're starting to cover those needs, right?
That's an absolute success story right there, to have, you know, the city manager take, take an aggressive approach on turning our fleet over in eight years is a tremendous step in the right direction. So, that's a great improvement for our organization.
And you support the fire inspectors, as we talked earlier, correct?
The fire inspectors?
Yeah.
The two, yeah.
Yeah.
We, I absolutely do.
Okay, and I think, I think most people here are going to also support that also. Okay, thanks, chief. I have one item to add, council president, thank you. To Jane?
Yes.
This is a, a follow-up from yesterday, I wanted, requesting a written clarification on the RDA money that is part of the general fund.
Yes.
And on page A thirty-three, it identifies about two-point-one billion in increment, and on page A forty-four, it identifies three million dollars as a dedicated to the reserve fund. And just to respond to the council in writing that the, this identify that I believe- And just to respond to the council in writing that the, this identify that I believe the $3 million is from the ROPS, the original debt repayment from the general fund. And the other, of course, is the ongoing tax increment.
That is correct.
That is, could I have a written response on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, we just, this is simply a request for information, right? Councilmember Brand, no motion? No motion, just a request for information, right? Okay. Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. And I apologize to everyone in here for being absent when you were discussing the fire inspection. I was with Stephen. We were having a meeting on another matter. But just very briefly, was there a motion made while I was out regarding fire inspections? And can we hear the motion?
Yes. If staff can read back Councilmember Soria's motion or if you'd like.
Not, not fire, not fire investigations, but fire inspections.
Oh, inspections, I'm sorry. There was not a motion made about fire inspect, inspections, as I understand.
But there's fire investigation.
Investigators, yes.
Just for clarification, can I hear the motion?
Certainly. Jane, did you all capture that?
Yeah. It's to restore the fire investigation team to pre-recession levels.
Okay. And was there discussion on how much that would cost the taxpayer? How much will that cost? We'll find that out when they come back.
It's about $350,000 to add back a 56-hour investigator to every shift. So, that's three positions.
Okay. And those will come from where? Where will that staff come, new hires or?
No, the field.
They come from?
We will pull them out of the field and/or the relief pool to staff those positions.
And will that, will we need to hire three, three additional firefighters to backfill that? Or you have enough people to go ahead and do that?
No, we will not need to hire for those three positions.
And it won't affect staffing to take them out of the group of firefighters to make them investigators?
We have a relief pool right now of, starting July 1, of three fire, three captains, three engineers and five firefighters. So, we will have enough bodies to take those three out of that group and staff that, that position, those positions.
And you have it within your budget to pay for that?
No.
Okay.
We don't.
So, it's a question of?
We have, there is some opportunity to try and fund some of that through possibly some training, entering their training, computerized training or the training that is completed through the Fresno City College Agreement. Or out-of-county responses, there are some overhead or apparatus replacement monies when we send folks on wildland fires. I hesitate to rely on those too much because you, they're not consistent. They've been consistent in wildland for the last two years, but I wouldn't.
Chief, do comparably sized cities have this service that, these investigators?
Yes.
Like a Long Beach, Oakland kind of city, they, they have this currently? I mean, it's not some?
They do have field investigators, yes, that are on duty 24 hours a day. As I said, you weren't in, but this department had the premier investigation team pre-recession. They had a 40-hour investigators and they had 56-hour investigators and a supervisor. People looked to us to be the model and we delivered very good service and it really assisted the fire captains in the field to, to respond to all the calls we have. We have a significant fire loss, fire call volume in this city that is.
How does that benefit the taxpayer to have a robust and efficient and effective investigation division?
Well, you have investigators, a 56-hour investigator that responds to every fire call. And so, they can initiate conversations, interviews, talk to witnesses, gather facts immediately on that fire scene. Whereas now, the system, there is no investigator that shows up. You, the captains are tasked with the charge of putting the fire out and making sure everyone's safe and those things are taken care of. And oh, by the way, while you're there, can you do a fire report and maybe gather some facts on why it might have started? The goal is to stop the arsonists and stop these fires in a proactive way. And if we could put these folks behind bars, that's, that's an approach that we would like to take.
You're asking for two fire inspectors to be hired?
That is correct.
What's the cost on that?
$144,000.
I would be, I would be, I would be open to the idea of perhaps using the budget for the inspectors to, to put into the investigators. Is that a possibility to do and just hold off a little bit on the, on the fire inspectors and instead put it towards creating or recreating the investigations? I mean, would that be possible? I mean, in a world where we're still short on money, which we are, is that possible to wait maybe till next year to do inspectors, but to everybody come together to fund the investigators now?
Well, we tried, the council direction in August of last year was to try this self-inspection program and to do some other things. And I reported in earlier on that program. I also met with each one of you and we talked about the successes of that program and the lack thereof in certain areas. And we provided you options on how to reinstitute an inspection program in this city. While a annual or biannual inspection program is the, is the appropriate one, that's not what we proposed as a recommendation because it's not fiscally possible at this time. We proposed an inspection program of every four years with the exception of state mandated's, which are annual. We kept two inspectors in DARM to do residential inspections, but we continue to have, and we also offered a compromise of 5,300 self-inspections to continue or at least to have those business owners have the opportunity to continue that program if they complied. In the meantime, we continue to have new construction occur, which we manage, the plan review of all that. We have new businesses developing that we need to address and get in front of. And we have a void of businesses we haven't inspected in some seven to eight years. So, to rob Peter to pay Paul, if you will, for one program over the other, they're two separate programs. They're not related at all. If you're, I think we need a fire inspection program in this community, absolutely. And the inspectors, investigators were not part of this budget. It was a motion by a council member and I just provided the information as to what the value would be for the community as well.
If you had, say, if I could follow up, there was a motion made and there was a second and as, as the council president puts, puts it, he just gets put into the hopper. We're, in a lot of ways, we're still very early on in the budget deliberations. We haven't gotten to public works yet and I'm sure there's going to be requests for things in public works. Most likely will be a general fund obligation. And then the police department hasn't showed up yet and I'm sure there's going to be maybe a motion to add something to the police department. It tends to happen around here. And once we get through all those motions that get put into the hopper, then that's what the deliberations are for. So, I appreciate the questions, Councilmember. Please feel free to continue, but the reality is a $350,000 request, there's been a motion made. We'll just put it on the list and then we'll sort through this list after we get all said and done and try to work with the chief and the other department heads as long, as well as the mayor to see what we can or what we do feel is comfortable. And we'll, we'll make that known to you when we get to that point in this, this discussion.
Thank you, City Manager. And for my council colleagues and also for our fire chief, I am not an expert on fire prevention or how to put out fires or how to fight them or I claim total ignorance. It's my job as a policymaker to make sure that you and your staff have the tools that you need to offer that service and that fire protection to the people of the city of Fresno. And so, for that reason, I don't claim to be an expert and I'm not going to tell you how to do your job or how to do it more efficiently. But in a case where the, the money is needed and cannot be found, it would be, I would defer to you and say, would you rather have the inspectors or the investigators? And, and I want to be part of that solution for you. I want to be able to give you the tools you need to do the job and I want to be part of, of finding that money and in a situation where we have scarce resources. So, in that case, if we're putting, if we're putting things into the hopper for later discussion, I'd like to help you get there in terms of these investigators. So, my motion would be, and obviously looking for a second, would be to use the money that's budgeted for the inspectors and put that in for, to, to make the investigations happen. That would be my motion. Crickets.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero. All right. Looks like those are all of the questions we have for, from the DIES for Fire. What I'm going to do now is just take, take the fire discussion out to the public. Do we have any members of the public here wishing to comment on the fire budget? Come on down. Thank you, Chief. And you'll have two minutes.
Good morning, council members and city managers and everyone else. Marina Magdaleno with Local 39. I, I have been sitting through the, the comments and the questions that all of you have made to fire. And the only thing I want to add to my two cents is that everybody always talks about firemen and I, believe me, I appreciate the firemen, but you always tend to forget the support staff, the mechanics and that, those folks that keep those engines on the road and, and maintain those engines. And for the past few years, we've had shortages there, which is why we're so behind in some of our maintenance, not the only reason, but some. And the fact that we have an aging, you know, apparatus fleet is also another indicator of, of the constant repair of those apparatuses and the constant breakdown. Literally, sometimes parts are stolen from one apparatus to another on the spur of the moment because it's needed. And so, I'm glad to see that, you know, there, there is some, there is a process, that there is a replacement of, of engines. But we also have a very, very aging facility that isn't even up to standards. And I don't know if you know this, but in order for a fireman to get underneath that apparatus, they have to lift it up because they don't have a bay like they do over in fleet. It's an aging facility. It was built in the 30s. It hasn't had any upgrades. And I know I've talked to the city manager and there is a plan that at some point it will be, it will happen. But, you know, when you sit up here and you want to change this and you want to change that, you really also need to stay focused on what are the immediate needs. And the fleet has grown over the last, you know, 10, 15 years. And the, the size of the mechanic and the folks that keep that fleet in operation have not. We are still, actually, we are doing more with less because we've had layoffs, we've had cutbacks, we lost mechanics. We used to have two shifts. We lost a shift. And so, people have done more with the less that they have. And it has put a tremendous strain on, on that group of folks. And so, I'm here to speak on behalf of that group so that when you are deliberating on your budgets, that you don't start to cut. Because when you cut one area, you really hurt another area. And, and, and that happens because everybody has an interest in what they want to do. And so, it's really, really important. And it's, it's for the safety of the firemen, not just, you know, that we keep, you know, fleet abreast, but it's also for the safety of, of those firemen that we have a fleet that is, is running, that is top-notch. Because when you start to dissolve that, you also hurt another aspect of it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Have any other members of the public like to make any comments this time? All right. Seeing none, well, we will move on to our next, our next hearing. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. All right. We are now moving on to public works. I believe Jane, you're up. And then Scott is on the hot seat.
All right. The Public Works Department, their narrative begins on page B147. This department is funded by multiple funding sources and its total budget, both operating and capital, totals $153 million next year. Some of their main funding sources are the, from state gas taxes. The actual combined state revenue for gas taxes is about $3.4 million lower than it was in FY15. This is primarily due to the State Board of Equalization truing up the annual gas tax allocations to compensate for overpayments in prior years. The repayment from the BOE of a, of a state loan that was made from the highway users' account to the, to the state general fund. Also, the BOE approved a decrease in Section 2103 excise tax, which is one of the gas taxes, of six cents per gallon. And also, overall fuel consumption tends, tends to be a little bit lower for this next fiscal year. That's what they're anticipating at any rate. So, the combination of factors, particularly from the state, have combined to decrease our state gas tax revenues for next year. We are also anticipating getting our Measure C revenue in, which is slightly higher than we had anticipated in 15. That is strictly due to the estimates that come from the County Board of Transportation. The facilities budget is budgeted at $7.4 million. That is slightly decreasing due to the reduction in facilities charges. The expenditures for the department as a whole are particularly the operating appropriations is an increase of about $2.6 million. Again, this is primarily due to a change in methodology for the cost allocation plan. Phase two of the Neighborhood Street Improvement Program will be funded with a combination of gas tax, actually Prop 111, and Community Development Block Grant for a total of $2.1 million. Community sanitation operations are budgeted at $7.8 million, which is, however, it shows as a decrease, but it is not a lessening of the, the program. It is merely a moving of some of the program appropriations to another fund. This has to do with an overhead charge that the Public Works Department has. And we are changing the methodology in order to facilitate reimbursement from state and federal grants. It is not a decrease in the program. It is merely a movement of money in order to facilitate those reimbursements from, from the federal government. Street Maintenance Operating is on page B150 and their narrative highlights some of the major services that they will be undertaking for next year, including overlay and paving operations and the landscape maintenance. About a million dollars of the $2 million that the general fund has in this department is actually park maintenance because they do cover park maintenance within this, within this department. Staffing for the department, there are five irrigation specialists that have moved from the department over to parks. I believe we covered that under the Parks Department. The, the department will also be getting one construction compliance specialist, which was converted from a supervising engineering tech in 15 and transferred to the capital management division. Facilities Division will also receive a facilities construction specialist to deal with the various facilities projects that will be undertaken next year. That concludes my presentation. I believe the department director is available to answer any questions you have.
All right. I have several council members. Start with Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you. No, I've got a mouthful of bagel and I apologize. I guess I can start with, with Mr. Mosier. Thank you for, for coming here. I just had one question, then we'll get to my other issue. The question I had is, I'm sure you're familiar with Maroa between Dakota and Ashland. And this is one of those streets that is half county and half city. And this street generates the most phone calls that we get on roads. It's very poorly maintained. And so, what I tell people who call is, well, it's partly county and partly city. I think Supervisor Borges shares that street with me. And I've heard him over at the county in the last couple of weeks talking about it. What do we have to do to at least begin addressing streets that are, such as the one I described?
Good morning, Council. Scott Mosier, Public Works Department. Each year, we routinely work with our counterparts at Fresno County Public Works on joint projects. And oftentimes, challenge is just having the county step up and, and provide those dollars for this next year. For this next year, one that we're actually targeting is Orange Avenue in southeast Fresno. But Maroa is on that list. Some years back, we were able to do a joint project on Maroa just further north from that location, Barstow up to Bullard. So that is on the list. At the moment, it doesn't look like the county would be able to step forward with dollars on that, but it's one we're tracking and looking to see how we can get done.
Mr. Mosher, is there anything that this body can do right now to, in terms of making a motion to help you in your job in terms of getting in touch with the county or getting them moving, or, I mean, is there, is there anything that this council can do? Because this is a, a big problem in our city.
I think with the county, we've found that the staff is being very cooperative. The biggest challenge is just the, the number of needs far outweighs the dollars available and the resources. So typically, we, we can undertake perhaps one joint project with the county, but at any given time, you know, we'll have half dozen, dozen potential needs on the list.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Talk to me about how roads are going to be prioritized in, in the city. For example, I guess smaller paving jobs. I know that we've talked about, I have a picture here of, I mean, no one can see it, but this is the street out in front of St. Paul's United Methodist Church on Thesta between Clinton and Terrace. And this street is, is all alligator cracked, and it's got chunks coming out of it. It's in very bad shape. I asked you, and your staff responded very quickly with an estimate of the work, it's Does each council district in this budget have a, we can allocate jobs up to a certain amount. Can you explain that for, for us?
Most definitely. And we tackle pavement maintenance and priorities in a couple different ways. First one is on a neighborhood street, such as the one you mentioned, which it's, that's a great project to undertake. The budget as proposed has $2.1 million with an intent of $300,000 per council district, and that the department would work with each council member and staff to prioritize those locations. One added constraint is that out of that $2.1 million, $900,000 is CDBG funding, the other 1.2 million is gas tax. So just like what we've done this year, it constrains the locations of CDBG. However, you know, good, good news, bad news, for Fresno, there's so many CDBG areas due to the lower income that, that we have not had a problem identifying locations. That, that has not been an issue. So we would work with your office on that. That could be an eligible project, and I believe that one is in a CDBG area as well from the research we've done. Beyond that, a lot of the paving program we do on the major streets winds up being grant-funded. And a good chunk of that winds up being competitively bid. So the city may at one time have a priority for a certain area, but if our other fellow cities and Fresno County who make up Fresno COG do not support it, don't see the higher traffic counts or the poor condition, we don't get it funded.
So something like this in front of St. Paul's, I just wait, and then we get with you, and, and we'll address that coming up. I don't have to make a budget motion on it outside of the budget. This would be perfect for this program?
Absolutely. That'd be an ideal project for the neighborhood program.
Okay, that would be excellent. The next series of questions I have, and, and council colleagues, relate to the, the art museum, and, and also for City Manager Rudd, who's very well-versed in, in the issues out at the art museum. The art museum, just as a, a quick piece of background for you all, it was built in the, in the 50s. And the art museum, of course, is located inside Radio Park, which is located at Clinton and First. And the reason why the art museum is special is because the art museum is the only museum left in the city of Fresno. The art museum is also special because the city of Fresno actually owns the building. The art, folks that, that have the art museum pay a dollar a year lease to, to be there. It's special also because the building was designed as an art museum and not, you know, as a sandwich place or an office building, but it was designed to be an art museum, and that's why it's special, because some of the collections that we have there are, are very valuable. And the, the building comes with vaults that are, are climate-controlled and moisture-controlled, and so the art, the art that's not on display is, is stored in these vaults. And so it's a very valuable resource for the city and a benefit to, to our citizens. And I'm going to bring up in just one second, the, the president, or the director, excuse me, the director of the art museum, who's going to share with us a little bit about what the programs that are going on there.
I thought, I thought Obama was about to walk through, walk through here in a moment ago.
Well, so the, the lease is interesting, and for council colleagues, the city is responsible for taking care of the exterior of the building and the grounds, and the art folks are responsible for taking care of the inside of the building. It's important, it's an important amenity to have in our city, an art, a museum of this caliber. However, it's, it's, it's the only art museum that we have left. I mean, it's the only museum we have left in the city of Fresno. So it's important to keep them there, and also because of its location, it's an anchor in a southern neighborhood. And that's also important to remember, too, that something like this, at this intersection where we have Radio Park, we have the museum, we have Sam's Deli, not too far from there we have the, the Veterans Hospital. So we really need them in South Fresno. But because of this unusual arrangement where we take care of the outside and they take care of the inside, sometimes a pipe breaks, and it's, it's a both inside and outside problem, we've been getting through those with the help of the administration and City Manager Rudd. So, and I'm very pleased about that. But what I'd like to do, well, here's the issue that we're facing this year, is that the building needs to be painted. The lease specifies that we have to paint it, what, once every, once every seven years? And it was last painted in?
14 years ago.
14 years ago. So it's been a while. The building is showing signs of neglect. They, they sat tight with us through the, the, the tough years. But I think this is a, an issue where we really have a focus on improving Radio Park. Parks Department is putting a ton of, of work and labor and resources into fixing the bathrooms at Radio Park. We fenced off the front so that the, the vagrants and, and ne'er-do-wells that like to drink and, and sit in the tot lot all day have, it's harder for them to get to the liquor store. Nick Marzulliano over at Sam's Deli and I have convened a local neighborhood group that the art museum folks are participating in, and some of the other stakeholders in that neighborhood. And it's really encouraging to see us doing our part, and the neighbors doing their part, and small business doing their part, and we're starting to see signs of life there at the corner of First and Clinton again. And it's very, very encouraging. I'm very pleased to report that to you and to the, to city staff. So what I would like to do is first bring up Michelle. Michelle is the Director of the Fresno Art Museum. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. And Michelle's going to talk to us a little bit for just a couple of minutes about the, some of the programs for children that are going on at the museum, and also the need for some maintenance out there as part of revitalizing the First and Clinton corner. Michelle Preacy, right?
Yes.
Welcome.
Am I in the right? Can you hear me? I'm Michelle Ellis Preacy, and I'm the new Director of the Fresno Art Museum. I took my job on March 2nd after a nationwide search by the Board of Trustees, and I moved myself to Fresno. There was no assistance for me to do that, and I would like to let you know that I'm delighted to be here. I think this is a great city. I think my focus as a museum person to steward community museums, this is a perfect match for me. We are not the Metropolitan Museum of Art in the city of Fresno, which is now no longer with us. The Fresno Art Museum is celebrating its 65th anniversary this year. We have persevered through thick and through thin, high times and low times, to represent to those who live here and those who visit the city and who are planning on moving here, that there is a cultural wealth that Fresno is proud of. I believe that the Fresno Art Museum is the gem in the cultural crown of the city. And at this moment in time, it is disheveled on the outside. It's in a marginalized neighborhood, which has degentrified, and with Mr. Olivier's help and the neighborhood people that I've met, I believe we can bring that neighborhood back, back to a place where people are comfortable to come, they're interested to be there. It's a polyglot of all kinds of things that are not visible necessarily on the surface right now. And I'm here because Clint and I started talking one month into my tenure in Fresno, which I hope is in perpetuity. And that was in April, and he took me to lunch. And I've come from a museum where the city owned the building and where we paid a dollar a year in a lease agreement. And they also were responsible for the outside, and I, as the Director and my board, were responsible for the inside. So I'm not unfamiliar with this process. And I did establish a very healthy relationship with my city partner, and it may have taken a little while, but indeed, they did repair the outside, and we brought the inside up to standards. We are accredited, accredited by the American Association of Museums. We're the only museum between San Jose and Los Angeles that has achieved this, and we have been accredited since 1978. Every 12 years, we have to be, go through a reaccreditation process, and that means a very strict look at our facility. And we've just been through that process just before I was hired. The approval is pending come August, when I can show them that I'm working with the city on the exterior, and that I'm doing the things that they're challenging me to do as the new Director of the museum. I have given Clint a list of parts in our lease agreement that the city has set forth as a schedule of repairs that we did not give to them. They came up with on their own, and I can read from my email, or Clint can have that information available to any councilperson or the manager's staff that would be interested. But the lease was one of the first things I did when I took this job. So I would love it if the city of Fresno would see to help me make this museum the polished gem that it should be on the outside, because on the inside, it's a place of wonder. It's beautiful inside. We have 8,000 third graders. Every third grader in Fresno Unified School District comes through our building every school year. We have an incredible education program that rivals the schools themselves. And we want people to come from the airport, from the convention center, from their homes, bring their visitors. We want to show anybody who cares about cultural, a cultural aspect of a city to be part of the Fresno Art Museum. So thank you, Clint, so much for caring about us and bringing me before everybody today. I really appreciate it.
Michelle, thank you. I was going to ask you about the kids, but thank you so much for sharing that with us, that the, the kids have a program where, where they go to the, the museum. And it's, it's just fantastic that we're able to have that kind of vitality and life in, in this neighborhood. And, you know, we've heard so much in this building about trying to restore and fix older neighborhoods that are struggling so much. Well, this is one of those neighborhoods that could go either way. This is one of those neighborhoods that is, is managing to, to stay afloat. And so this is, we definitely want to support them. I've, I've requested that FACS work on the bus stop out there in front. I've requested that Parks work on, on Radio Park, and they've responded. It's been fantastic. So what I would like to do right now, and Michelle, thank you so much for coming this morning to make your presentation.
You're welcome.
Do we have a price tag on what it will cost us, the, the city, to paint the building?
We will need to get the price, but we're confident we could get that done within the next 30 days, that that could be in place.
I think, I think his response was, "He can get you a quote within 30 days."
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things we're gonna need, like, what we're gonna need clarification on is, apparently there's some murals that we're painting, or a mural. So is the mural staying or going? We, we can work that out when we get the scope of work.
Mural didn't quite work out, but anyway. Okay. Is, is there anything else?
I just want to add, investment-wise, this winter, we did about $5,000 worth of repairs in the parking lot. And then we have a seal coat, which is going on the lot, where the city's investing another $11,000 into that.
Very, very pleased, and thank you, Public Works and Facility staff, for your dedication to this, the museum and the project, and City Manager Rudd, because it is, as advertised, it's something that, it's a source of pride in our city. So thank you very much. I, I think that, do I need to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
I think, I think you gave direction for us to come back and, within 30 days, with a quote, and to potentially try to identify some resources.
I think I'm gonna make a motion.
Well, let me point out, and I appreciate the, the presentation. We're in the, the process. We just recently hired a firm, CBRE, who's going to be doing an assessment of all of our, our buildings, all of our assets. While I appreciate the art museum and its benefit to the community, we also have the Museum of Valor, we have the Arts Council, we have a number of these $1 a year leases. And as Scott just pointed out, we spent $16,000 so far this year on this facility. A year before, we replaced air conditioning units at this facility. You know, we've got community centers that need air conditioning units as well. My point is, we are going to have to come to back at some point in time, I would suggest over the next six, six months, and potentially when CBRE completes their work, and start assessing, or at least recognizing that while it may be great that we do these $1 a year leases and, and all the community value that they bring to the table, there is a direct cost associated with owning or leasing these assets at, at a dollar a year. In other words, when you start adding up seal coating and replacing air conditioning units and painting, and then, I don't, we, we spent $120,000 a year out of the General Fund just for the Museum of Valor. So all these other $1 a year leases, free office space, free buildings, have an accumulative effect on our ability to, to fund other priorities. So we'll give you a quote in the next 30 days, and we'll try to identify a, a resource in which to fund the, the painting project. But I would also, we'll come back within the next three months, and maybe I'll talk to CBRE, as to identify all these $1 a year leases, and then what the annualized costs of maintaining these assets are, so that the council has a better appreciation of the overall cumulative impact that these arrangements have on the General Fund.
Will, will the CBRE be evaluating the, the, getting rid of the stadium as part of their?
That would, again, the stadium...
That would be great to unload.
Well, you, there's a lot of discussions, but we have stadiums, we have museums, we have free office space for arts councils, we have a lot of things that, yes, if you look at the stadium and you look at this, there is an ongoing cost of owning these assets, like this building, that we should probably have a workshop on, and truly recognize what those ongoing costs are.
And thank you, Mr. Rudd. Do you know if the, if the building is owned free and clear, the art museum, or is there a mortgage that?
There's no mortgage. The city, front row, the city wrote the check for the improvements. The art museum was built over a period of time. There was like three expansions. And they did a capital campaign, and then part of that capital, the city agreed to own the ongoing expense, every, but we own the land. So the land was donated by the city.
What, and I'm wrapping this up now. Thank you, council colleagues, for, for your, your time and your patience. What would the ballpark be to paint a building like that? Would it cost last time, or what, what do you think it would, like, just to ballpark it?
We'll have to get some quotes, research that, but we can come back pretty quickly with it. I, I don't have that exact number on the, at my fingertips.
And it's most likely going to be a prevailing wage.
To paint the building? Well, because I would like to make a motion, and, and then that way, we could work together. I'd be happy to work with staff to find, to, to identify the money in the budget to have the building painted. I mean, just because contractually, we, we're obligated to paint it, and so I want to do, I want to make a motion of, of like a not-to-exceed motion. But, but since I don't know, and we're, let, let me make the motion like this, council colleagues. It would be to paint the art museum in this fiscal year, based on the, based on our contractual obligation to, to do so. And it would be at the amount specified in the, the, the estimate that Public Works is going to get. So that would be my motion, to paint the art museum, which we own and are contractually obligated to paint, for the amount specified, not to exceed whatever the, the bid that Mr. Mosher's staff is able to get.
Councilmember, would you amend that in a motion to include the Discovery Center exterior paint?
No, I would not. Only because I don't know, I don't know the particulars of that. Does the city own the Discovery Center? It's the same situation?
Same situation as your presentation.
We're contractually obligated to paint the Discovery Center once every... We're contractually obligated to paint the Discovery Center once every.
Let, let me, let me, let me jump, let me jump in really quickly, Councilmember Capriolio, 'cause, uh, Councilmember Oblivier still has the floor. Uh, Councilmember, you wanted to make a motion, do, do you want to have any dollar amount attached to that, 'cause it is a budget item?
I mean, I'm assuming. Does there have to be a dollar amount attached to it? Somebody ballparked.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go out on a limb. Uh, so maybe the motion is, is to, uh, have, have staff return before final budget deliberations with an estimate for, uh, to repaint the museum. Can we do that in the next week or two?
We can.
Okay. So why is the motion is that we come back and at, at the time of deliberations and that we set a place mark of $10,000, not to exceed?
Okay.
If you just look for a number in the hopper.
Not to exceed, is it $10,000? Do you think it can be painted for?
I think that's about right.
Okay. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
And I would not be opposed to any motion from, uh, Councilmember Capriolio about the, the Discovery Center, but this one I would prefer if it would just stand alone.
Okay, so let me just clarify. So we have a, a motion for staff to return with, or are you setting?
No, the motion is to paint the art museum.
Not to exceed $10,000? Okay, fair enough. And Councilmember, uh, Randalls is the second.
Dude, we get a second? Yay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Quintero.
Morning, Scott. Uh, spoke with Brian Russell, I guess, last week, and he told me as much as he could see on, uh, Public Works budget, it was just perfect and that I should go ahead and, uh, and make a motion to approve. But I got a couple of questions, so. Anyway, Brian, I told you I'd say that. Scott, I wanted, um, you know, members of your staff that have been real helpful, uh, in giving me direction or, or, uh, working on, uh, concerns that we have, uh, they've done a great job and really appreciate them, and I wanted to mention them. I wanted to thank, uh, Aaron, Brian, Therese, Scott, Andrew, Robert, and Mark. Anytime I call them, they, they give, uh, write back to me pretty quick and, and, um, even, uh, some of them, uh, will actually call the constituents when, when there's questions that, uh, are more of a technical nature. So I really appreciate the, the, the staff and the, the work they do, so.
Thank you for the encouragement.
Pardon me?
Thank you for the encouragement.
Yeah. Well, they, they gave me their names and told me to give them a shout out, so. You know what? I've got a, I wanted again, uh, to specifically focus on District Five and, uh, also, uh, to thank your office and the city attorney's office and, and the colleague, our colleagues here, uh, for the, uh, getting, uh, the, uh, signal lights, uh, for Sunnyside and Belmont, uh, getting the monies for that, uh, to, to, uh, work on the planning and installation of those. So that was a, a great team effort, uh, to, to get that done and, uh, and, uh, look forward to seeing those, uh, those come up. The, you know, the, the usual wish list that I have, I, I know, uh, one of the items last year, we talked about, uh, Heaton Avenue getting done between Winery and Willow. Uh, you said you anticipated something coming through in, in the spring. Uh, I guess I should have asked you what year.
On, on Heaton and Townsend, uh, we are, we are opening bids this summer, um, and then the work will be done in the fall.
2015, right? Summer 2015.
2015. The, the.
Another July one of them? Don't July to me.
The, uh, challenge on that, that I've been working closely with, with DARM staff on is for the CDBG program, how, how can we move this along more effectively? Uh, this year, even though it was in the budget, there was a process by which after the council offices had selected the neighborhood paving projects, the item had to come back to the council in January. Um, and then after that, then the whole federal, um, NEPA environmental process had to occur. So, uh, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Gunawardina and the staff have had plans in great shape, ready to go, and we got through those regulatory hurdles to then make it happen. So for this next year, uh, that, that, as I understand, will go much smoother and we'll be in position to go early in the year.
I am, and working with, with Jennifer and with, with the Assistant City Manager, uh, we're gonna revamp how we do this so that we don't have to come back with amendments. Uh, in fact, I'm, I'm gonna work towards a five-year, but Scott's right. The changes that we're gonna be making in the program will, um, expedite, uh, the manner in which these projects can move forward. If we can do a multi-year, then Scott can get the NEPA stuff out of the way, and then we can just start doing these projects each year when the, um, each fiscal year, rather than waiting to go through that NEPA, then do the project.
So again, with, uh, Heaton and Townsend, uh, we anticipate on the July council agenda bringing the award, award a contract, and then straightforward job the contractor would get moving. Uh, hope, hopefully we can get them going in late August, September, and wrap it up.
Of 2015?
2015, that's correct.
Got it.
And then we'll be working with, working with you on a new project for the $300,000 in '16. So we have both, both coming up.
Orange Avenue between, um, California and Butler. That's on the, um, on the, um, budget for this year?
That is correct. I believe we've already awarded, awarded that construction contract. Okay.
Can you send me a report on that, please?
That's occurring this next year? Absolutely. We can send that report.
'16 then.
Then that, that will be built in '15, '16. That, that'll be repaved.
Okay. One of the things that we talked about a little bit earlier this year is, um, the, the portion of Orange Avenue between California and Church, one side of the street is county, the other side is city, and, um, the, uh, the majority of the, um, there, there isn't any residential in that area, and we're constantly getting calls because I'm, it's, it's a horrendous street, real bumpy and all that, uh, well-worn. And one of the thoughts that I had is if we might be able to approach PG&E, which has a large portion on both sides of the street that they, that they, um, I guess it's maintenance yard and, and that type of thing there. And then I believe, uh, Shamley and Enterprises is another big one, Torres Fence is another one. Might there be any type of thing where we can have some conversations with them to see if they would be interested in, in maybe, uh, putting up some money to, to, uh, help get that funded? They, um, I mean, they, they've got, they've got pretty heavy equipment rolling through there, and I know that's part of the, the concerns that, that causes the, the road to be that way.
Indeed. Um, plus just the age of the street, uh, is a cause. The, a couple of things we were trying to do on that one. One is to, uh, line up the county Public Works funding participation. It is, uh, a shared street in that area, and actually, uh, not only from California Church, but really all the way down to, uh, to Jensen, where then it swings around and, and comes in. So one piece is getting the county participation, which, uh, Brian Russell and his team have had some good negotiations with, uh, with his county counterparts. A more, a more likely scenario to fund it would be, uh, grant funding for that project, and there'd be great opportunity for PG&E and other businesses, perhaps, perhaps they'd be willing to put up, help us with the matching funding on the grant. Uh, that, that could be a great way to accomplish the project. We'd be glad to assist.
Or if you sat down, uh, at the table, uh, with PG&E and invited those businesses there at the same time, that might be helpful in, in maybe even getting the, uh, you know, the conversation moving along and, and commitment. Uh, you know, rather than just the city and county, uh, sitting down and talking and looking at what the possibilities, they might, they might have some different, uh, uh, type of funding that they may, they may be aware of.
Sounds like a great, uh, public-private partnership that we could undertake together.
Yeah, sounds good to me, too. Peach Avenue between Church and Butler.
So on, uh, in terms of status, a couple of things going on with Peach Avenue. One, on the immediate need, uh, street maintenance has pri, our street maintenance division has prioritized as far as just a, uh, some patchwork in that area to do some repaving, uh, just south of the railroad tracks. We had, um, it, that's the type of street where we know it'll ultimately be reconstructed as new development occurs and when it's widened, um, but we really cannot wait any longer on that. And so we, we are, um, planning this fall, late summer this fall, to repave that portion, uh, which will buy us some time until it's ultimately rebuilt. On another front, uh, the Measure C project, we are close to completing the design, uh, from about, basically the widening to Four Lane from, um, Butler-Hamilton area all the way down to Jensen.
Yeah, I remember we approved the monies last year, uh, for the design, I believe it was.
That's correct. And so the regional Measure C money is only funding the design of that. Uh, the, the proposed budget includes approximately $1 million in what are called new growth area, major street impact fees, which are development fees collected, and that would go into purchasing right-of-way for that four-lane wa, four-lane widening. Again, the goal being if we have design complete and if we have the right-of-way in hand, then as other dollars, um, funding opportunities come up, we're in position, what's typically called shovel-ready, um, to get that done. All told, Peach from really Hamilton down to Jensen, that's about an $8 million project all told, to get to Four Lane, uh, with the signal installed at Peach and Hamilton.
Well, Church and, uh, Peach from Church to Jensen is already done. It's been done.
Church to Jensen's done on the east side, and then the west side is only a single lane. It doesn't have the second lane, curb gutter sidewalk, street light on the west side.
Mm-hmm. But it looks good.
It's, it's looking a lot better than it had.
And then, uh, you were able to get a signal light put up there at the intersection, uh, last year at Church and Peach, and it's, it's really, uh, helped the, uh, the foot traffic of the, uh, children going to school right on the corner there story. So thank you for that, really, uh, a big, big, big difference. And I, I, I know that's a, a tough one on, on Peach there because, um, at California, because the majority of that east side is, uh, the 48 acres there that, um, that the city has, and then a little bit further down by the FID canal is another big empty piece on the east side of, uh, of Peach. So you're saying, uh, you just, uh, can't wait any longer to resurface that, and it'll probably in?
That was my recommendation as, uh, as Brian Russell and myself, as we reviewed that and looked at it, uh, that we really needed to get that done. Uh, we, we do get a lot of complaints about that section just south of the railroad tracks. And again, given how scarce, uh, paving dollars are, there was always the hope that some type of development would occur. Several years ago, we'd had, um, more so visions of that USDA property and being able to develop that parkland, but at this point, we just, we really need to get that repaved.
So your recommendation's gonna become a reality? You said it was your recommendation?
Pending, uh, pending council approval of the budget, we do have, uh, relatively small amount in what we call, uh, operational paving dollars just to deal with these short, uh, sections and patches, and we, we would be able to accommodate that within the proposed budget.
Also, uh, the thing that we've asked for in the past at, uh, at Peach and Hamilton, uh, we asked for a traffic study there for the, uh, uh, stop signs, uh, between the, uh, both east side and, and west side of the street because the amount of traffic, and then, uh, especially during the foggy season, you've got, uh, some, um, you, you got the neighborhoods on both sides, the east side and west side there, that try to pull into Peach, and then you've got, uh, Story Elementary on the south side, and then you've got Ayr-Greenberg and Sunnyside High School on the, on the north side. And so, uh, um, I believe the last traffic study you told me that was done, that there might, there, it was a possibility or, or there was a need for stop signs there?
Uh, two, two different studies were done, and, and I will ask, uh, our city traffic engineer, Jill Gormly, to, uh, follow up with you on this. Uh, yeah, I know it met traffic signal warrants, uh, meaning that if we had funding, we could, we could, uh, install that. So, and we actually have the traffic signal plans, uh, drawn up and essentially ready to go, just pending money to build it. Um, with respect to the stop signs, the last study I recalled was that it was a no on meeting always-stop warrants, which means the, the test of how much traffic and such is there to install those, but I will have, uh, Jill and her staff, uh, follow up. And we, and if it does not meet, we'll, we'll re-study that periodically. As soon as it meets, we would install the always-stop.
Okay. Can I meet with, uh, Mr. Gormly?
Uh, Ms., uh, that's Ms. Gormly. So that's Jill Gormly. We're glad to do that.
She's laughing. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd like to, uh, to meet with her if possible and just kinda get more of a briefing and, uh, update, uh, for myself. And then there's a little, uh, there's a little piece of dirt there, uh, between Florence and, uh, California on the railroad, um, on Peach Avenue, uh, that is, uh, unimproved, and so we get some of the vehicles sometimes drive off to that. If they're not paying attention, and it's just flat, there's, there's really nothing there. And, uh, we've wanted for years to try and do some improvements there as well, uh, on that. So, um, if somebody could get back to me on all that, that Peach Avenue, uh, area would, uh, would really be, uh, appreciated. And, um, the, um, for, for this year's budget, uh, what have you included in there for, for District Five? Recommended?
See, for District Five, some of the major projects would be, one would be the $300,000 of, uh, residential street paving in the budget. So we'd be working with you on that location. Uh, we have a, um, a major, uh, AC overlay of Clovis Avenue included from, uh, the railroad south to Jensen. That's coming through federal funding. We have the Butler Avenue Bike Lane Project from, uh, it's about Hazelwood out to Peach that would slurry seal the street and then restrike.
Will that one happen this year?
See, that, the Butler Project.
I think we, we talked about that two years, or last year, I believe.
We did, and we just got our authorization from Caltrans to begin that reimbursable grant work. Uh, we, the actual construction funding that the state has awarded us is coming in fiscal year '17. So '16 will be to clear the environmental and go through that process with Caltrans, who administers the grant, and then in '17, the construction money will be there.
Okay. What else?
So, and then we also have, uh, the Orange Avenue sidewalk, uh, and that's in the Winchell Elementary area there on the east side. It's both, it's really both a roadway bottleneck and then a lack of sidewalk.
Is that those four properties?
Yes, it is.
On the east, okay. I remember them.
And in regard to that one, that, that actually, uh, has the potential to go to construction in fall 2016. So again, we're going through the, the grant process with Caltrans that makes it, it just takes a bit longer than locally funded jobs that, for example, the, uh, the paving that we're gonna do on Peach, south of the railroad, that, that'll be very quick to just go out and do. So the advantage is the local funding versus, most of our funding is through the grant process.
Yes. Okay, what else?
Those are, those are, again, the big highlights, and as I mentioned, uh, the, the budget includes a million dollars of, uh, right-of-way acquisition on, call it Peach South, uh, which is really Ha, it's really Hamilton down to Jensen.
Well, once again, I really appreciate the work that, uh, your staff does and, and then also, uh, in responding. It's, uh, it, you know, like every other department, it's been a tough, uh, few years and, uh, and, uh, they've done the best, uh, you know, that, that can be expected. So we really appreciate that. So, okay, Brian, I can say motion approved now.
I'd be, be remiss if I didn't mention, we actually have set aside some Measure C Trails funding for the Fancher Creek Trail, uh, from Clovis Avenue going further east. funding for the Fancher Creek Trail from Clovis Avenue going further east, and we're working with Mr. Cashin and his development team on how that, how that plays out, but that's been the general intent, that Measure C Trails money could, could contribute to getting that done.
Yeah. Okay, I remember Jill Gormley now.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Soria.
I have a, a number of questions as well. And first, you know, thank you for always being very responsive and for your, the team that you have. You guys are always very helpful, so thank you for the work that you do. I do notice, at least as stated in the budget, you know, state, the state gas tax is one, a huge, I guess, revenue source for our city, and so, we've seen a decline, and we know the decline is related to vehicles being much more efficient, and so, just kinda wanna get a general sense, because you guys do mention that the department will need to seek alternative street maintenance funding sources and/or efficiencies. What are some of the things that you guys are already doing? Can you speak to maybe what you guys are thinking in terms of the department to begin to deal with the decline in revenues?
All right. One of the, one of the big hopes, honestly, is that the State Board of Equalization would at some point, with city, various feedback from cities and counties may reverse some of that decision. It actually represents a 24% cut in gas tax funding revenues that the city receives from the state. Again, it was $3.4 million less this coming year than, than the prior year, and what, what we've done is, number one, we're using a little bit of our fund balances and drawing those closer down to a, a lower level than, than honestly I'd prefer to see from a standpoint of being able just to cash flow grants and such, but we're able to continue our current level of effort for a couple of years. The five-year actually assumes if state gas tax does not recover, we may be looking at some pretty significant cuts and reductions in '18, is how that plays out. Again, that was a loss of 3.4 million a year. Things that we're doing is we're doing as much grant-funded work as possible. Proposed budget includes a number of major street AC overlay projects that are grant-funded. We utilize what are called toll credits wherever we can, instead of the grants being, say, 80 to 90% funded and having to come up with a match. We are going to 100% grant funding through what are called toll credits, where the federal government allows the state to recognize the tolls they collect for bridge, bridges and such around the state. We're doing that. Again, CDBG is back in the budget for $900,000, which helps toward, toward street repairs. That's, and so, all, altogether, we're doing what we can to exercise best management practices and be as effective as we can. That said, we are still staring at a, roughly a quarter billion of deferred street maintenance is the grand total, about 220 million in--
A quarter of a billion?
Quarter billion. That's roughly 220 million in pavement and $30 million worth of deferred sidewalk and general concrete repairs. So, that, that's a big challenge, that we, we chip away at the highest priorities, we be as efficient as we possibly can, we leverage anything we can with, with grant funding and make that happen, but that, that said, that's still a very, very large number.
So, what, or how much of it are we doing this next fiscal year in terms of the quarter billion? A very small percentage, I assume?
Uh, well, really, this next year, for example, in paving, we're investing $9.8 million in fiscal year 2016, and that, that compares against what our pavement management studies have shown, is to keep, keep our current levels of street, in the, in the condition that they're in, that we'd need to be investing about $22 million a year. So, that's, you know, an ongoing shortfall. That said, I, I feel that this is a good budget from a Public Works perspective, and it balances the needs citywide. However, there, there's a very large amount of deferred maintenance out there.
And if I could add to that, I think what's different in this budget, maybe in relation to budgets in the past, is a lot, well, the vast majority of all of our grant dollars that are available are being invested in our older neighborhoods. Now, we can't do residential street repavement with some of these grant dollars like Regional Surface Transportation or CMAC, but I'll use Blackstone Avenue. We have proposed a, a major repaving project for the Blackstone corridor. We're gonna be, coming back in a week or so with undergrounding of the utilities being proposed. At one time, we started undergrounding all the utilities along Blackstone, and we got to about Shields and McKinley and stopped. So, future grant dollars that used to be used to help buy down the cost of development are now being focused or refocused or rechanneled or reinvested in our older neighborhoods. So, Blackstone is gonna see about a $2 million investment of congestion mitigation air quality dollars, a repaving of the Blackstone Avenue from about Ashland--
Ashland to Shaw and then Shields up to Dakota.
Dakota. And then, in the future, the undergrounding of those utilities. So, in order to meet the goals of, of the mayor's initiative to restore and revitalize our older neighborhoods, we are taking, we are committed to taking those grant dollars that used to be used. Interesting, we used to have developers that would pay almost like the match, and we use federal dollars to, to put in the infrastructure, so going forward, we're not gonna be doing that in the future. Development will have to pay the full freight and not rely on these dollars necessarily to buy down the cost of that in the future. So, those, that shift in funding priority is how, in a lot of ways, we're gonna meet those goals laid out in the mayor's budget and the general plan.
And that carryover or the fund balance that you talked about, that's the $29 million as proposed in this budget? Is that what we were talking about? Just for clarification on page B-152. There's a 20, a little bit over 20 million, 29 million, sorry.
And in terms of fund balance carryovers, actually, those, what I was referring to is just within the specific gas tax revenues. We, we actually had a couple of things going, as, as Jane had mentioned earlier, we did have some higher one-time payments that came in toward the end of last year. We had about 400,000 come in of Prop 111 special gas tax, and we had a higher receipt in Measure C Street Maintenance. So, this past year, as those came in, those got factored into this budget. So, in other words, instead of spending last year right up to that level, some of those dollars have then flowed into this budget to, in essence, smooth out a bit of the effect of the state coming in with pretty, pretty massive cut based on the Board of Equalization decision.
Really, really quick, just give you a five-minute warning before, we're gonna break for noon and lunch.
Break for lunch at noon.
So, I'll just ask one question before we go to lunch, 'cause I still have a, a number of questions. So, you did mention that every district gets allocated about 300,000 a year, and I just wanted, for clarification, in terms of some of the CDBG funds, 'cause I know in my district I have some of those areas, is that also in addition to, on top of the 30, the 300,000 that about we get, we each get allocated?
The CDBG is part of the $300,000, so it's a total, 300,000 times seven is 2.1 million as proposed, and so, in es- in essence, we have 900,000 of CDBG and 1.2 million of gas tax funds dedicated to the neighborhood work. Very similar, in very similar fashion to this past year, where we had a $3 million program, it was made up of that mixture of, of funding sources, and wherever, wherever we had a council member with a priority and a good paving project that aligned with CDBG, we, we use CDBG for that work. And in essence, it allowed the CDBG money, we, we didn't have a problem in committing that to the neighborhoods that it needed to be. Then we had some council districts where there were less CDBG areas, and there was flexibility for that to basically go, go anywhere.
And in essence, this is augmenting the city's overall program. One of the things that we don't talk about when we talk about our older neighborhoods, doesn't get discussed much, is that in addition to what Scott's got in his ongoing operating, there is about, what, 3.8 million of that, of debt service on No Neighborhood Left Behind?
Yeah.
And Sal remembers No Neighborhood Left Behind, and the vast, I think, all the money that was allocated in those neighborhoods were all in what I would define as CDBG eligible areas. So, there's, there's 3.8 million, I think by the time we get done, it's gonna be close to, you know, 90 millions, over $100 million worth of debt for $36 million worth of work, which again, is, is indicative of what happens when you don't set money aside and then all of a sudden there's a need, let's put it on the credit card, and let's go do 36, 37 million dollars worth of work and spread it out over a 30-year period at 3.8 billion dollars a year.
So, then, these CDBG funds are, in fact, augmenting?
They're augmenting.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure that that's clear. Do we wanna break now and then? Yeah, yeah.
All right, council, we'll, we'll break for, break for our noon break here, and we will return at 1:30.
So, one of my next questions, I guess, is just regarding the entire budget and some of the funding dollars that are out there. You know, I've heard that the City of Fresno didn't apply for act, active transportation dollars or the active transportation program. I don't know if there was, maybe if you can talk about those dollars available through the state, and if we didn't apply for them this year, is there something that we're looking at, ensuring that we, we are drawing down so that we can? We know that there's a huge need. You mentioned, you know, we have 22 or a quarter of a billion, I guess, in deferred maintenance, and so, how some of those dollars can actually help us continue chipping away at the issue that, that is before us?
Most definitely.
Closer? Oh. Did you?
I, I did hear the question.
Sorry.
Good, good afternoon. And in regards to the active transportation program, that is a, it's a state program, just brief background, that rolls up some old grant opportunities, the transportation enhancements, bicycle transportation account that were bike lanes, and then safe routes to school became the new program, and ATP is the acronym. The City of Fresno, we applied for funding last year for both a state call and then also through Fresno COG, our own council of governments, and this year, the state actually increased the application requirements pretty dramatically. They, in the spring, they required a signed, stamped, engineered report for every single grant application, and also required extensive community outreach. With that, again, could, could we have applied for a couple of locations, perhaps? But our staff had advised me that our chances on the state call for 2015 were very, very low, and that we really needed the time to then improve our applications, improve our community outreach, and be ready for 2016. That said, we were funded last year for the regional call, which was through Fresno COG. We received five successful grants, and that we expect would be coming to council in July with a resolution of support, so there are many applications we're looking for. ATP funds would not deal with maintenance of pavements or concrete. In essence, it's for new construction, capital projects. Eligible types are safe routes to school, so there are big needs throughout the community, especially in some older infill areas for completing sidewalks, traffic signals to improve pedestrian safety, and of course, bike lanes and trails. So, we expect to have a, a good list of applications come before the council in July, and then meanwhile, our grant staff will be working toward the spring 2016 to get some really strong applications for the state call.
Okay. And so, so we're starting to work and have those conversations for next year, but, so we couldn't have used, you know, I feel that the, as the city, we've, do different community forums, and I know that they just did a series of them for the consolidated plan. None of those count as, you know, I know part of discussions that happen in some of those is kind of the infrastructure, and so, in looking at how, you know, you mentioned that part of the requirement was to do public outreach, and so, maybe we didn't have the resources or we, the time to, to do it to be able to submit a strong application. So, are we trying to work, you know, in a collaborative way with the other departments when they are doing these outreach, so that maybe we're being more efficient and maximizing the opportunity when we have an audience in, in addressing some of the issues? Because, you know, I, I'm grateful that we applied for the regional, the COG money, and I think that that's great. I do, you know, it's a little just, I guess, it's unfortunate that we didn't go after state money because there's a need, and that's the reality. And so, yes, maybe the criteria or the requirements are a little bit more stricter. Did we not know with enough notice so that we could deal with those? So, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that, as a city, we're trying to maximize our efforts in drawing down those dollars, because at the end of the day, our taxpayers are the ones that fund those, and so, we should be getting our fair share. Yes, we're getting the local ones, but I wanna make sure that we're also getting the benefit of the, the state dollars that are there available. So, you know, just hoping that next year we are on point and that we do have those applications submitted that would be competitive and meet the requirement, the new requirements as you mentioned, where I guess a little bit more stricter or--
Absolutely. And I, and again, I do take responsibility that Public Works did not put forth those state applications. Again, staff had advised, as, as you'd mentioned, Councilmember Soria, the requirements were very high and left us without really the time to meet all the state application requirements. That said, I do take responsibility on that. As far as meetings, some excellent opportunities, what we've seen they've looked for in the past are, for example, if it's a school area, traffic signal or sidewalk project, what works very well is that it's a meeting involving a lot of the parents, perhaps at the elementary school, could be in, in conjunction with a council neighborhood-type meeting, which could address multiple issues, and it's very compelling when we have a long list, and a sign-in list and a summary of the issues that have been raised. So, we, we will be looking to do quite a bit of that outreach this next year and focusing in on those strong candidates.
Yeah. And I would be happy to host some of those community meetings so that we do have the benefit, and my, my constituents could have the benefit of potentially getting some of their projects funded. So, I would like to work with you guys and collaborate in doing the public outreach efforts in District One.
And we have a good staff team who would love to work with you, with you and council colleagues on those types of meetings. Those, those would be great.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Just a couple areas that, in my district, that I would like to make sure that, just for the record, and maybe you can tell me if they're anywhere on the list for this next fiscal year. You know, there's a lot of talk about restoring some of our older neighborhoods. In my district, I represent some of the, some of these neighborhoods, the Fresno High Tower area, cent, central of my, my district, you know, Shields, Ashland, Dakota, that area as well. central of my district, you know, Shields, Ashland, Dakota, that area as well. And one of the really just well-known boulevards in my district is Van Ness, that strip, and it is in need. I know that I've spoken to you before, there is, there's a number of potholes which you guys thankfully filled not that long ago, but in terms of the need of doing an overlay for that boulevard, I think that it will make the neighborhood really look a lot better and much more appealing. It's, like I said, one of our older neighborhoods there. So I don't know if you, if this was included in this next fiscal year's project for my district?
Paving type projects kind of fall into two categories. One are the larger overlays on major streets and those each wind up being in the budget as a separate line item. However, Van Ness is one that does not qualify on the grant side, but we are looking through our street maintenance division, being able to do that, somewhat of a small segment, but Brian Russell and his team are looking to be able to do that this next year, again, pending budget approval and the dollars being there for that.
So would it be included if we do approve this budget? So I'm looking at McKinley, between McKinley and Shields?
So really, with the budget as proposed, we would look to be able to do that in two phases, really from McKinley to Clinton as a first phase this coming year and then to target dollars in fiscal year 17, the following budget, to be able to go from Clinton up to Shields.
As part of that first phase, I would also like to see, there's that Weldon Street right east, I mean west of Van Ness, right by the school. It is very, very bad. I've gone a lot of calls from my constituents, they ride their bikes and it's very bumpy. So that one, I don't know if it's part of the list for next year, but if we could include us part of Phase One in terms of the Van Ness area, since it's right next to it, can we do that?
You know, that could be one of the streets that will come out of your $300,000 if you'd like to designate that as your priority.
Sure. That would be, how much would one of those streets be in terms of the project cost?
We can get an estimate together on that as far as that piece of Weldon near Van Ness.
Is it from Van Ness to Palm, that area?
Okay, going from Van Ness over to Palm.
West, yeah.
We can definitely put together an estimate for that, but as City Manager indicated, my response was going to be that, that would be perfect for the, part of the $300,000 neighborhood street paving program.
Okay. And then just in terms of the other projects that I was wanting to see if they're on the list, Shields and Ashland need some work in terms of between, I guess, in my district it's Blackstone all the way to, or east of Blackstone all the way to, I'm trying to think what's, I guess, Fruit, that area? Or I would even go as far as Weber in those streets in terms of the need of doing some maintenance there.
And the proposed budget includes, through grant funding, includes repaving Shields from Blackstone west to Palm, over to Palm Avenue.
West to Palm.
So that stretch. So looking again at Palm to Weber, that would be something for a future year or not feasible within the budget as proposed right now. But we have secured federal transportation grant funding to repave Shields from Blackstone to Palm. As far as Ashland is concerned, we did, we did a couple of projects in prior years. We went from 99 over to Valentine and then we had another project in District Seven and Four, but there isn't any Ashland Avenue proposed project within this budget.
Okay, so I would like to see if we can sit down and figure out if we can, I don't know if it would be within my budget because I don't know if it would cover it, but figure out how we prioritize it. I would like to see those areas that need some work to be done and be prioritized, even if it's not this year, maybe like we said, in the next year. On the streetlights, I do want to thank you guys, I know that there's a few projects with the left arrows in that area, the Palm and Clinton, right? Some of those left arrows.
That's correct, Palm and Clinton and then a brand-new traffic signal at Shields and Weber.
Yeah, so, and people are very excited, by the way, about those lights. It's going to really help with safety in terms of crossing and even just cars turning, making left turns, so very appreciative. On just maintenance of streetlights in the neighborhood, how do we help? I know that when we report them, at least from what I ask my staff when they report them, it takes a few months to get them fixed. I just got a call the other day from, in the Tower District on Wilson, all the streetlights are off. And I don't know if it was, it may be a copper issue, not sure. And I don't know if anyone has gone out to see if that's the underlying issue. But I guess I want to get to the issue of the fact that it takes a pretty long time to fix some of those streetlights because I know that if a neighborhood is dark, it invites criminal activity. And so my hope would be that if we need additional resources to ensure that the department can take care of these much more quicker, can you speak to that in terms of this year's budget?
This budget has the same, in essence, the status quo, the continuing level of service on streetlights that we have this current year. We did add in fiscal year 15, we went from two dedicated streetlight repair electricians up to three. And what that did is it got us to the point where assuming we had no copper wire theft issues, no vandalism, no downtown streetlight problems, assuming that, we would have then enough staff to actually keep, replace the lights that burn out. Prior to that, as we went through what's often been called the Great Recession, we actually only had two staff and we are losing ground on an annual basis of about 2,000 lights just going out just due to age of the bulbs. So at this point, we have, we have had to focus this past year quite a bit on the repair. We've had issues with the decorative post-top lights that are in downtown, the Fresno High, City College type areas and a few others around the city. We are mostly through that and getting back into citywide repairs. Just had discussed with both Mr. Crowder, Assistant Director, and Mr. Russell, Street Maintenance Manager, where we were. We estimate we've got about, we'd estimate around 1,200 streetlights out throughout the city, which is about 3% of our total inventory. And our current backlog, again, due to quite a bit of the downtown and Fresno High type area vandalism, our backlog is about three months on light repairs. That's, I'm not happy with that, but certainly it's a resource issue. We're, I think we're doing well through the reporting and the Fresno application, the new basically smartphone type app that people can utilize to report, that'll certainly be helpful in that, but it all comes down to, we basically have-
Or it'll add to your list.
It will add to our list.
Probably a lot quicker.
But it's that balancing act between concrete repairs, neighborhood streets and then everything beyond.
How much more money do you think you guys would need to be at a better place in terms of turnaround to replace the streetlights?
See, we'd have to look at that-
If we have a three-month backlog.
Really, really to improve it, from my perspective, would be a fourth streetlight repair electrician, but it would also involve then the materials that go with, go with that person.
How much would that be?
Probably, you're probably looking at somewhere between electrician and a truck and all materials, at least 150.
Elvin?
Mm-hmm. 175? What Scott's getting to is that for a number of years and your colleagues down there, apparently I'm going to have to talk, teach them how to work on a decorative streetlight because they would actually go out on their own and make repairs in their district. And we added some more positions, we added funding, we actually committed a million dollars towards this a year or so ago. And some of that was being used to retrofit streetlights so they couldn't steal the copper wire from the pole boxes. What's been happening in our older neighborhoods with these decorative streetlights that are made of fiberglass, they're not even original, they're just fiberglass. Copper wire thieves are now just busting out the sides of the base because they know they're fiberglass. And so I think what you're going to find is the same thing we found in downtown with six, seven months ago when half the streetlights in downtown weren't working because copper wire thieves had come into the downtown area and just started stripping them out from the base. So not only do you have to replace the wire, you've got to come in and now retrofit the base to keep them with a steel sleeve to keep the thieves from coming in and ripping out wire. And so the theft has just shifted from one type of streetlight, which is your conventional streetlight, now to targeting those areas that are more vulnerable because again, the older neighborhoods have these decorative lights that are a lot easier to strip wire from than are conventional streetlights.
And that effort of hardening the targets on those is nearly wrapped up. A lot of that has involved some changes within the decorative streetlight wiring. It's involved some collars welded and placed around the bases of those lights. So we now have that in place and we've even had to be dealing with our traffic signal pole boxes and we have an effort, it's about a three-year effort to go around and actually replace all of those lids with locking lids in this case. We felt we've been successful with that, but it's just a big challenge to keep ahead of the thieves.
So with our Fresno app, you're absolutely correct. When people start sending in pictures of burned-out streetlights, it's going to give us a time, location and be able to objectively measure how long it takes before we're able to close that work order. And at that point in time, if there's a decision based on other priorities or other things that come in through this application, to put it into another electrician, we'll have to look at that. But I would caution that we, before we start putting money into, again, another ongoing costs, that we get this app up and running and find out what other complaints or concerns we're going to get from our residents because we may find out, I know there was discussions yesterday about the amount we spend on graffiti. That doesn't count how much Park spends on graffiti out of its budget. We may find out that graffiti becomes now the big issue for a lot of our residents and therefore will be conversation about adding, funding the graffiti. So two years ago, we were a year plus, over a year. So to go from over a year to three months, I'm not necessarily concerned about that. Certainly something like a whole street, we would give a priority over a single light.
Which I can appreciate, but we're the ones that get the calls and I'm the one that gets the calls or when I'm walking down the neighborhood.
And then you can forward those calls or concerns to me.
Okay, then I will do that because, and I can appreciate that, the time in terms of the reduction of time now, you know, you guys went from one year to three months, so I definitely appreciate that.
The other thing I could add is if they have the pole number and the address of the residence or building that that streetlight is in front of, it really helps out a lot. That's what I've found in my experience. So you narrow it real quick and your GPS will work, but it's always better to get the pole number and the actual address of the home or the business that the light is in front of. Roll right on it, set up, get her done, out the door.
I've got Paul and Steve on call for emergency work.
Indeed, very, very, very dependable.
Have you just joked, just joking, Marina? Smile.
I also have a couple other ones that I just got yesterday. These are west of the 99 on Donner and I do have the address, so maybe if I can, I know that my staff has reported them, but just, you know, want to make sure that-
We'll make sure they're addressed or sometimes we find that there are other issues. We had one up in Councilmember Brand's district that got reported and it turned out it was a PG&E issue and it wasn't our staff not able to do it, it was something on PG&E's side of the service connection and it took them a couple months to be able to deal with that. So we will definitely review and respond.
So for like the one that I just said on Wilson, between Olive and McKinley, they said the entire block is out. Do you, do you guys just naturally assume that it was a copper, that is a copper issue or do you guys go figure out what it is?
We have a pretty sharp group of electricians and they do investigate each particular one. They definitely, they don't assume the cause, but if it's an entire block, that sounds a lot like either the wire was, sometimes it's stolen or it may be just in some cases it's vandalized and if one section is cut on a whole string of lights, then they all go out. But sometimes it's just simple vandalism of the one light.
Wanted to ask, very similar to my colleague earlier who asked in terms of just other bigger projects within District One that are happening or highlights that you can share within this budget?
A couple other things that we didn't cover already. One, Councilmember Soria, in District One is a safe routes to school, a traffic signal at Clinton and Thorne. That is near Hamilton Elementary and that's moving forward into the design stage, again, grant-funded. And then another big item really that we've, I know we've spoken about that's of concern as to our timeline moving forward, getting the benefits is just the traffic synchronization. So this next year, one of the highlights in the mayor's budget was we have 11 different corridors citywide that now, we're able to invest about 11 million in those on wireless traffic synchronization projects, building on the backbone of the fiber system that was put in between seven to 10 years ago. And those include corridors like West Avenue, Shields Avenue. We have McKinley running east-west across the whole city. So, you know, we're excited about delivering those benefits to kind of the center of our city in similar manner to folks who got excited about Clovis Avenue, Shaw or Herndon. So that's, we're excited about bringing those forward.
And Scott, maybe from a timing standpoint, you know, Councilmember Brandau's favorite project, is there any infrastructure projects associated with high-speed rail, Ashland Avenue, Clinton Avenue reconstruction on the overpasses, things like that?
Absolutely. Infrastructure-wise, the high-speed rail corridor, again, because they cannot have any gated crossings, the proposed improvements that are getting designed are grade separations at locations like Shaw Avenue would be an overpass at the railroad in Golden State along with McKinley, Olive Avenue. So those upon completion, I mean, each of those is really about a $30 million type of under or overpass project. And when they're done, that'll be a really significant benefit for the city as far as just east-west travel plus rail safety. You know, no more issue of what happens if someone's hit at the railroad crossing. We'll have grade separations at each one.
And what's the timeframe for those projects?
With high-speed rail, the big question mark is when they can secure all the right-of-way that they're acquiring. The design plans are kind of varying on those from about 60% to 90% designed on those and within the next several months, we'd anticipate providing review and approval, all that cost being of course paid for by high-speed rail, not coming out of city accounts. And then the construction, I mean, it depends upon the right-of-way and how fast they can get folks like PG&E and AT&amp;T moved out of the way. Very easily, those grade separations could be under construction this next year.
In regards to trails and bike lanes, do we have any of those projects in District One that are included?
As far as trails and bike lanes, we have a couple of things going. One is the council had approved a contract with an engineering firm to do a feasibility study both for the bank side, for further bank-side trail extensions. And then also, we've started doing some work to look at the tower to downtown type of connection. I know- I know Fresno COG is following up with kind of a step-two of that study this next year. So really, we, as we're seeing it, that the bank-side trail, we're doing a lot of feasibility studies, we're trying to secure an agreement with the Fresno Irrigation District. Once that's in place, then we've got dollars we can line up to basically continue that whole bank-side trail from Manchester Center heading west and up through District One.
Do we know when this feasibility study, I know that when I first came in, I started talking about that, the connectivity between Tower and Downtown. I think I had talked to Tony the other day, and he said they were gonna, have they started it, or are they just going to start it in July?
The feasibility study is well underway, and we should be wrapping that up within about the next two months. So we're looking at options such as, for example, between Downtown Tower and the bank-side trail options. One is called a cycle track, which is to carve out an area of the street and create it as a protected two-way, two-way bike path, as opposed to just an on-street bike lane that's no more than paint on the ground.
And have we, do, do any of the dollars, I know that in, on page 150, there are some construction or contract construction dollars, which are almost 1.5, almost 1.5 million. Are those, could those be used for potential recommendations that come out of that feasibility study?
We have dollars in the, in the Measure C Trails Fund, which could be utilized for some of those. As far as the amount in the budget, the trails proposed this next year, they've already gone through that vetting process. They include the Copper Trail, the First Phase of the Bank Side, which is on Shields from Fresno to First, and includes the Fancher Creek Trail, planning and engineering work east of Clovis Avenue, and also a piece of the Veterans Boulevard Trail up between Hayes and Polk.
So that's what's being covered under the, that, I think on page 150, the trails, the 1.4 million or close to 1.5, those are the projects covered under?
That is correct.
So everything is already accounted for?
Everything's accounted for, and again, we're in a little bit of just trying to finish up that feasibility study and obtain the FIDs buy-off and agreement. And then, then it, from my perspective, I'd see kind of the floodgates opening and being able to implement a large number of trail projects.
And are we going to be looking at some potential, maybe cap-and-trade funds that could fund some of these trails or bike lanes?
As I understand, there is eligibility under cap-and-trade for those. Currently, the administration's been taking the lead on a lot of the discussions with the state Strategic Growth Council on criteria and projects and such. But where, I think what we're trying to do from a department perspective is get all these lined up such that we can take advantage of those funds.
A lot of cap-and-trade dollars are driven by projects and the density of the projects, adjacent projects. So for example, as I mentioned earlier this morning, Fancher Creek is in the second phase because they're able to tie their density. We had, the administration had to work pretty hard just to get the density levels to a point where we could compete. I think it's somewhere around 28 or 30 units an acre, which for Fresno is, I think is an acceptable level, but you're competing with Bay Area projects that are like 50 or 60 units an acre. And so Fancher Creek, fortunately, because of the work with the developer and the mayor's leadership, was able to get the number to where even that project could compete. In fact, it is the only project in the entire San Joaquin Valley that's even in the running. Again, it's driven by density. So back to the general plan, in order to be able to compete for these cap-and-trade dollars, to bring these amenities or these kind of projects or those kind of dollars to the table, we have to have projects that also meet that density threshold.
Okay. The other questions I have, I just, I was going through the line item budget, and I don't know if it makes sense, because there's a number of things that I highlighted, maybe I can meet with you to go over specifically what are some, I can go through maybe a couple of the ones on the general fund that are outlined. Just a question in regards to one of the line items, it's material and parts, they're 25,000, and previously we hadn't budgeted for that, so I'm just wondering what that is. Or under special projects, we're funding 81,000. What are usually, I guess, because we don't have any details as to what it is, I'm just wondering what you guys are doing with those 81,000 dollars. So I don't know if, I have a series of them, so I would be happy to meet with you, you know, set up sometime maybe in the next couple days before next week, to see if you can answer some of the specific questions that I have on the line items. That probably, I don't want to bore to death my colleagues, I've already asked a lot of questions, so if we can do that.
The staff and I, we can be available, and I'll just defer to City Manager as to how you'd like to see that kind of come together.
Why don't you contact Laura in my office, and we'll schedule a time where we can meet.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. That will be it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Brando.
All right, Scott, I've got a whole group of questions too, kind of bouncing around. And some of it is based on some of previous councilmember comments and questions that I've kind of thought, all right, I need to ask some similar questions about District Two. I do have one constituent who I hear from at least once a week, who's probably watching right now, and they were at our District Two meeting about six weeks ago. And they're really concerned about Herndon Avenue. We've been on a project on Herndon Avenue for a long time. You and I spoke about it offline, and you said that we had a little delay due to interaction with Comcast. That's the one. Since I know this constituent's watching, I told them that I would ask about this particular item. Has that whole Comcast thing got cleared up, or where are we at on that project on Herndon Avenue?
Construction Management Division, they've been, as we discussed, Councilmember Brando diligently pursuing that. And our contractor for the roadwork now plans to restart, be able to restart on the week of the 27th of June.
On the 27th of June, so I can tell this guy, on the 27th of June, he can expect to see the work start back up again? Fantastic, thank you. And I told, I prepped him, I said, these things don't always go by quickly, and sometimes things get out of our control, as in the case with this Comcast setback. So I'll tell him to be ready for the 27th of June. He'll probably be okay with that as long as he knows we're moving forward. So thank you for that. I, you know, listening to some of my fellow councilmembers, Councilman Quintero, Councilman Olivier, and have both talked about streets that, where we interact with the county. And I took, after thinking about it for a few minutes, I suggested to the council president, and he gets to call the shots on this stuff, that when we have a joint meeting with the county of Fresno, this would be a great item for us to talk about because, well, and you and I have talked, because we've had several, in District Two, we have a large number of county islands, Fruit Avenue, but now Bullard, Barstow, Sierra, a lot of these streets interact with the county. Some of them, like, the county takes over from the median of the street, from the middle line, and then on the, on the one side it'll be county, and from, literally from the middle of the street is city. So how do you repair that street? Who's in charge? I do believe, like Councilman Quintero and Olivier and others on council, that we have got to find a way of streamlining that process. So I remember when I first got elected, and we had the issue with Fruit and bike lanes and all that stuff come up. So immediately, we went to begin to look at repairing that street, and it's really just to get the city and the county together, it's taken about two years. So, and by the way, I believe Fruit is on deck for July, is that correct?
That's correct, for July-August timeframe, and that's the, basically the block or two just north of Shaw. That's the city area.
Right, right. But that is one of these streets, right, where the, where we've got it divided?
That, that's correct. And we didn't want to go out there from the public perspective and say, well, let's pave up to the center line of Fruit and have this nice-looking patch, and then the public says, wow, who, why did they decide to stop in the middle of the road? So tried to have that partnership with the county, and we do have that in place.
So I think we need to find a way of strengthening that partnership or take it to the next level and do some streamlining. Are you laughing at me, or?
No, I was just kidding, just to the next.
Okay, right, right, right.
I think the challenge we've seen, you know, at times with the county is, you know, Fresno County Public Works, they actually have the most road mileage of any county in the state. They're actually number one for most road mileage, and they don't have the most resources of any county in the state. And there's a real kind of tug-of-war, if you will, between the rural interests and all the county rural road mileage of, you know, basically having to go repave a road at millions in expense that might only carry two or 3,000 cars a day. But it's considered kind of an essential lifeline-type road for, you know, agricultural interest and the rural communities out there. And then they get into the urban area and they ask, well, should we, should we partner with the city of Fresno, you know, and do some of these streets? We've got a long list of needs, and we're glad to be in that conversation.
Yeah, it seems like there's got to be something we can do, maybe even get more creative on how we trade off services with the county. So I know, so in that, in that case, we would be the one asking for their help to help us maintain some of these streets inside the city of Fresno, but in a lot of ways, they ask us for help on other issues. So maybe we have to get creative about that. But it definitely needs to get done.
And if I could just share one thing, there's a kind of a distinction between a major capital project like a total resurfacing and overlay, where it does take more time to align the dollars and coordinate that. But just on routine maintenance, as far as patching potholes and that type of response, we actually do have a good partnership with the county on shared streets where we don't have to ask, well, there's a pothole on that street, is it, is it five feet on the left side or five feet on the right side? We actually have the city divided up, and where we're first responder in certain areas and where county public works will respond, again, just on the minor potholes.
Well, I love that.
So that's, that's a good.
Right. Hopefully we can extend that same type of get-togetherness. All right. So I mentioned Herndon because of the Comcast situation, but, but we also have some other major streets. And you know, Scott, I grabbed the general plan, let me just throw out a couple streets, and tell me what are these? Is Bullard an arterial, a super arterial, or what is a street like Bullard in District Two?
Bullard is classified as an arterial. So arterials are generally your four-lane roads like Bullard, Shaw, Ashland, they may be four, they may be six-lane. Basically, the quick rule of thumb, Herndon's the expressway, and then the super arterials in the city are like Willow, Veterans Boulevard, Temperance, Jensen, and the collectors are the other half-mile streets in between, more like a Barstow Avenue.
So Barstow is considered what?
Barstow would be a collector.
A collector, okay. Just so I get this clear, and I've heard other councilmembers ask real similar questions, when you're, when you're fixing a collector like Barstow or a street that's not quite as trafficked as Herndon, but still a pretty major street, how do those, how do, how does the funding sources for fixing a collector street? Is that something that's raised from the city of Fresno through gas taxes, or is that a state-of-California input, or how does that work?
It could be either one, just a couple things. One, the federal dollars that flow through Caltrans and Fresno COG that we can go after each year, those are limited to the major streets, which is a collector, arterial, or greater.
Okay.
That said, then beyond that, with the COG, they divide up the money in a couple categories. There are competitive grants regionally where everyone puts in their projects, and that's where things like District Two this next year, Herndon Avenue from Blackstone to West is getting repaved. That's regional competitive money. There's also money that the city then can designate, but within those, within those street limits. And then we use, basically, gas tax money gets consumed just between streetlight repairs, concrete repairs, and a pothole patching, and a little bit of operational overlay work, which, as we talked about earlier, is not enough to do something like, let's say, Bullard Avenue. So that's generally the way the grant dollars and the gas tax funds work.
Okay. Now, what streets do we end up being more responsible for? I know we have the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Streets Program, that's for super local, that's for?
Residential streets.
Residential streets. And then what about streets that feed those streets? So we have, you know, so we have smaller streets that aren't arterials or even collectors. Is that something we're responsible for, or?
Those, those are also streets that we're responsible for, even if they're a more heavily-traveled local street, something more like, let's say, Sierra in District Two. There are some sections of Sierra that are just residential, they're not classified as major streets, and the federal money doesn't flow to those. But we are responsible for those. All told, we're in the range of, I want to say about 3,400 lane miles citywide, and you can see from the budget narrative and discussion that we're paving 23 miles of streets, but we've got 3,400.
You get 2,400?
Three, 3,400, and we are repaving 23.
Wow, that's amazing to me. That's like that statistic you threw out, I think, when Councilmember Soria was talking, about a billion dollars' worth of backlog deferred maintenance.
Just a quarter billion, but, but that's a staggering number.
The quarter billion?
So 250 million.
Yeah, quarter billion, 250 million of deferred maintenance.
Of deferred maintenance.
And we're spending nine or something like that.
And that's, that's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Nine, 9.8 million.
Okay. Let's see, what do I want to ask next? Oh yeah, quarter billion. All right. On our, so, I would just throw this in, as the councilmember that sits on FCTA that oversees Measure C funds, I get a chance to hear about streets. Last year, we had a convention in the East Bay that's called Focus on the Future, and it's about transportation statewide streets mostly, but it talks about the overall condition of streets in California, and we're in bad shape. Streets across the state of California are in bad shape. It's not just Fresno, it's everywhere. And it's funny to me how something that everybody travels on a daily basis, that takes, that every single one of our citizens use on a daily basis gets such low priority statewide, and unfortunately, it seems to me like sometimes even down citywide. Yesterday, we talked a lot about parks, and I showed a couple pictures of the park that I go to the most. And, and we determined with 20 million park users a year, or, excuse me, 2 million park users a year in Fresno, that comes out to about 5,500 park users a day. And we're using, and we're spending vast resources, you know, I shouldn't have said the word vast, we're spending resources on parks where we have about 5,500 users a day, when we have hundreds of thousands of users a day on our streets. And so I know that our department heads can't say that stuff, and I know it's unpopular, but it's my job to say that. Because for my, for myself, it's about priorities, and we have to make clutch decisions. And I know we're in a restorative budget this year, which is fine, but when I read your budget, I just were reading, concrete strike team increased slightly over last year, crack seal team, same remain level of service of last year, street maintenance remained consistent with FY15. So in my opinion, we're not, we haven't, we haven't added anything in these areas, and these are vital areas to me. So every councilmember gets to talk about what they see when they interact with their citizens, and I probably would admit that that changes a little bit from, from different areas of the city, but in District Two, this is the one thing that I keep hearing about, sidewalks and streets, potholes and streets falling apart. And so And so I have got, I've got to talk about that a little bit. I am going, you know, the neighborhood roads program, last year, we had two point one, or that is also another number that's the same as last year, right?
The, the number in the proposed budget is the same as last year. Council by budget motion increased the neighborhood street program to three million for the current fiscal year, but the two point one million is the same proposal as, as the mayor's fiscal year twenty-fifteen budget. So three hundred thousand dollars within each council district. But again, just to clarify, the amount that we've been doing this year is four hundred twenty-eight thousand per district.
And, okay, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to run that through me again. Proposed is three hundred thousand, which is the same as last year, right?
Same, same as was proposed in the budget last year, that's right.
And then how did we get to four twenty-eight?
There was a council budget motion to increase it to three million dollars total. Instead of two point one million total, it went up to three.
And when was that motion made?
During last year's budget hearings, last June.
Got it. I made the motion. See? Right? Thank you. Thank you. You know, why do we have these meetings go after lunch? My brain, okay, I made the, what a wonderful motion. That is, that was the best motion of last year and I want to make the same motion this year. And matter of fact, just to round it off, I'd like to make the motion of raising the per district expenditures for the neighborhood streets budget to five hundred thousand per district, council district. And so I think that I would add to that.
So to be clear, what you're proposing is, and I appreciate the, the structure of the motion, but you're proposing a one point four million dollar increase in, in the neighborhood street program?
I am.
Okay.
Seven times yes. Yes, you're right and I should have clarified that. One point four million dollars. And I almost wanted to double it, Bruce, but we can talk about that later. That, that would have taken another two point one. So what I'm gonna ask with that is, I know tomorrow, I believe, we're gonna revisit CDBG funding, is that correct? Is that on, on deck for tomorrow?
Uh huh.
And so I'm gonna ask staff to tell me if there's been, if we can discover any more money in CDBG funding that can help, if, even if it means transferring or a movement of funds from one stream to another to make this happen. So what I'm really saying is tomorrow, I'm gonna be examining CDBG funding to see if there's any undiscovered monies that we haven't discovered yet that could apply to this. And, and I'd be willing, Bruce is laughing, I will be willing to amend this number next week, but right now, just like Councilman Olivier, when he made his motion earlier, I wanted to, I want to use a number and then I'll be open to moving that number around as necessary, but I wanted to start somewhere. So I want to increase the per district budgets to five hundred thousand each. Last year, I appreciate when you guys came in, we all worked together, we, we had several dip, well, of course, we have multiple opportunities in District Two, just like every other council district, and we chose one and the people that were their neighborhood streets were serviced were ecstatic and, and you know, it's unfortunate that you can only do one tiny little neighborhood at a time, but that's where we're at, but I just, I want to see this part of the budget restored a little bit as well as the rest of the budget. So I am going to call it a day with that motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
Councilmember Brand.
Just on the budget in general, Scott, it shows a decline of about five million dollars. Was that due primarily to gas tax?
Primarily the gas tax, that's three point four million dollars of reduction.
And then it looks like the general fund portion went up about one point three or one point four million? That's identified in that?
A little bit. Part, part of what happens that Jane had touched on earlier is a big effort to develop and adopt an indirect cost recovery plan so that we can recoup dollars from federal and state grants. In doing so, as we worked with the consultant and then the federal agencies who review that, it's required somewhat of a restructuring of which, of which fund is, basically how things are paid for and how they're allocated to projects. So there's a little bit of shifting within that, but in, in looking at it globally, it, we don't have any service changes as a result of that.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you something that's really gonna be hard and I've talked about this before. This is getting a, again, best effort, not a spend three weeks trying to assemble data, but basically an estimate on what collectively, I'm gonna read these categories, the deferred maintenance is on streets, curbs and gutters, sidewalks, landscape medians, trails maintenance. Could you get something like that together by next week? Just delete, an estimate, I don't, I didn't realize it's a tall order. And I know last year, we talked about the streetlights. My recollection was you said, you said there's roughly a hundred million dollars in deferred maintenance. We should be putting fifteen million dollars a year, we're putting like two or three million dollars a year. And you said there's roughly, the other, the other side of the cycle would be, and each of those estimates, would you put the life cycle? As I recall, the street, you said it was roughly fifteen years, so whatever, curbs and gutters and sidewalks, I guess, storm drains, those kind of things that Public Works does. So at least we have an estimate in terms of the overall deferred maintenance, the life cycle, and I guess the conclusion would be to try to find if we had some program out in the future to, because not only in Fresno, but every place in the United States is an infrastructure crisis. And at least knowing, I, for example, we have the figures yesterday from parks, it was about eight and a half million dollars, so now we know at least ballpark what we're looking at money wise. So maybe somehow we could develop a plan over time, maybe fifteen, twenty years, because it'd take a long time, to eventually address all those, to me, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were supposed to put fifteen million dollars in every year and we put in, even with Member Brand's, they were still maybe four million dollars and with a fifteen year life cycle and a hundred million dollars already in deferred, it'll, in a matter of ten or fifteen years, the city's gonna look like Detroit. Am I right?
That's, that's correct and we've got, we have a lot of that data put together. It'll just be compiling it in, in the right format, so, but I'm, I'm comfortable that we can provide that data, put it together. And I think there's a good realization that that was occurring even, you know, twenty-five years ago through forming the LLMD and then the community facilities districts fifteen years ago and even when we first, as, as staff, when we first came back as a city and said to the, the building industry, you, we need to put asphalt maintenance into the CFDs on the tracks. Initially, there was a lot of pushback, well, hey, why don't you use your gas tax to take care of these streets? Well, as in the case of, say, the neighborhood north of Herndon there at First and Minaretts and Bond and such, we hadn't been able to do really any maintenance at all.
Yeah, the entire, there's, there's places over the city that have that. And being seven years here, it's like we're always putting fires out. We're never, and it, I'm sure it was probably that way twenty years ago, probably when Sal was here and, and other, his predecessors, that there's never been just, you know, and again, I, I don't think we're unique in that sense, but at least to get a handle on it and see if there is a way to do a long-term plan to eventually address all these things that will one day in the future, you know, strangle the city because you can only hire so many cops and firemen and all the other stuff and eventually, you know, you got a city where you need to, like I saw Mad Max this weekend, you know, we've got these super, you know, ATVs with twenty, you know, three foot tires on them, but anyway. Just to take a look at what we need to do to address down the road. And it's kind of a, a follow-up to the Reserve Management Act in two thousand eleven where I tried to identify all these things from technology reserves to, you know, general fund reserves and so on, that we'd have a long-term plan as a city to meet the challenges many years in front of us. On the, and I know we talked about it earlier, the streetlight program that was initiated about, what, three years now?
About three years ago.
And it was successful on the, the, the street, the, the ground pole lights, my, my notes was twenty-nine thousand and at that time, we did the program, there was twenty-two thousand five hundred that needed the cement and the concrete encasement, right? That's been successful. So the problem's been on these decorative streetlights, correct?
That's correct, decorative streetlights and then we've typically had, oh, a dozen to, two dozen problems a year with wire theft at traffic signals. And so we're, but we're working through that as well.
Okay.
To the credit of that former program, we have not had any problems with the pole boxes where we've concreted in the box.
Okay. And I thought about using a, a business called Paul and Steve's Slippery Pole Services to kind of take care of our problem. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, on the, on the decorative streetlights of the roughly twenty-four hundred and seventy-eight, how many have actually had the treatment where they've been secured for, for future theft?
Let me ask our street maintenance manager, if I can ask Brian Russell, about half? We're about, we're about halfway through on securing those.
Okay, so it's roughly about twelve hundred that need to be done, right?
Correct.
And I realize when we did the, the concrete encasement program, it was simpler because we had assembly line, right? We could just pick out an entire subdivision, house to house, block to block, and just roll back and forth at a much more efficient rate. My assumption, on the decorative streetlights, are they primarily focused, I know a lot are downtown where you could do the same basic production line or are they just too scattered?
It's somewhat scattered, but a, a bigger challenge is just how unique each one of those is. The work typically is involved actually, instead of just being able to cement in a pole box, it's actually welding a steel plate, a collar, to go around the outside of it. And then oftentimes, we've had to get into the inside of it and actually adjust fuse locations and wiring. Then, and sometimes even after that, we've had thieves come after it even though we've gotten that in place. And then they've broken into the fiberglass pole with a hammer, crowbar, we have that and then coupled with Prop forty-seven, which said that any, anything under, what, nine hundred dollars or so.
Misdominer.
Misdominer, write a, write a ticket. So it's been very, very frustrating both for the police department and then our traffic signal, streetlight maintenance folks.
But is there a way to secure the poles?
There is a way to secure the poles. In some cases with fiberglass poles, if they just keep getting targeted again and again, we, we realize the ultimate solution is a very expensive one, maybe actually replacing the entire pole.
That's what I'm thinking, if you actually replace that with a, with a ground pole box on a metal pole, would that be, if you, if you're going back three or four times in a couple of years, would that be cheaper in the long run, just to simply replace the pole?
And it, just to get a little bit into the weeds on that, it's a different pattern as far as the anchor bolts.
Okay.
And how it's done. And then we deal also with the aesthetic component and some of these areas will take, say, for example, the decorative streetlights along Van S. There's a lot of community pride in those poles and if we went in and said, well, we're gonna take those out and put in Cobra Heads, that I, I could definitely see some community reaction to say, oh no, we love, we love our unique streetlights, but yet they're problematic.
Okay, so in other words, they're just a variety, there's not just one, they're all twelve hundred of the same kind, they're all several different variations.
Several different variations.
Could you do me a favor?
But that's, that's very high on the priority list for us and, and we've been tackling that.
Can I make a request that, that you at least look at a plan? If, if you put a plan together and you, and say the plan was to replace these poles, what would cost roughly, because I realize you have welders and stuff, to do it, just to see, because it seemed like the work last time, once we adopted the program, sort of bit the bullet, dedicated a crew that did it, it was just pretty much done. And again, this may not be possible here because of all the, the variables you've, you've told me, but could you at least try to see if that's actually possible to put a plan together, map out where they're located, you know, set a logical, you know, some sort of production schedule, determine if you bought a thousand poles, what kind of price you'd get? Because as you upgrade these, we're putting LED lights, correct?
We, we've done a couple pilot project, actually three pilot projects now on LEDs and so we are implementing that wherever we can. We have not yet implemented it citywide, primarily simply due to the fixture cost. It's, it's a large upfront capital expense and we're still working through that with financial options on how, how we confront that capital cost upfront, which has a great re, return on investment.
Because what I'm thinking, again, I know it's gonna be expensive, but let's say you get it done and it can be done in, say, six months or twelve months. Once it's done, it's done.
It's done.
You're gonna free up the, the people that do that work in terms of cost efficiency and if, I know, we went last year, we talked about the entire city on the program to upgrade the LED, that I think, I think it's about, even in present value terms, of something like a million to two million dollars savings just by upgrade on the lighting cost itself, right? So I'm just asking you to think there may be a solution here that won't be as easy, but is probably a way to do it.
We, we can definitely put some options together.
Okay. And on the, the overall LED for the roughly twenty-something thousand other poles, how far along, was that, was that was like an eight-year plan that would, over eight years?
It, about that timeframe would be, would be doable. The biggest challenge again we've had is, is how to finance that. At the moment, the budget includes, we assume that we would do an on-bill finance program with PG&E for two hundred fifty thousand and basically it doesn't increase the cost of the city's energy bill. The biggest challenge is that we, we are restricted by law from using gas tax for that purpose. Gas tax is what we use to pay our energy bill.
Right.
But the gas tax regulations actually say you cannot use it for debt service. So we wind up in a situation where we know we could save the money, but it involves a funding source other than gas tax to make the investment and reap that return.
Let me make the same suggestion again, that could you come back with a plan, because we talked about this. I remember I ran a spreadsheet and I figured if you installed so many and you, each one achieved an incremental amount of savings on energy, as the spreadsheet started shifting, the more you put in, the savings itself, from the, from the savings from the energy would start to finance the actual construction. I, I think I ran it like it took ten years under that, without having to go in, deep into the general fund to find, but even if you had to go to a certain extent into the general fund, it's the same principle, over, once it's done, it's done. When you talk about payoff, it's less than five years, it's typically cost efficient. It's like we're doing the convention center, we, they, what was about, what, seven hundred thousand, Bruce, on the, the convert LED? Right, so, and that was actually financed by SMG, but now, within three years, that's gonna be paid off and that's, that's a savings of five hundred thousand a year. Same thing here, citywide, and I think is, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that our electric costs are gonna go down in three or four years. So whatever's one or two million dollars now, it's three or four million dollars five years from now, or ten years from now. So I'd at least like to see if you could put a plan together, potentially, even if it involves to a certain extent some general funds, I believe would be an investment that would pay off, you know, within, in the near term.
We can definitely put a plan and some options together for that.
Okay.
We've done the research and been working a lot with the vendors, so.
All right.
We can share that.
Okay. Again, thank you, Scott, thank you.
Councilmember Capri Aliyah.
Thank you. You know, Councilmember Brand, I think I have a, a solution on those unique lights. To me, those are special wants, not necessarily special needs. And for those on Van S and other streets that prefer that type of streetlight, perhaps a CFD or something that would assess them a fee to pay for that special want in their neighborhoods rather than impose on the rest of the budget with their special wants. Just an idea. Or, or what we do in D four, we're old fashioned, we do wooden poles. And so you kind of chuckle, but here's the deal with wooden poles, when you have wooden poles, the lights, the wires are strong from top to top, guess what? No copper wire theft. So it's, it, there's some meaningful use of a wooden pole as compared to some of the other poles that we're talking about. Just, just FYI. The second thing I would suggest is we talked about the roads with the city and the county, we have a meeting coming up, so perhaps that would be a good time to broach that subject and see what the county's position would be or how they feel about it or just, just to get some ideas and exchange our information at that time because we'll be together and it seems like a perfect opportune time and a perfect subject to discuss. For me, I want to thank you guys for all you've done for District Four. You've been really helpful to us, appreciate all you've done, the answers you've given me, the offline meetings as they call them. I really appreciate that and you guys keep me abreast of everything going on in D four and I really, really appreciate that. and I really, really appreciate that. I think the only thing that we're missing or would like to have now, I think you're working on it, is the concrete strike team, specific locations for sidewalk repair and curbs. So if we get that addressed and a specific location, that would be fabulous for my district. And again, trying to maintain my brevity award, and being respectful of my colleagues' time, I'm not going to go into street by street and intersection by intersection, like Bulldog Lane and Cedar with my left-turn signal and all that. We'll continue to do that offline, and we'll continue to make effective changes and improvements in District Four with your continued help. So I really appreciate that, and I want to thank you for all you do. Thanks.
Councilmember Soria.
I just wanted to ask, I know that we've talked about the number for deferred maintenance that we are faced with, and along with kind of some of the comments that were made by my colleague, my colleague in regards to them. Is there any way that we can get a breakdown? Do we have kind of a rough breakdown of those numbers in terms of sidewalks versus streets versus, just in the different categories that we could get? I'm not asking for it right now, but if that's something that we can get, just to see where the greatest need exists in terms of area?
I think if that's the council's direction, then that's something that staff does have available and can put together.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I think what we want to do is capture that as an information request item, and let me see if I can help frame it. I think what the intent is, what we like to see is what the Public Works Deferred Maintenance Schedule looks like, you know, the two-hundred fifty million dollars we talked about, so.
Very good.
Councilmember Brandow.
Hey, Scott. Bruce promised me earlier that you would go over the high-speed rail contracts with the City of Fresno. And so, what my question is, how many departments in the City of Fresno are in contract with high-speed rail? You guys do most of the work, you're out there doing the work-type stuff, so what departments are actually contracted with high-speed rail?
Right. Basically, the agreements are being handled by two departments. One is Public Works, and the second is Development Resource Management. On the Public Works side, I should note that we also have Public Utilities, engineering staff billing against that and providing some services related to more of the engineering side of the agreements. All told, right now, we have, on the Public Works, and let's call it DPU side, we have seven-hundred twenty thousand dollars outstanding with high-speed rail. We have invoiced them four-hundred thirty-five thousand of that total, and are now pending receipt of those. They are, now that we've worked through all the invoicing formats and changing personalities and high-speed rail, once, two times they send invoices, payments to WASCO, instead of us who work through all that, they're now functioning smoothly, very similar to the Caltrans reimbursements. So we have four-hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in invoices that are coming back to the city in payment, and our staff is invoicing for another hundred fifty-four thousand right now in progress, and come thirty days, we'll invoice for the balance of that amount. So that's pretty typical at this point now on grant invoicing. In addition to the seven-hundred twenty thousand on the Public Works, Public Utilities side, Development Resource Management has outstanding expenses of two-hundred forty-three thousand dollars, which High-Speed Rail will be reimbursing back to the city. And on the DARM side, that would consist of, there was a council-approved agreement for business relocation assistance, where people can come in to basically the one-stop shop and say, hey, I'm being impacted by high-speed rail, I need a zoning change, I need my site plan, will you, the city, will you approve moving the building and the parking lot around? And then also, there's the station area planning grant. So those are both within DARM.
Okay, so roughly, seven-hundred twenty thousand is owed to Public Works slash Public Utilities, and two-hundred forty-three thousand owed to DARM from High-Speed Rail Authority?
That's correct. So we're at about, the grand total's nine-hundred sixty-three thousand dollars.
And then, is this, are these monies then, are they already inside of your budget for this year?
Yes, yes, they are.
The recapture of those monies?
They are.
Okay. All right. And let me ask this then. When we do this contracted work for High-Speed Rail Authority, we give them engineers and other, other help, assistance, services to get their stuff done, and then they reimburse us, does that hinder us from doing our normal workload at all?
The city has added staff positions to be able to do that. So, speaking at least for Public Works, I would say, no, that's not impacting our ability to do other items, because the additional staff are being paid for through this effort.
Okay. Is that delineated in the line item budget, those additional staff positions?
It is somewhat delineated. The payments, staff that are funded with payments from High-Speed Rail, they are categorized the same as the capital staff. In other words, if we have someone who is managing capital improvement projects or engineers designing projects, they're counted as capital staff, and then these high-speed rail-funded positions are counted the same way.
So in your opinion, we're not falling behind in any of our other workload due to working for High-Speed Rail Authority?
Not within Public Works.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
I just want to give an update. That sidewalk request is on my desk. So there you guys go again, standing ahead of the curve. I really appreciate your help in getting the information for me. So let's continue talking after these meetings. Thank you.
All right. Looks like that's all the questions I have from councilmembers, so I'll ask a few questions. First of all, I'm going to start off with Bruce. You know, there's been a lot of discussion today about deferred maintenance, and, you know, it's funny, you and I have been talking about that for, you know, the better part of four years. And I appreciate Councilmember Soria's request to really capture, you know, the quarter-billion dollars of deferred maintenance we have currently, which by next year could be, you know, three hundred, you know, close to three hundred million. Have we done that exercise citywide to see what really our deferred maintenance cost is when it comes to facilities, parks, Public Works, Public Utilities? I'm just wondering, is that?
On the facility side, I'll just, maybe if I can speak to that, we've wrapped up, near wrapping up an MSC, you know, the Corp Yard Assessment. That's identified a sizable number of deferred maintenance needs, and we'll be able to bring that back in the months to come. And then the budget this year includes, on the facility side, a facility condition assessment of Police Department Headquarters and the City Hall Annex there, along with Fresno City Hall itself. And then there's a three-year plan to address then the fire stations and the park, park community centers and those facilities.
So.
So until about two years ago, this organization never talked about life cycle costs. We've had that conversation. You said that my best contribution is the sinking fund.
Sinking fund, that's right. It comes from you.
Yeah, so, and so, we are beginning to put a value to that. Earlier today, we're talking about our parking facilities. We just awarded a contract to have a consultant come in and tell us what the annual depreciation or life cycle costs are for our parking garages. So as an organization, can I tell you today what the ongoing cost is of owning assets is? You know, Scott told you that just the work deferred maintenance, that's deferred maintenance, that's not just taking.
I know.
Is a quarter of a billion dollars.
Because we know the ongoing maintenance just for the roads is somewhere between nineteen and twenty million dollars a year.
So, you start adding up stadiums and convention centers and parks, throw in a museum just for kicks and giggles, the number will be overwhelming. I will, you know, I will, in related to the deferred maintenance of streets, and I made kind of, I was a keynote speaker before a number of engineers about three weeks ago, and I guess I was the life of the party, because I pointed out to the engineers that the problem with the infrastructure is, and the reason it doesn't get the attention that it does, is that when it comes to, and ironically, we're about to do a ribbon-cutting on an extension of the one-eighty freeway. When it comes to opening up a new freeway, or a new park, or whatever it's going to be, a new fire station, everyone shows up to cut the ribbon, and everyone is happy about the fact that we're building a new freeway. But at the time that we're cutting the ribbon on a new freeway, we have landscaping on a piece of that same freeway that we opened five years ago that is dying, because there's no money set aside to deal with the deferred maintenance or the ongoing maintenance. I am hopeful, and I shared this with the audience, that when Measure C is renewed, and Steve's still on the board, that there is an agreement that before we start adding any more freeway miles, or any more miles of roads, that we need to focus on maintaining what we already have. Because we are today adding more and more miles of roadway, freeway miles, and with no plan as to how we're going to maintain the asphalt, let alone the landscaping, which we spend thousands of hundreds of thousands of dollars on landscaping as a mitigation, only to have it die within a year after it goes out of warranty, because Caltrans.
So Bruce, let me say.
Sorry.
No, no, no. Listen, you're in your wheelhouse, and I get it. So here's my point, is, we've been talking about this, you know, really with, through you, said, you know, really educating, in my opinion, council on, when we make decisions on new assets, we've got to talk about life cycle costs. When we talk about where we put, you know, what we're going to do, we've got to talk about deferred maintenance. So my question is, and, you know, a couple of years ago, I started really digging into Public Works. You remember, Scott, it was back when Patrick was there, honestly. And it's shocking that it takes nineteen million, twenty dollars a year of maintenance. And at the time, you know, back a few years ago, we were only putting in about nine hundred thousand a year, which is a shocking, you know, tenfold what we need, below what we need. And I think, you know, my colleague here, who just stepped out, Councilmember Soria, you know, I think she woke up, was like, oh, wow, we have a quarter of a billion dollars in deferred maintenance when you add this up. But that's just for our streets and roads.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you said the right thing. The number is shocking, when we start thinking about the entire city and what our obligations are, but I think we need to be shocked. I think that we need to understand what it takes to properly manage the city, and we don't have that data in front of us.
Yep.
We talk about it, we guesstimate at it, but we really don't know what it is. We know it's shocking. Well, we need to start thinking about how shocking it is, and then we need to start, at least some kind of way, I hope, before I leave this place, start, you know, talking about putting plans in place to manage it, long-term, well after we're all gone, all of us in this room. Because these are, we have one thing where we have deferred maintenance, but we also have ongoing maintenance, so we don't ever have to have deferred maintenance, right? I mean, so it's a conversation that I really think, and it's going to be an information request from me, it's not just from Scott, I mean, but it's really from you, Bruce, to maybe the next, you know, three months or so, three, four months, we come back. I mean, it's not for this right now, but three, four months, let's take an inventory of really what we're talking about, when we talk about deferred maintenance and ongoing maintenance of the city, and our associated facilities, streets, roads, gutters, parks, all of those assets that we own, that we're charged with maintaining. I mean, it's a fantastic discussion. And, you know, Councilmember Brand was kind of going down a track, offering some ideas, and I think he's on the right track. I just think that we need to have a fuller discussion about it, and start throwing a whole bunch of stuff at this problem of how we can become, you know, more sustainable, how we can make better decisions, and really make sure that we're addressing the issue. So I wanted to start my question there, Bruce, with you, because I know, I honestly believe you get that, and, you know, not to say that we're going to solve the problem in a year, but we certainly need to be talking about it. And, you know, this policy body needs to be, you know, making sure that we're leaving legacies where our successors understand that there's an obligation to set money aside for maintenance, too, you know? So anyhow, thanks for that.
And if I could, real quick.
Yep, sure.
If you, the basis, one of the underlying principles of the general plan that we just adopted was recognizing that for decades, that there was a significant amount of infrastructure built by development. Now, once that development was done, that future liability got shifted from the developer's balance sheet to our balance sheet. And there was nothing ever set aside to deal with that future liability, which is why we're now repaving streets north of Herndon. When the mayor talks about the tale of two cities going further and further and further north, it is because the infrastructure now, even in Leeds, even in north of Herndon, the only asphalt it ever was ever touched was when it was originally put in forty-five years ago, and the life cycle on asphalt's, what, thirty on a good day, if you do the periodic maintenance. So I think if we took the total liability, future liability of those assets, which are streetlights, decorative, or wood poles, sidewalks, et cetera, the number would be numbing.
Well, and sometimes that's what it needs to be, so we can wake up and we understand how to make decisions and prioritize what we do over the long haul. And again, not to say that we knock it all out in one year, but certainly, you know, every year, we need to be making some conscious efforts to get this organization back on track for that, because here's what we do know about deferred maintenance. The bill comes due at some point. This quarter of a billion dollars, it's not like we're not going to be able to do it. We're going to have to, we are going to have to do this maintenance at some point, otherwise we're going to have a city that looks like a third-world country. So the bill's going to come due. We might as well start getting our, wrapping our hands around it, you know, our heads around it, so, you know, we can start making incremental investments in these types of, in our assets. So that's my only point, is, it's not like, you know, we can't pretend like, you know, we can't do the whole ostrich thing and put your head in the sand. They're coming. You know, they're coming. So anyhow, enough of my commentary about that. I think we're on the same page, and I think Councilmember Brand and Councilmember Soria really teed up that conversation really well with, you know, that line of questioning. And I know Lee was really moving down a path to try to search for solutions, you know, at least start the conversation, like, how do we begin to deal with it? So Scott, you know, a couple of questions specific to Public Works is, you know, we talked about, you know, a few years ago, I remember we set aside some money to deal with our, the copper wire situation that was really decimating neighborhoods, decimating business neighborhoods, decimating residential neighborhoods. I mean, it was, it was a terrible, terrible time, and you're right, I remember, you know, not in the too-distant past, where, you know, the wait time was eight, nine, ten, you know, twelve months, you know, to get, you know, to get streetlights turned on. So I know we made the investment, we did some target hardening, specifically with our, the ability to snatch out the copper wire. How has that worked? I am curious about the assessment of, you know, now that we've gone through and hardened all the targets for potential copper wire theft, how is that working, and have we seen that standing up to the investment?
Indeed, we have. And, you know, for me, I'm very appreciative to this council and the mayor's commitment to fund that target hardening for the streetlights, because we have not had any problems.
Okay.
With that. For your, in your regular steel pole, Cobra Head type that have the pole boxes and all the underground wires, that's been extremely effective.
Okay, that's good to hear, because my follow-up question was, have the copper wire thieves figured out some kind of way to defeat that? And if you're saying, to this point, our method is holding up, you know, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that. So just some specific questions about my district. What are the status of the streetlights in front of Jane Adams? Are they on? Now that we're talking about streetlights, Jane Adams?
The traffic signals.
Yep.
Specifically. I have to ask, did we get those, do we have those heated up?
I'm not sure it's right there.
It's, the last time I was by, they were not heated up yet, but we are right there within just days, you know, a week should be of those getting turned on. And again, that's the capital-funded, grant-funded project to put signals in at McKinley and Marx and McKinley and Hughes, right? McKinley and Marx and McKinley and Hughes, right in front of the school for a safe crossing with the kids.
Right, that's exactly it. So, so if I ask you this question next week, the lights are going to be on?
And Mr. Crowder, just let me know, the heat up request, uh, went to PG&E today. Um, and that, that request doesn't go to them until everything's all electrically to code and safe and secure. So, the request now with PG&E, uh, they, they've been a good partner and hopefully it'll be timely on, on the heat up.
Okay, okay. So, I can ask you this question next week and, and I can have some lights on for the kids over there?
Hopefully, we have a good news report.
All right, very good, very good. And the reason, and obviously, you know, the, the reason why that's important is because of the school over there, making sure the students can cross safely back and forth in that intersection right there, it's kind of a, and I want to make sure that when they come back to school, we certainly have sorted this out, uh, whatever, uh, potential issues that may have resulted with the new installation, we have it, we have it worked out. So, I'm glad to hear that, I'll be following up next week on that for sure. Um, and where are we at on the, uh, repaving of McKinley? So, I know we talked about that, uh, was proposed for this year, are we on, going to be on time with that?
We should be on track for repaving McKinley in that same stretch, uh, in this coming fiscal year.
Okay, okay. Um, and one of the things, uh, that, that often comes up, and I know we, we haven't talked about it a lot today, uh, is tree trimming. Um, and, you know, so a lot of us, uh, on, on here have older neighborhoods like, like me, and, and I know that some of these, some of these, uh, trees are on like, you know, maybe up to twenty-year cycles, right? Sixteen, twenty-year cycles?
Or, or less than that.
Okay.
That was one of the, uh, early, early cuts in about fiscal year two thousand eight, I want to say. Uh, the city used to run a one to two million dollar a year, uh, tree trimming program, and, uh, that, that quickly, that quickly went away. Uh, we still do some tree trimming, uh, especially with solid waste, uh, where, in, in some neighborhoods, as you're aware, Council President Baines, uh, where, where the residents have said, hey, we're having issues where the, the truck drivers, the, the solid waste truck drivers can't even really get into the neighborhood or service the cans.
Sure.
So, there's some funding to do that, and we've, we've done a little bit, um, but a lot more in the emergency situations. Uh, we, this budget next year does not include money for, uh, what we call geo-based tree trimming, where we go in and, um, and, uh, Councilmember Quinteros, uh, nodding his head remembering years ago when we used to do that, and you'd have a whole neighborhood who was, uh, on the route, uh, to be done. So, that's, that's still one of those unfunded needs, uh, that we would hope in a future budget year to be able to restore.
So, 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 uh, so what, what's the, what's the tree trimming cycle now?
I would leave this.
I can't remember if it's sixteen or twenty, I, I, I have.
Scott Crowder, Assistant Director of Public Works. We actually funded about five hundred thousand dollars of what, uh, proactive tree trimming. It couldn't take over a quarter mile, uh, but the way we used to compute the cycle was we'd take the whole tree inventory and figure out how many trees we're going to do in a year and do that, and I haven't even done that calculation because it's so small. Uh, I think the last one I reported was about twenty-five years, so your, your recollection's correct. Um, we, as a matter of fact, I think, uh, West Coast Arbors was across the street yesterday doing proactive tree trimming. It's very selective, uh, we come through the downtown because of street lighting issues, these post-stops.
Sure.
Go right up into these trees, and they end up in conflict with each other. So, um, I guess I'm running up here to tell you, I haven't done the calculation, but it's probably north of thirty years, to be honest with you, and, and I don't think it's accurate, too. Uh, we're still living a little bit off of, you know, when we did spend two million dollars a year in the early two thousands, and a lot of the trees have been done within that thirty-year period. So, it's kind of a, just taking the number and dividing by its kind of a misnomer. Uh, but your deferred maintenance is growing because these trees that should be trimmed on a seven or ten-year cycle, we haven't been trimming them in that thing.
That's exactly it.
It's, it's going to get added. This quarter million, this quarter billion dollars to that, I have to remind everybody, it's a number I gave Scott's analysis, I run every two or three years, that's on pavement. That's not on sidewalk, it's not on trees, it's not on streetlights. Um, and so, as requests get made, I'm starting to think about how am I going to analyze that and do that, and I've got ways to do it. But, uh, anyway, I, I don't have a real good number with you, but that's, that's kind of the report I have on street trees.
Okay, no, and, and listen, Scott, that, that, thank you for the honest answer, uh, and, and that's okay, right? I mean, so the truth of the matter is, you know, whatever the answer is, I'm okay with that, we just need to start getting our hands around what it is. So, what I'd like to do is, why don't you go ahead and do the analysis of where we are with our tree trimming and the deferred maintenance? What, what schedules are, should we be up? And give us some recommendations. And I'm not exactly positive that I'm going to make a budget request just yet before our budget hearings are over, but, um, you know, when you have older neighborhoods, like, almost all of us up here represent older neighborhoods in one form or fashion, right? Maybe some more than others, but all, all of us have older neighborhoods. And what happens is, some of those, uh, trees begin to hang over signs, hang over lights, and, you know, a, a variety of issues begin to happen when we're not trimming our trees, and, you know, you know, potentially because of public safety issues, depending on what, what type of issue we have. So, you know, I just, uh, I don't want to, I don't want us to totally, uh, get too far away from that and, and lose a handle of that on some of those. So, if we could have an analysis done on, on that for me, kind, this is more of an information request, uh, to have that done, and we could have brought that, brought that back, brought that back before the budget hearings are over, um, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, so, talk to me a little bit about the, uh, I was looking in, in the R and R, in your, um, narrative about the concrete strike team. Uh, what is the concrete strike team? And, and somebody may have asked it, but I could have missed it. And how long does it take for them to react? How does that work?
Okay, uh, concrete strike team, again, in, uh, city of Fresno, the way our municipal code is set up, is that if, uh, a, either curb and gutter or a sidewalk is damaged by a city street tree, meaning in the park strip, then our code says that's the city's responsibility to repair, uh, the concrete. So, we currently have, um, one and a half crews dedicated to that effort, and it's one and a half because one is full-time on these concrete repairs. We have a second crew that splits its time between, um, basically capital-funded improvements or, and half the time on the strike team work. And that's just a limitation of the gas tax revenue that we have. Um, the capital work could be things like, um, it could be work for Fresno Area Express on a project, it could be something in the facilities area, pretty wide variety, and we typically have enough work for the other halftime.
Okay.
So, that said, so one and a half, one and a half crews, and, uh, what they are doing is, uh, we have a list of reported needs, either that come through, uh, council district offices, or reported through one call center, by letter, from property owners and such. Uh, what we do is initially, when, uh, it's reported, uh, the, uh, street maintenance employee goes out to look at it, and will typically, the first step will be to put a little bit of orange paint, uh, to highlight it, and then we'll apply an asphalt, a temporary patch on there, just because we want to mitigate any type of hazardous condition.
Hmm.
We deal with that immediately. And then after that, there, those.
And how fast are they typically out there after the, what, the report?
Uh, on the asphalt patch, forty-eight hours.
Okay, so it's a forty-eight hour, okay, okay.
So, that part.
I'm just trying to figure out why we call it a strike team, so that, that's a forty-eight hours, okay.
So, that's, that's kind of the, the first, first responder, uh, to those type of concrete issues. And then the crew will follow, and depending on the severity of the, of the issue, you know, how big is that concrete raised from the tree? Uh, how many others are in the neighborhood that they can go and do? Then we follow up with that. Uh, that said, uh, that one and a half, the one and a half crews that work at that, um, is substantially lower than, uh, several years ago, we had four to five crews working that area. And that, that's about what it takes to keep up with the, with the tree damage concrete. Again, and I, I'd point out, uh, last observation is just that our code is different than Clovis, it's different than the state law, which says that the concrete repairs, um, are the responsibility of the property owner. For Fresno, the council in years past has said, that's something we want to take on, um, with public funds, and so with, that's, that's the program that we run.
Okay, okay, good, thank, thanks, I just was, uh, was curi- curious about that. Um, so, kind of shifting gears a little bit to our, um, you know, our, uh, council, uh, specific budgets that, that, uh, Councilmember Brandow was wanting to in- increase to half a million dollars. Last year, we had four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and I know for sure that I carried some, some money over, um, from, because we didn't spend, spend everything, we had issues as, as, as has been described, uh, with, with NEPA, uh, with, you know, uh, gas tax funding and, and, and the like. However, uh, you know, we, we did have an allocation for, for the money. So, I want to make sure that, uh, like, I know I have a neighborhood project coming up, the King Neighborhood, uh, i- is coming up. I just want to make sure, we're going to give you a few more neighborhoods, obviously, this year. I want to make sure this time that we're working much more closely together all year, uh, to get the NEPAs lined up, to get those things in line so that we can actually execute the projects, um, because the, the idea is to be able to get this money out, uh, to be able to do this. You know, we have a big, a big thing with Kearney, already talked with Bruce, I'm feel, feel confident that we're going to get there, but just want to make sure, when, when I obviously said to you, I've mentioned it to Bruce, that we're really working, uh, closely together to, to line these up and, and work out all the Kings ahead of time.
That, that sounds great. And again, uh, the neighborhood just northeast of, uh, Gaston Middle School, uh, that's actually, we've opened bids, got, uh, got good bids on that one, and that's set up for the eighteenth for council action.
Okay, well, I'm certainly looking, looking forward to that. A- a- as you know, I know it's, it's coming up, coming up next week, so, um, but just overall, I want to make sure that we, we're programming a little closer together this year on, on tho- on those issues. And, and I think lastly, um, you know, this is, uh, my, my good friend Steve Brandow's in here, but, um, I want to talk a little bit about, uh, since he brought up high-speed rail, uh, I'd like, like an update on the Veteran, the Veterans Boulevard project, uh, that's a, a pretty substantial project that, uh, I know the rail, that high-speed rail is paying, paying for. Where are we at with that?
Let's see, with, uh, with Veterans Boulevard, a couple of different pieces. Um, first, there's the larger project that's Shaw to Herndon. Uh, we will be, um, finished with the design, and we expect to have Caltrans approval on the plans for the whole interchange, uh, by the end of two thousand and sixteen. Also, uh, FCTA has approved all the money to acquire the right-of-way. We've purchased about half of it, we focused on East to ninety-nine, and within the next year, we'll have the other half, uh, going west to ninety-nine. So, that's what's often called a shovel-ready project, again, between the COG and FCTA, looking at, uh, state highway dollars, the Measure C, the development fees. It's not looking like that'd go to, the big project would go to construction until about twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, but the immediate item is, uh, with high-speed rail funding, uh, they have agreed to, uh, pay for the construction of Veterans over, uh, Union Pacific High-Speed Rail, and, uh, basically between Golden State Boulevard and Bullard in, uh, north, northwest Fresno. Uh, that one will be in construction in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, council just recently approved an agreement with PG&E. We actually have to have them modify their, their transmission towers to make enough room. So, that, and that project is the single largest project within the proposed Public Works budget. It's actually larger than.
Well, you know, I was going to ask that question. Was there any project larger? So, you, you, that was my follow-up to that, so.
That's number one.
All right.
Size-wise, dollar-wise, Veterans is the largest in the capital budget, and, uh, Fulton Mall is second in total dollars.
And, and as I say this tongue-in-cheek, I'm sure my good friend Councilmember Brandow's very appreciative of the rail authority for, for that project, since it's the single, single largest one that we have. So, uh, anyhow, uh, thanks, uh, thanks, uh, Scott, those are really all my, all my questions, uh, that, that I have today. But I do have some public comment, so I wanted to make sure that I read, I have a card that came up here, I have Ashley Warner, she's been patiently waiting for, for us. Thank you so much, Ashley. Come on down.
Hi, Ashley Warner with Leadership Council for Justice and Inconvenience. I was hoping I was going to get to comment before this discussion, but thankfully, it was a little bit interesting. Um, so, I wanted to bring to your attention some provisions of a few general plan policies from our twenty thirty-five general plan relating to capital improvements, um, and ask how they're being implemented in this budget, because, um, it's not clear to me, so, you know, maybe staff can discuss it. Um, uh, so first, uh, RC one B Capital Improvement Program. So, there's a commentary, and that, that, uh, policy, as you know, requires the city to create a capital improvement program, um, and update it once a year, create a new program every five years. Um, and there's a commentary that says it will include an analysis of how improvements implement the general plan, and how they reflect the city's commitment to environmental justice and fair share issues relative to individual neighborhood needs. So, um, there is a capital improvement plan in this budget, but I don't see that analysis or discussion, um, I think it's important to have in there, so, um, we can see that we're actually effectively implementing the general plan's commitment to older neighborhoods. Um, you know, how are we allocating these scarce resources to really adjust, address environmental justice needs, um, and our distressed neighborhoods? Um, and then policy NS three B is curb and gutter installation, and that policy specifically directs the city to direct attention for installing curbing, gutters, and other drainage facilities with priority to existing neighborhoods with the greatest efficiencies. Um, so, to me, it seems like that should be part of the capital improvement program, and there should be, you know, some attention so that the reader can understand how that priority is actually being implemented. Um, and then finally, there is another policy HC seven B Performance-Based Capital Improvements. Um, I don't think that the city's actually developed that policy yet, how it's going to implement it, but what it says is that the city should establish a performance-based priority system for capital improvements based on health and recreation goals ranking system. So, if we, if we don't get it to it in this budget process, um, we'd like to see that we're moving forward to get to it, so it can be in our next budget process, so we know that we're using resources, um.
Thank you, Ashley.
You know, in accordance to that policy.
Thank you.
Could I make one more quick statement?
You, it's two, it's two minutes, is it really, really quick?
It's really quick, it's just on the subject of ATP funds. Like, I can do it in thirty seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Um, you know, just, I appreciate Councilmember Soria's raising the question of our failure to apply for those funds, and I also appreciate Scott Mosier's statement that, you know, the city is committed to apply for those funds. But I just want to make sure all of you know, and it's, it's on your radar, that there's three hundred and sixty million dollars available that we're not applying for this year, and we're working with other jurisdictions that are applying for over ten million dollars, like Tulare County, and, you know, those funds could be going to address all these needs we're talking about. So, we're here to work with you, and we have been in contact with the city about these funds for the last five months, and we really hope that we apply for this regional cycle in, um, this summer and then going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? All right, we will now, uh, move on to our next, uh, department, the, the final one today, which is our, uh, General Services Department. So, Jane, you're up.
Okay, uh, General City Purpose Department, uh, narrative starts on B ninety-one. This is a general fund department, however, the Retirement Services, uh, is also a part of this, and it is an Internal Service Fund. This department basically holds, um, it's a unique department in that it holds everything that is of a citywide nature, uh, and is not department-specific. For an example, the, um, intra, intergovernmental, uh, Relations Section holds all of the general fund revenues, such as sales tax, property tax, business license, room tax, all of the general taxes, um, that come into the city that are not, uh, department-specific, come into this particular department. And this is strictly for, uh, accounting purposes. Um, it has nothing to do with, with who's responsible for them, uh, but, but merely to house them all in one, uh, physical location. Also, the POB or the Pension Obligation Bonds is also within this department, um, all of the accounting for the revenues and the expenditures for that is, is within this department. The, um, the general fund residual transfer is also within this department. All of the general, uh, transfers and, and debt service payments that are of a citywide nature are contained within this department. Also contained within this department for next year are funds for the Youth Council that was recently passed by, uh, by the City Council. That will also be, uh, the funding for that will, is also housed in here, there's a hundred thousand dollars in here for that. Um, there's also operating capital, as has been mentioned before, uh, specifically, I believe, for the Fire Department. There's also operating capital for the other departments, um, in this particular org, um, both for police and fire and for various other departments. As far as the staffing goes, there is an RDA deletion per agreement with the RDA. As the city positions became vacant, they were deleted. There is one position remaining, and it has now become vacant with the retirement of the administrator. And so that position is being deleted. Also, I did want to point out that Stan McDivitt did want to be here, but I believe he is in a retirement meeting at the time, and so he can't make it. But he did want to indicate that he is asking to add one retirement counselor starting October the 1st to take over some essential job duties such as confidential counseling and explanation of benefits to members and their beneficiaries. And so he is asking for one additional position. This is not a general fund position. This is an Internal Service position that will be paid for by the retirement funds. So it is not a general fund position. And that concludes my presentation, and I guess I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation, very concise. Councilmember Soria.
I just have a couple questions. One, I do, I did see that you guys, that there is an expenditure for the Youth Council, and so I'm excited to see that. I know that our council's working through an ordinance to establish that body. Do we have the exact amount that was budgeted for that?
Yes, that amount is $100,000.
So I also see that in this area, that's where we see the revenues from the RDA, debt repayment. That's where it's being reported, right?
Yes.
And so just to clarify, the RDA debt repayment listed on, I believe, is B-92, was money found to be owed to the City of Fresno through the agency's Recognized Obligation Repayment Schedule? Is that correct? Okay, so the state has confirmed we will receive about $3.53 and $3.4 million for the next three years respectively.
That is what has been already approved by the state. There is a significant amount over and above that that the state, at least currently to my knowledge, is still waffling over. They initially denied it, and we have been trying to make efforts to get more of that approved for repayment.
So we may be seen additional, but we won't know?
Yeah, we may, but I don't know when that's going to be.
But let me clarify, it is not going to change the amount that we receive in a year.
It's just going to change the number of years we get it.
Right.
Okay.
The amount will not change, it's just the number of years.
After these 30 years that we know.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So have we already received the first payment this year?
Yes, we did. We received the very first payment in January.
So just a question in terms of the authority over those funds. Does the successor agency have any say as to what the city does with these funds approved to repay?
No.
Not to my knowledge. No.
So just to understand the budget, in terms of the budget preparation, what was the finances rationale for placing all these funds into the reserve? Was this a council action to place into the reserve?
Let me, it has been, at least for the last year or two, the mayor's proposed budget, supported by the majority of the council, that any additional resources or dollars that were derived from the loan repayment would be the basis in which we would build our reserves, and any increases in other revenue sources would be used to help offset or restore services or begin the restoration of services. So it's been in at least one or two, not, at least last year, if not the year, but two budget cycles. So this is the third year in which we are allocating these dollars to build the future reserve.
So in those, I guess in the last two years, the majority of the council has agreed that that's where?
Yes, and in subsequent discussions about building reserves, the council has always been in the affirmative that that's how these dollars will be allocated.
But the council has yet to say that that's the direction and where we want to go this year?
I'm sorry, I had two going.
Oh, I said, but the council has yet to confirm that that's the direction that we want to go this year?
That's right, that's exactly right. The council could make a decision.
So the RDA funds could potentially just go to general funds or other funds?
Let's be clear, they're not RDA funds, there is no RDA. These are not RDA funds. These are general fund revenues.
But they're coming because of the dissolution of RDA?
These are coming because of loans made by this general fund to the RDA years ago in which the RDA, or what is left of the RDA, there was an argument was made, and Doug, maybe you want to hear, that these were liabilities owed by the RDA, and therefore they were justified in that the property tax revenue needs to come back as a loan payment in addition to other obligations.
But they're pretty flexible in terms of?
Right, well, to clarify, there are two forms of RDA money, former RDA money that are coming in. One is the city's relative tax share of what would have been RDA increment before. All of the taxing entities get their proportionate share of that.
Let me be clear, that is just property tax at this point.
Right.
For the county, for the school districts.
That is just straight-up property tax, like any other property tax. They did away with increment, it's now property tax, and that's general fund money. The second is the debt repayment. And that is general fund money in the sense that it's just a debt owed the city.
Are those, is the debt the two or the three? Because we have the $2 million and then the $3 million.
The debt's the approximate $3.5 million a year. And 20% of that must be used for affordable housing.
So I know, I know I'm not the expert on the RDA, but I'm just trying to figure out in terms of the limitations. And I understand that, you know, I wasn't here when the previous councils have agreed to placing strictly these RDA repayments into the reserve. I don't think that we're limited from other dollars that could be put in the reserve to that amount. I'm just trying to see if there's flexibility. I did make a motion yesterday that related to some of these amounts, because I do, again, feel very strongly, these funds are coming out of some of the tax property, if I understand correctly, taxes from properties that were previously in those redevelopment areas, which are distressed areas in our community, which the intent of redevelopment is, as I understand, was to help really revitalize and clean up those neighborhoods.
Yeah, I understand, but I understand that it was a general fund, which was the collective property tax from all the districts that made the upfront investment, which is now being paid back to the general fund, which represents the entire community, not just those districts that benefit from that investment.
Okay, just wanted to understand that information. And let me see if I have any other questions. I think those are all the questions that I had for comments.
Councilmember Brandau.
I was just going to ask a couple of questions, kind of out of the line item budget book. So, and some of these things, really their titles just confuse me, so I kind of want some clarification on them.
Sure.
On page 67, number 53302, Professional Services Consulting. Couple of years ago, we were at $1.25 million, and now we're at $1.25 million. What is that?
There are several items that are contained within that one particular account. There is the contract that we have with Muni Services. That is our sales tax consultant. That's what we pay the sales tax consultant for their services, and so that money is in there. We also have money in there for a federal lobbyist, that's where that money is. We also have money in there for the deferred comp contract that we have with the retirement system. They handle our deferred comp that the employees contribute into. And so they handle the administration of that, and we pay them on a yearly basis for that. We also have monies in there for the SB 90 consultant, who goes to Sacramento and advocates for us to be able to get our mandated reimbursements, which has been something of a task since the state's not paid us for five years for that. And so there are efforts being made to try to get some of that money back. So there are also, there are also costs associated with the wind down of the RDA and the final dispensation of the employees from that organization. And so that kind of varies, as you can see, it goes from $246 up to almost $1 million. And so it kind of varies there also on there. There's also election costs, and that can vary from one year to the next. I cut it back this year because obviously we don't have any elections. But next year, we might very well have to have more money in there because we do have election costs. And so it just depends on when the county actually bills us for the election costs and other costs of that nature. So that's more or less what's in there.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Similar question on the following page, 58002, Outside Agency Support.
Yes.
That one's really seen a dramatic increase.
Yes, it is. That's the one point.
So let me take this one. I'm not sure what year we entered into the new lease, a new agreement with the zoo. But part of that lease is a shared expense requirement. The zoo has been very patient with us as we tried to come out of, or coming off the edge of bankruptcy. But under that lease agreement, there were a number of items identified as shared expenses. Everything from parking facilities and some infrastructure related to stormwater. These are assets or facilities that we will share as a result of the zoo expansion. So this $1.5 million is an obligation that we have under the terms of that lease that was entered into probably seven, eight, maybe nine years ago. So this is the first time we funded it, but it will go towards costs associated with the zoo project that we agreed to at the time the lease was executed, negotiated and executed by the council at that time.
Can we unfund it one more year until we get restored a little bit more?
Restore what?
Until, you know, until more taxes come in. Can we, what if we unfunded that? What if we decided to pay them back next year? Could we push our relationship with the zoo a little bit more?
Well, they are in, wanting to move forward with a project, and understand there's been a lot of concern with the fact that we haven't obligated anything since the lease was executed. Given our financial situation at the time, the zoo authority has been front-loading some of these expenses. And so we believe that this $1.5 million should cover our obligation, and that next year we won't have another cost, or additional obligation. But that's still subject to negotiations. But they need to move forward with, for example, with a new parking facility, and this will help support the construction of that facility.
Okay, and is that, is that facility ready to be constructed?
Yes.
Like, ready as in?
They want to, they want to start pushing dirt so that the new parking facility is ready by the time the zoo expansion opens in about four months, five months.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, Bruce, I might come back to that one or chit-chat with you a little bit about that, that one a little bit more. How about item Jane, 59120? I think it's Facility Repair and Replace?
Yes, that is actually one of the accounts that we use for those infrastructure improvements that are departmental in nature but are being placed here in order to ensure that they're actually spent on the item they're supposed to be spent on. That includes money for a PD boiler replacement, the design of the PD air handlers, which is actually a, I believe it's at least over a million-dollar project. This has $250,000 in for the design, because those air handlers are basically at the end of their life and they're failing. And so we're having, that's some of the deferred maintenance that we're having to address, and also the facility assessment of City Hall, PD, HQ, and the annex. So all of the costs for those projects are what make up that $443,000.
Okay, cool, thank you. Now, item 59309, Facilities Management.
Okay.
That's, went from zero just a couple of years ago, now we're at?
Right. That houses all of the costs for general maintenance of facilities that the city is responsible for, but really can't be assigned to one particular department primarily for, well, and I get this list from the Facilities Division, for the Fresno Arts Council, for the Turtle Cafe, the Fresno Art Museum, and the Santa Fe Depot. All of those costs are for maintenance costs for those, for those particular entities that we are responsible for. But we can't really say, well, okay, the entire city's going to pay for them. You know, we can't assign the cost to an enterprise department or anything like that. That's not really appropriate, and it's not really right that that entity pay for it. So that's why it's contained here, so that the general fund can pay for it. Because that is an obligation of the city, it has to get paid.
So the Turtle Cafe downstairs and Santa Fe?
Yes.
Okay.
We have certain responsibilities to maintain, I believe, the exterior of the Santa Fe Depot?
Yes, now the good news, the good news is, is that we actually will have a paying tenant in about four months with Greyhound's relocation to that site. The current tenant, Amtrak, does not pay anything to be in that building other than the utility costs of, I didn't negotiate the deal, so nevertheless, that's the deal. So.
So we're going to have a paying tenant?
Greyhound will be paying rent.
Is this, does this figure show that adjustment already, or do we just wait until that happens?
No, because we can show you the offset.
Right, there will be some revenue offset, but I believe we still retain some responsibility for the external maintenance of the facility.
My point is, there'll be, the existing expense won't change. The good news is that we'll actually have a little revenue to offset that. But at the time that we developed the budget, and in fact, until about two weeks ago, when council approved the terms of the lease, we didn't have, for sure, a tenant. But the good news is we will have, for once, a paying tenant in that building.
Hey, that is fantastic news. Can we make that adjustment right here?
We'll find out what that's worth, it's maybe, you know.
Okay, good deal, that's my.
Yeah, it's not going to, it's not going to cover that million-dollar check you wrote earlier.
Yes, I'm trying to cover streets and sidewalks for all the different council districts. Okay, now, hopefully there's good news in 58011, Debt Redemption. $375,000, what is that one about?
Oh, that's under the Fresno, oh, that's under the Fresno, that's not general fund.
Oh, oh, you know what, you're right. I see where I slipped up right there. Is that item 59321, Microsoft Migration? Is that the last general fund item right there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, I had two more that were not general fund items, and I don't need to ask about. Well, let me just ask anyway, on General Fund Purpose Depart, okay, 24, or 53302, Professional Services Consulting for half a million dollars.
What, what page?
It's just listed again over here under the Enterprise Zone Fund, is that correct?
Enterprise Zone.
That's the same, that's part of the same fund we talked about a minute ago? On page, the very top fund on page 69.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that is, that is money that has been, ouch, I'm sorry, that has been allocated for the Economic Development Infrastructure Project. I believe it's the one that's west of 99, I believe. Yeah, Mr. Westerlin is here to?
Is that, is that River West funding right in there?
No, no, it's not.
Oh, Doug on it, all right.
Sorry, no, that is not Councilmember Brandau. Hi, Councilmembers Larry Westerlin, Director of Economic Development. And before you go too far afield, the funds that are set aside there are from the Enterprise Zone and the voucher program that we had that the state did away with in December of last year. And the city received some money on each voucher, and it has since kind of gained ground and gotten to be a bigger pool of money. At least my understanding of how that has to be spent, it has to be really, it's supposed to be connected to the Enterprise Zone and where the Enterprise Zone was in effect, and really directed for economic development. So what we have set that money aside and would like to do into the new budget year is, and some council members will remember, a few years ago, before the RDAs were disbanded in 2011, 12, we had a commitment from the federal government for a grant of about $3 million to do some South Venice industrial area improvements. And we had a commitment to do that from the EDA. However, the RDAs were disbanded before we could sign a written contract with the federal government. The RDA was putting up a big chunk of matching funds to go with the EDA grant. And this is, we're trying to resurrect that grant, so we need to set aside a certain amount of money to be matching dollars for the federal grant. We've talked with the feds, they are interested in resurrecting that grant. And what it would do is do the South Venice industrial area, which is south of 41 here, where Panapacific is, where Gusamer Foods, where OK Produce is moving into. That area has long been. That area has long been missed in any kind of infrastructure improvements, where a lot of them are missing gutters and curbs. The streets have gotten cracked and alligatored to a point where it's no longer serviceable. And we have had a number of companies say, well, gosh, you know, we'd like to look at this site, or we'd move into this site. However, when was the last time the city put any money into this infrastructure? And they don't see the city's commitment to that infrastructure. They're less likely to make that, and they don't. They won't make that commitment to that. So that's what some of these dollars are for, and then some other dollars that have been set aside to do that.
All right, so to secure, to kind of be the matching funds for a federal grant.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I can't argue with that, because I love that as well. So I think, Jane, I think I'm done with my questions. So Bruce, on that one item, where we now have a renter, how much money can you promise me? Can we transfer it to neighborhood streets?
I will provide that information. We'll consider that a question, that we'll provide that information via memo or email or so. I'll get you the number.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Councilmember Soria.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on today's hearings? Seeing none, we will stand in recess until next Monday, where we will resume our budget hearings, and I will see you all tomorrow for our regularly scheduled council meeting.